All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. This is a meeting of the Planning Commission. I thought I'd say that to make sure you're in the right spot tonight. The opportunities for the public to access and participate in a hybrid meeting are posted on the Albano County website, on the Planning Commission homepage, and on the Albano County calendar. Participation will include opportunity to comment on those matters, for which comments from the public will be received tonight. And so with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order and establish a quorum. Madam Clerk, would you mind calling the roll?
Yes. Mr. Missile?
Here.
Ms. Firehawk?
Here.
Mr. Karazana?
Here.
Mr. Bivins?
Here.
And Mr. Murray?
Here.
And of course, Mr. Claiborne.
Here. Thank you. So we have a quorum that has been established, and we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is other matters not listed on the agenda in front of you from the public. So is there anyone here that would like to speak on something that is not listed on the current agenda? Okay, hearing none, we will move forward to the consent agenda, which is on our next sheet. It consists of two sets of meeting minutes. I'd like to ask the commission, is there any modifications or changes required to the meeting minutes?
No, sir.
Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Our hearing none. We'll call for a vote. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk?
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne?
Hi.
Mr. Missile?
Hi.
Mr. Karazana?
Hi.
Mr. Bivins?
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And now we will move to our public hearings, and we have two tonight. So the first one on deck is ZMA 2022-00004, 1906 Avon Street. And with that, I'll ask for the staff report.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Andy Ritalbach, and I'm a senior planner with the Albemarle County Planning Division. Tonight, we're here for a public hearing regarding application ZMA 2022-4, also called 1906 Avon Street Extended. To provide some context on the location of this site, I've included this aerial view. The property that's the subject of this rezoning contains three parcels along Avon Street Extended, south of the city line. You can see the Avon Park subdivision is to the south of the three subject parcels. Mill Creek is to the west. Spring Hill Village is to the east across Avon Street, and the Snowpoint Lane commercial properties are to the northeast. And then Biscuit Run Park doesn't quite border the subject properties, but it is close to the southwest. So a brief summary of the proposal this evening. It consists of three parcels that are currently zoned R1, which is our residential zoning district that allows one dwelling unit per acre. The total of the three parcels is approximately 3.643 acres. The existing use on the property includes two single-family detached houses and accessory structures. The applicant is looking to rezone these three parcels to R15 residential with proffers. And the R15 residential allows 15 units per acre. The applicant has proffered, with a voluntary proffer statement, a maximum of 38 dwelling units, which would be a mix of single-family attached and multifamily units. And this comes out to a density of approximately 11 units per acre, so slightly less than the maximum allowed by the requested rezoning. To explain more on the zoning of this property and the surrounding areas, as I mentioned, this consists of three parcels, all of which are zoned R1 residential. And by right, this property would allow three residential units. There are also several overlay zoning districts for this property, including managed steep slopes and the entrance corridor. And the zoning of the surrounding properties includes R6 residential to the south in Avon Park. Mill Creek to the west is a PRD planned residential development. Spring Hill Village to the east across Avon Street is NMD Neighborhood Model District. There are several parcels zoned R1 to the southeast, and then to the northeast in the Snowpoint Lane area are several parcels zoned for light industrial uses. In the comprehensive plan, this portion of the county is included in the Southern and Western Urban Neighborhoods Master Plan. And this master plan designates all three of these parcels for Neighborhood Density Residential, which is the yellow color on the map. And in this land use designation, the comprehensive plan recommends residential uses at three to six units per acre, along with several different supporting uses, as well as a residential building height of a maximum of no more than three stories. And looking at the other land use designations on surrounding properties, to the south and to the west are also Neighborhood Density Residential, and the green is Parks and Open Space. The brown of Spring Hill Village is Community Mixed Use. The orange is Urban Density Residential, and the purple is Office R&amp;D Flex Light Industrial. So this is a screenshot of the concept plan that the applicant has provided for this application, because this is a conventional rezoning to R15. It is a concept plan and not an application plan. However, the applicant has proffered this concept plan as a part of their proffer statement. And in the proffer statement, the applicant has identified several major elements that would be required if this rezoning were approved, that construction would be required to follow. And that includes the internal street network and pedestrian connections, the building envelopes, setbacks, a maximum building height of no more than 40 feet, and, as I mentioned, a maximum of 38 residential units. And other things to point out on this concept plan. The applicant is proposing a connection with Hathaway Street in Avon Park to the south, and this is a public street. And they would extend that through their property up to the northern property line with the Faith Temple Church, which is on two parcels to the north. The other streets and travel ways throughout the development are proposed to be private streets. The applicant is proposing a pedestrian connection between Hathaway Street and Avon Street in the northeastern portion of the property, because there is no vehicular connection proposed directly between Avon Street and Hathaway Street in this development. There are open space areas shown throughout the parcel, especially in the southeastern corner, both of the northwest and northeastern corners, and then a central green space in the middle where the recreational facilities are proposed. In addition, the stormwater management facility is proposed for the southeastern portion of the property. And retaining walls are proposed between the parking envelope and the stormwater management and conceptual green space. This is just repeating what I had said earlier about the major elements in the proffered concept plan and those elements that the applicant would be required to be in compliance with at the site planning stage if this application were approved. And looking at the specifics of the proffers, as I mentioned, the concept plan is proffered with the major elements identified and a maximum of no more than 38 units. And then the applicant is also proffering affordable housing in the development, which would be 15% of the total number of residential units constructed. Looking at schools, this is the school calculation for this development. We use the calculator that the school system provides us to look at what the expected generation at each school level would be. And overall, it's expected that this development would generate about six students total across all three school levels. About three students at Mountain View Elementary, two students at Walton Middle, and one student at Monticello High School. Mountain View is currently over capacity, whereas Walton and Monticello are both currently under capacity. As a part of this rezoning, the applicant has also provided a has also requested two waivers for modifications to the street standards, including waving sidewalk and planting strips in a few portions of the development. And this is the exhibit that the applicant has provided showing those areas. The yellow is the area where both sidewalk and planting strip is proposed to be waved, and the green is where only planting strip is proposed to be waved. And staff has no objection to these requests if approval of the ZMA is recommended. However, staff does recommend one condition be included for each of the requests if they are approved, and I will get to those in a minute. Looking overall, the positive aspects of this application is that the request is consistent with the recommended primary land use in Neighborhood Density Residential for the Southern and Western Urban Neighborhoods Master Plan, and that primary land use is housing. Number two, the request is consistent or mostly consistent with the applicable neighborhood model principles. And number three, the proposal does provide at least 15% affordable housing as recommended in the comprehensive plan policy that is currently being enacted. There is one concern, however, that staff had when reviewing this application, and that is that the request is not consistent with the density recommended by the Southern and Western Urban Neighborhoods Master Plan. As mentioned, the master plan for Neighborhood Density Residential recommends three to six units per acre. And this application proposes a maximum of about 11 units per acre, which is nearly twice what is recommended in the master plan. So the staff recommendation is that staff does recommend denial of ZMA 2022-04, 1906 Avon Street Extended. However, when it comes to the waiver requests, staff has no concern with these requests. And so if the Planning Commission does choose to recommend approval of the rezoning request, staff would recommend approval of the requests for the modification of street standards for both the planting strip and sidewalk requirements with the following conditions. It's the same condition for each request, just specifying sidewalks for the sidewalk request and planting strips for the planting strip request. And the condition is that it would be, they would have to be constructed in accordance with the exhibit that was shown on the previous slide. And I am available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ritalbach, for the presentation. Commission, any questions for staff?
Bivins? So could you just sort of share again what the by right number of dwellings could be there without, excuse me, without a modification of zoning?
It would be three units total.
Three units total, okay. So three units total. And if they were to do the zoning as, if they were to do the dwellings as is laid out in the comp plan or the land use plan, how many would that necessarily be?
It would be about probably 20 or so.
Around 20. Is that what the bonus of, even if they put, if they even included affordable, the number of affordable units, would that also, would that push it up a bit?
It would be a bit more if they used any of the bonus density.
Bonus density, okay. Then the other piece in the, whatever they did, whether or not they did nothing like that, or just did the three houses by right, they would still have access through to the project through Hathaway Road or Hathaway, whatever it's, I'm sorry, what I think is Hathaway Road or Hathaway Street.
Hathaway Street. If they did by right, the applicant may be able to explain better, but it would be likely that the three by right units would get access from Avon Street, as there are a few existing driveways onto those parcels. But any type of rezoning would likely need access from Hathaway Street.
And that's a public road.
Hathaway is public, yes.
Any other questions for staff?
I had just a couple of questions, sir.
Sure, yes, sir.
Thank you. One, and I'm looking through the staff report. I hope I didn't miss this. I may have. But has the ARB weighed in on this at all?
The ARB has not. This application was submitted prior to or during the time period when Avon Street was not a corridor where ARB guidelines were being applied. And so they did not weigh in on the rezoning. But if this rezoning were approved and a site plan were submitted, the ARB would weigh in on the site plan application.
Got it. Thank you. Second quick question regarding buffers and setbacks. I know that the concept plan is not required, but it's been offered. I assume that if this were to be approved, they would have to comply with the setbacks of the.
Yes. So the setbacks were included in the major elements of the concept plan in the proffer. So the setbacks that are identified in the concept plan, the applicant would have to meet those setbacks.
Got it.
All your questions answered.
I think that's it. Yep, thank you.
Any other questions? Sure. On the exceptions that they're asking for.
Thank you.
The exception that they're asking for for the planting strip. Can you just walk us through the thinking on particularly the one on Hathaway? Why did staff feel that that was, you know, potentially one that we can accept?
So a portion of, especially in the center there, the planting strip would be adjacent to the central green space. So staff felt that having the sidewalk right up against the street and having a larger central green space area would be more appropriate. And then on the other areas, there's actually no sidewalk on the west side of Hathaway Street in the existing Avon Street. So there is no continuation moving to the south. So they are providing sidewalk, and staff didn't see there to be a need for a planting strip as well.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Thanks. Just one more quick question. The public road, the extension of Hathaway Street, that essentially dead ends at the adjoining property boundary. Did staff have any concerns with the fact that the adjoining property is not controlled by this applicant?
Um, staff certainly, we recommend interparcel connections. And even though that parcel is not owned by this property owner, they are providing that connection up to the property line so that if the church to the north were eventually to develop their property in a different way, they could extend that street farther and potentially connect with Avon Street several hundred feet to the north. There has been some concern about fire rescue and fire rescue not having a second point of access into this area. The fire rescue department did review this application, and they had no concerns at this time just based on the number of units and the mixture of units. As multifamily units and single-family detached units and attached units all have different maximum numbers that are required before second access is needed. And so based on those numbers and the calculations, fire rescue had no concerns about a second access not being provided.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. Thing nine, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And is the applicant available to make a presentation? Yeah, welcome. And you'll have 10 minutes to make the presentation. And you'll, I know you know the rules. The green light means plenty of time. Yellow means you probably don't get to your most salient pertinent points. And red is the stop button. So welcome and thank you, and the floor is yours.
All right, understood. Thank you. My name is Justin Schimpf. I'm the owner of Schimpf Engineering, representing the owners here. Kelsey Schlon is with me as well, who's a planner in my office. And I should disclose that she probably did 99% of all this work, and I get to do the talking sometimes. But I do want to have an opportunity here to speak tonight. Housing is near and dear topic to my heart. So I appreciate the chance to talk to you all about it. The owners, Don and Jenny Smith are here, too. I'm going to leave a few minutes for them at the end just to talk about their history of the property and what their vision is a little bit. I have a presentation up. I see it in front of me. Is it in front of you?
It is not.
Seeing that.
Okay. Is this?
He'll bring it up just one second.
Okay. I think what it is, you all have gone to. There it is. There you go. You've gone to split screens here. All right. So starting out, appreciate the staff always provides a very thorough analysis of the details of this. So I'm really going to hop right into the meat of the matter. This is a concept that shows essentially the same as our block-in plan, a little more detail. You'll see we have mixture of townhomes, and then backing up towards Avon Street, imagined more of a multifamily, a smaller multifamily building. Those are four unit buildings in the concept plans. There'd be a series of those to make up a different type of housing type. We have a thought of a for-sale affordable product that's up here. So it'd be a combination, probably some for sale and for rents in accordance with the county policy, but they would be probably in that location based on this concept. If you've been to the site recently, you'll know that the county has recently installed sidewalks. And I guess across the street, the developer installed a path there. So we are filling out infrastructure down to this end of Avon Street very nicely, something that I think the residents of this property will certainly appreciate. Block plan is what you saw. And just only point out this, there's a, there is a proffered pedestrian connection that gets us down to that sidewalk from our development. Unfortunately, our road cannot be engineered to get down to that street based on V dot standards. And I'll get into that in a moment, but I know that's one of the topics of the evening. But I wanted to, to point out this connection as we are still getting our folks down to that sidewalk to get up towards Charlottesville. Few more details. Townhome types, familiar with these, probably three-story townhomes, very similar to what's across the street. And then for the multifamily type, these are four stories, probably how they beat from the back. There's the land slope. So if you're looking at this from Avon Street, it's four stories in the back and three stories on the Hathaway extension side. And so we imagine some structures like this, which are sort of these, like if you look at those two, any of those pictures, those are four units actually, and those kind of a stacked units. A couple of different ways to do it, but that's the vision for the multifamily. Gives us a couple of different product types on this site, a little more optionality for purchase price. The staff report, I think you saw, was pretty positive about all this and had mentioned a negative, I suppose you could view it as, of the comprehensive plan land use map for this. Now, I've been here before and said something effective. You know, the problem I have with this particular map is it's not really designating a, like a form. We're going to clear as much land. We're going to disturb as much area. If we go by the yellow, you build larger homes, basically. And that's okay, but you get fewer of them. And given the scarcity of development area land, I really believe that this sort of location has to be viewed at a higher density. That going by that six is really leaving units on the table that really will, I think, we look back at 20 years from now and regret not pushing that envelope further. I'll read quickly the summary. This is the Albemarle County Growth Management Policy. It's the first page, the comprehensive plan. I highlight two things in this. It has two, it says, "We shall promote efficient use of county resources through a combination of A and B." I'm sure you guys are familiar with this, but I just read it for the benefit of the crowd. It's B, I'll read first, is promoting the development areas as a place where a variety of land uses, facilities, and services exist. And our plans support the county's future growth with emphasis placed on density and high-quality design in new and infill development. That emphasis on density is there in B, because part A is that we are to protect the elements that define the rural area. And you really can't do one without the other. And as I look at, you know, the projects I've done in my career, and I think, you know, 20 or 30 years forward, what things are going to look like. I think that every opportunity we have to get more housing into place that can be more transit oriented, we are going to, we are going to appreciate that we did that later. And I realize it does not match the color of the map. But I also think that if you focus on this policy and you think where we are today with discussions of expand the growth area to accommodate development, that we need to focus on what that potential is to cite. And a higher density brings more households into this close urban circle. You'll also find that historically, we've underdeveloped density-wise. If you look at this map over here, you'll see that in every situation where the range was 34, we got 12, we got nine, we got eight, 24, we're closer. That was a little one-acre development. So this particular zone has not achieved the sort of density as a whole planned out for. Thus, we think it's reasonable to look at a spot like this and say, well, as we're finishing out this development, that lack of density that was planned for should be taken into consideration. Interesting comparison is if you look at the 21 single-family homes, which would be sort of the six number versus the 38 single-family attached mix we have. If you run the calculation for the schools' numbers, the quantity of students is the same. So the additional units do not produce more school impacts. Likewise, traffic. If you were to look at 21 single-family homes and the latest trip generation, you know, projections from ITE, you actually get more traffic with the single-family homes versus the multifamily. So if we're thinking about impacts, traffic in schools are not different for 38 versus 22, because the housing type is different. Last is a question about the Hathaway Street, and could that be extended? I point out a couple of things quickly. This is from the road plans of Hathaway. It was designed to a standard to accommodate 400 to 2,000 trips. That's the V dot standard by which it was prepared. I think the original plan had something like 400 to 500 trips. So there's a lot of capacity, if you will, in that design. There's a challenge of it, and this will get to some, I think, some folks in the neighborhood are concerned about this as to why we can't connect to Avon. And that is, this is how the road was built. And you'll see, our property starts here. This is a road profile coming up from the intersection of Arden, I believe, up. The road is projecting up. Well, when we extend the street, we have to continue that projection. So if you look here, we have an 84 elevation. We have a 40 elevation at the edge of our property, so a 44-foot grade drop, and we're starting going uphill. That's the problem. That's why we weren't able to make that connection. The connection we can plan for is this one, which is the connection and extension of Hathaway to the property line here. And this shows a profile that comes down and meets the V dot criteria for a future connection here. So this will be on the church property here. So we have extended our street to here, and we have a viable connectivity in the future. But because as we go on our property down this way, the street drops and the distance shortens, we can't make that connection. I'll invite Don up if you could. You only have a minute or so left, but just if you wanted to address things. I'll mention one last interesting traffic fact. UVA has these cool maps. You can basically compare historical photos of the area. This is 1980. Here's the two houses versus today. You know, Avon Street was a very different sort of street then. It is now 12,000 trips per day on that street. And so I do appreciate as a concern of the neighborhood of increased traffic through the neighborhood. Effectively, that's what happens in development areas. When these houses were a single family, that road probably had 1,000 trips on it. And now it's 12. And certainly, there's no kind of increase like that planned for, but we have to recognize that as early development occurs, this is a byproduct of that. Just a last moment, if you want to.
Okay, I had a couple of minutes. Do I have a couple of minutes?
I can give you an extra minute since we have the technology.
Great. I'll read fast. So good evening, commissioners. I'm Don Smith. Jenny and I own the land of tract, the tract of land that we're asking the county to rezone. For the last 24 years, we've lived off Avon Extended. We purchased the land under consideration tonight, 17 years ago. Our two oldest granddaughters were born there. Back then, the Avon Corridor was quite different. A single-family home sat where Avon Park is now. Avon Park Two was woods across the street. Spring Hill was woods with an open lot that suffered from people using it as a dump. Those were the days when traffic was non-existent, even during rush hour. Fast forward to present day, and the current county master plan is well on its way to being realized. Developments have popped up everywhere. We have more traffic, more kids arriving daily to school. They call it progress, and while at times inconvenient, the amenities and services in the area are growing to keep up with the pace. The county's recent sidewalk project is the latest area improvement that ties the individual developments together. Obviously, Fifth Street Station is a wonderful amenity to our area, and we have Biscuit Run Steak Park for the enjoyment of nature. With all this in mind, my wife and I have decided to embrace the change and build out our property similar to what has been built up all around us. We're looking forward to getting some skin in the game and making a lasting contribution to the growth of our county. So that's basically our self-introduction to the county and to the neighbors that live in the area and who may be impacted by the rezoning and the development. Can I have 30 more seconds?
Yes, sir.
From the Zoom meeting last fall, I realized some folks have reservations about further development in that area. I would simply ask you to acknowledge the fact that sooner or later, the entire Avon Corridor is going to be developed. And so the best route for all of us to take is to work together constructively to make the best outcome. In closing, I'm confident we have a good team of engineers. I think the work product will be outstanding, and we'll strive to create a development in a manner such that all of our property values continue to increase. We're open to all constructive input, and we look forward to hearing back from the Planning Commission. So happy Valentine's Day to y'all and to my brother. Thank you.
All right, commissioners, any questions for the applicant? I'll start to my right. Commissioner, honey, you have any questions?
I do have one. I know that a number of the comments that we've read already from the community are that there's concerns about water pressure. I don't know if you, you didn't mention that in your presentation. I don't know if you have any comments on that. They said that they had challenges with the water pressure in the neighborhood that you'd be traveling through and the concern about additional demands on that line.
Sure. I did see some of those, and the answer to that is yes. We'll have a similar problem, less so. We are sloping downhill. But it's a pressure issue, not a flow issue. So there's a, I think that neighborhood had to install a tank, a storage tank, behind them to essentially get water high enough to achieve a reasonable pressure. They just happen to be at one of the highest spots in the growth area. And so the water pressure is just low. So if you open the spigot, it will run forever, but at a low pressure, which if you're showering your second or third floor is not great. But no, the demands from the added flow rate for domestic use for us will The, the demands from the added flow rate for like domestic use for us will not impact them at all. Uh, we will have a similar problem, but again, our site slopes down. It gets better for us. But I, I, yeah, for them, for those. Out there, we will not have an impact on your water pressure.
Okay, thank you.
Right, working to my left, Commissioner Mistle, do you have any questions?
No, I think not. Thank you. Just if I can confirm with the applicant chair, please. So the, so the. This is public water that will serve this project as it does the project that's adjacent to you.
Correct.
So that basically this is not like a well and we're not taking it out of the ground. You know, often we, we hear, we hear lots of concern about groundwater being. Being challenged by a new development, but that's not what we're hearing here. I don't believe. We're hearing that you're, you're part of the public, the public service district.
Correct. We are tied to that system and it's only sort of fault in that zone is the pressure is just not as high as it would be desired.
Any other questions, Commissioner Bibbins?
I, I do, but I can wait until he hears, until they hear Chair come back to something.
There's a couple of questions. Could you share a little bit about where the affordable housing might be? Within the concept plan?
Sure. The, so as, as drawn, these are townhomes up here. They would be affordable. So basically we, we would work with their habitat of the land trust. We've talked to land trust about this and they have interesting model. There's a few different ways to do it. But essentially one of those partners comes in and either. Buys a land from us, we sell it to them at a discounted price. They build them. Or we like the land trust is a slightly different model, but. Either way, I think we end up with affordable units. I think they could be mixed in throughout, but. We have to have between four and six units there. I think six, I think with a full build out. So we'd have probably the four here plus some of these other townhomes around the.
You touched on the part that I was getting at. I would. Can't tell you how to do it, but I would like to see them mixed in and avoid, of, of, avoid affordable housing, just blocks, right? Uh, but have it mixed in with everyone else. Um.
Could I comment on that?
Sure.
I just, um, keeping in mind if they did go with the land trust model, that model entails the land trust owning the land underneath. And so what that means is that the affordable housing doesn't disappear. In a few decades after it no longer is required to be affordable.
Gotcha.
The, yeah, so this, that's a trade off of going away from the putting them in one unit. If they use the land trust model, which I, I would hope they would because every time we approve affordable housing, we're just. It's just temporary, the way that we, that ends up being.
Yeah, well, thank you. Um, one more question, I guess, in regards to the, the increased density. Could you talk a little bit about the mass transit that? You plan to bring to that or what's the thinking behind mass transit?
Well, that's a good question. I think that's a. I don't, I don't know that, I don't know if the county has adopted an official plan, but I, I know there's discussions and maybe you all know better than I do even about. Establishing kind of, you know, micro transit and so forth in the future in areas. I, I think that, you know. Well, I look at this and I think about the, the lack of transit we have after. Forty years, the comprehensive plan. I wonder if part of the problem is we didn't go bold enough in our density back then. And I realize it was, you know, a different time and, but having the benefit of hindsight. Looking back, I can, I can think to myself, well, you know, if this had been developed all at. Thirty units per acre, would there be a very viable bus route down here? And there probably would be. So I think the purposes of. What I see is the future, which is more of like the micro transit and automation of vehicles. Avon Street's a wonderful place because you can shoot in and out of Charlottesville really easily. It's a great, be a convenient place to run that sort of service to. I know when we did the rezoning up the street. There was a discussion with the county and I think we left a spot in there for like a. A transit drop off in the plan. And you can have the same thing here. It'd be easy to come in, kind of loop around and have a pickup zone. For people in this neighborhood. So I know it's in the mind of the county planners. Um, we support it fully. And I think the more riders there are to access that, the sooner the vision can come to reality.
Thank you. Um, if there's no other questions, I will ask staff if I can have the, the signup list. For this. And while that's coming to the desk, uh, we'll move into comments from the public. Uh, we'll call folks up three at a time. Thank you, sir. I will call folks up three at a time. Uh, you will have three minutes and the same rules apply with the, the lighting system. I would encourage you, if you hear the person before you say something identical or very similar to what you're going to say. It's totally fine to say, I concur. All right. You don't have to use your whole three minutes, but I'm not taking that away from you. Um, so with that being said, I would like to call Robbie Savage, Katie Cabbie. If I'm trying to read handwriting, so I apologize if I mispronounced anything. And Debbie Smith. So Robbie Savage, Katie Cavell, Debbie Smith. And please share your name and just general area of where you're coming from.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Robbie Savage. I'm the Chair of the Avon Park. Uh, Community Association. And I'm glad the map is still there because what you don't see is below is Avon Park Two. Which already connects to Hathaway. So basically, if this takes place, we're going to have a straightaway that goes from Avon Park Two. All the way through to this community. Which while this is a public street, Tudor Court and around is not. It's something that we have to. Uh, take on as ourselves. So I'm, I want to first say. That we are not opposed to this. Project. We are opposed to an R15. Approval for rezoning. It's more than twice what everything else we have in our communities and close by. We don't see a reason for this at all. We have a number of our folks that are here tonight. I'm just going to tell you, uh, we're going to deal with the density, the proffers, the school, the traffic. And safety issues and, um. Mr. Shimp mentioned the, um. The sidewalks. Yes, we just got sidewalks on Avon Park, on Avon Street. We're really excited about that. It took 15 years to do that. We do not have bus service to, to this community. So while you're looking at affordable housing. How are the folks going to get to town to work to areas? Right now it's a two mile walk. From our community to the first bus. So it is very inconvenient and what we're trying to do with our. Uh, lower income communities and affordable housing is make it available for them to work and be part of the community. Damn. In years past, I was told I talked too fast. Now I talk too slow. I've lived in Charlottesville too long. Like to introduce my neighbor Katie. And Marlo, he's right here.
Hi, my name is Katie Kabiel and that sleepy one is my child, Marlo. Um, and. Miss Robbie is our next door neighbor and, um. With our cat and my husband, we have lived in Avon Park for about five years. And we love just about everything about it, especially our neighbors. Um, specifically, we are grateful that our son can play outside without having to fear for his safety. He often uses the streets to play ball with our other neighbors and he uses our playground. And for the drive to school, he is able to come and go to our, with checking, come to and go to the car. Um, without concern that he will be hit by an oncoming car. Um, the members of our community are used to seeing our children at play. And they're always on the lookout for children and our pets as well. With the influx of folks coming into our community from other areas, we are not as comfortable. And confident that our children would be as safe. Um. As it was mentioned. Mount, my son goes to Mountain View and there is currently extreme overcrowding with Mountain View Elementary School. And it is a serious concern. We questioned the validity of the developer's assessment that the new development would add only six new K through 12 students to our schools. It is suggested that the building of this development, supported by the fact that there are nearby schools. There are currently 14 K through 12 in Avon Park One. With additional student population expected with the construction of Avon Park Two. It is therefore inconsistent then to claim that the new development will not attract more families with more students. Um, the Mountain View School Administration has been sending out letters to the parents outlining their concern about the student population. And like other communities in our area, we would like the county to address the overcrowding in area schools before approving increased density. Um, right now the parking lot is under construction because the current parking lot is simply unable to handle the daily drop off and pickup traffic. Whenever there are school events, families are currently parking at, um. The high school and then they're being bussed back and forth to the elementary, elementary school for the event. Um, and it's all just the inadequate parking. It is currently impossible to park at the school in between the drop off and pickup times because there's simply no space. And like she, like Miss Robbie said, it's taken nearly 15 years for the installation of our sidewalks. And while the new sidewalks are really great and we love them. It is not, it has not been proven. Useful for families to use to and going to and coming home from school. Thank you.
Do you need five more seconds?
I would need a little bit more than that, but it's okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman and members of, of the commission, my name is Debbie Smith. I've been a resident at Avon Park for 15 years. And I appreciate this opportunity, um, for us to voice our concerns. I'm specifically concerned about safety issues. Um, and the impact 1906 Avon Extended Development would have on our daily living, mainly because. Uh, they claim they can't, it's impossible as their. Uh, plan exists to, to create their own entranceway. Uh, currently Arden Drive is the only way in and way out of Avon Park for both one and two. Um. I live at the corner of Arden Drive and Arden Alley. Um, our, Arden, Arden Drive is a. A ascending road that has a very severe curve. That creates a blind spot. So if you're making a left hand turn either off of Hathaway. Or Arden Alley, you cannot see oncoming traffic. You can only see part of it. So no matter how safe you try to be in your driving. Um, there's no guarantee as you pull out, there's not a car there to greet you. Um, so it's already a difficult situation. Then if you add all these other drivers, potential drivers from the new. Um, development, uh, we would be exceeding over 200. Um. The, uh, drivers coming in and out of that one corridor. Um, they want to extend Hathaway from approximately 500 feet to 1,200 feet. Uh, so we would like V dot to, um, check on the straightaway length of Hathaway Street since they don't recommend anything over 500 feet. Um. We also on, along Hathaway on the west side, there is a, a. Playground and a dog park that our residents enjoy. Um, that we feel that the safety of our residents and pets will be at risk with additional. Uh, traffic coming up. Um, Hathaway. Um. And, uh, so we are basically very concerned about our safety. Also Hathaway is only 32 feet wide. It allows parking on the east side of the street. So I don't really understand how. Traffic can flow two ways. You would have to move aside. And, um, a lot, and that would cause more congestion and more concern for safety of our community. So I really see this as a safety issue and I don't think. Uh, extending Hathaway is a workable solution. And overburdening our community with more traffic. I would hope that they would be able to figure either reduce the number of units or figure out a way. To have another access road to their community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nish Nodjul, hopefully I'm saying that correctly. Sarah Meister, Peter Meister.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nish Dalal. Uh, I'm a dentist here in Charlottesville and I live on Tudor Court in Avon Park. Um. A few of my points have sort of already been touched on, um, but something that I'd like to reiterate. What Debbie was talking about was the safety. Um, something that we can't see from the map here is really the steepness of Arden Drive. Um, I know myself, um. Neighbors, we're all very careful going down that street. It's on a pretty steep incline and. As you're going down, of course, there's no acceleration, but you're standing on the brakes the entire way down. So certainly for myself and our neighbors, that's, that's a very large concern, having. More vehicles on that street. Coming up, um, from work, very often I see other children playing. Um, and it definitely makes me nervous as a first time homeowner and someone looking forward to starting a family in this neighborhood, uh, the increased traffic that we would have. Um. And secondly, a point that, uh. My partner, Ruwan, has come with me to, uh, address is the water pressure. Um. You know, with, with all of our units having pumps, uh, we have to perform regular maintenance on them and having, uh, the additional units would be a big burden on our system as well. Um. Lastly, uh, I'd like to just reiterate, we really would oppose the request to, uh, change the zoning. Uh, we would request that, um. The R15 zoning not be approved. That would allow 54 homes on just 36 acres. Instead, we would like to request the R6, which is much more consistent with the character of the already existing neighborhood and comparable to the adjacent communities. Thank you very much.
Right, thank you. Sarah Meister.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Loach Meister. I grew up in Charlottesville in the household of Donald Loach, music professor emeritus and choir director. Twice a week, we bring him to our house for dinner. That makes twice a week we are turning left onto Avon Street Extended at Arven, Arden with him in the car. When my husband Peter talks about possible fatalities at that intersection, one of the people he is trying to protect is my 96 year old father. Peter will talk about that, but I want to talk about quality of life. We understand the need for more homes in the county. However, our little corner of the county shouldn't bear the weight of the extensive, uh, extensive development. There are areas east of Avon Street Extended that are zoned urban residential. West of Avon Street Extended, we are considered neighborhood density residential, which allows for three to six residential units per acre. We border rural areas and Biscuit Run State Park. We have been mistakenly considered urban in these zoning negotiations. Urban settings have amenities in place to handle large numbers of residents which are sadly lacking in our area. The closest bus to our neighborhood is two miles away and involves crossing 64 on a bridge with no sidewalk. The proposed future bus road, route suggests that the bus will come to Mill Creek Drive, which is over a mile from Avon Park. Even with the proposed future bus route, a trip to UVA using public transit would take at least 75 minutes. Our neighborhood provides and maintains a playground and a dog park. The residents of this new development would have access to our amenities, which we pay for with our H O A dues. But the plans do not add sufficient amenities to justify rezoning. Shimp Engineering is relying on our R6 green spaces to pay for the 38 dwellings they propose. Affordable housing requires public transportation. We waited 15 years to get a sidewalk, so we're not hopeful that we will get the infrastructure needed for these high density developments. We appreciate the work our county planners and leaders do and ask that you focus on infrastructure and needed amenities. Before allowing R15 density, which would probably have off property man. before allowing R fifteen density, which would probably have off-property management. We have had issues with short-term rentals in the past, including loud late-night parties. Granting an exception to guidelines regarding density can lead to crime. The week our neighbors on the other side moved, on the other side of the water tower moved in, someone stole their catalytic converter. We understand that Arden Three is going to happen. We want it to follow the rules, particularly with regard to density and access. Avon Park, Avon Park is zoned R six. Home buyers should be able to rely on existing comprehensive plans when deciding on home purchases.
All right.
If they can't, I, one more sentence.
Okay.
If they can't, what is the purpose of the comprehensive plan? We request that the nineteen oh six Avon Street Extended Development be zoned no higher than R six. Thank you.
Peter Meister.
I am Peter Meister. I came to Charlottesville to get my doctorate in German. Sarah and I met in nineteen eighty-seven and moved to Maryland and then Alabama for me to teach German. Sarah taught French there in Alabama. We moved back to Charlottesville this past September. You've heard a little about the traffic in our neighborhood, but there's traffic and then there's traffic. There's inconvenience. And then there are accidents, possibly including fatalities. The curb on Hathaway at Arden is blind, especially on the downhill side. It can be dangerous even now before new traffic starts to flow from Avon Park Two. Children do frequently play in that area, but the speeds are residential. A child might get hurt and a car might be regarded as totaled if two or three drivers round that corner too fast, but a traffic accident of the very worst kind is not likely at Hathaway and Arden. The danger comes where Arden meets Avon Street Extended. When you make that turn today, you have a very good chance of making it. Cars coming at you from the right are invisible until almost the last moment, but you're probably the only car trying to hurry in. Once we have a hundred more cars joining us from Avon Park Two, that's the existing uh division subdivision, not the proposal. It will not be unusual for two and three cars to be trying to make that left turn in a single swoop. Arden Car One turning left onto Avon will probably be okay. Same with Arden Car Two. The danger begins when Arden Car Three decides to try it on the grounds that cars, cars one and two must have known what they're doing. All the while, new traffic approaching from the left, turning into Arden demands new attention from the Arden driver assessing danger from the right. All of this because a hundred new cars are joining us soon from Arden Park Two. That's before we even think about zoning exceptions for Arden Park Three. Changing Arden and Hathaway to through streets and adding a hundred or more new cars would almost certainly result in accidents. And at Avon and Arden, perhaps fatalities. I hope you, uh we hope you will vote to keep Avon Park as close as possible to the quiet subdivision it is zoned for. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have four more signed up in person, so I'll call these remaining four. Shelley Pelish, Leigh Anne Skipper, Andrew Hoden, Ashley Lady. Shelley Pelish, Leigh Anne Skipper, Andrew Hoden, Ashley Lady.
Shelley Pelish, um at fifteen forty-four, which is the property right next to what may happen. I'm not going to speak about that. Hey, Julian. Old colleague. Um, I've lived on Avon uh street for twenty-four years, fifteen years in this community. I had, uh I have loved this community from the beginning. I signed up to be on the board where I served for five years joyously and hardly because the developers walked away in the middle of the night in twenty seven, two thousand seven to two thousand nine. And I learned a lot about bankruptcy law. I learned a lot about the joy and the hardness of binding together as a community when your neighbors also walked away in the middle of the night and trying to get the developer to pay for the bonds to finish the roads and the infrastructure. And we have waited years and years and years for the infrastructure we've had. So I am now, as a result of all that I've learned from my academic training and urban planning and architectural history, I am now a financial advisor where I sit with people and help them steward the land they want to develop. But I'm also learning a lot about community and that we're in recession now, if not officially, we soon will be. And I want to know that developers are going to come in and build the land next to us, can pay for it, and they're going to do what they say and pay for the roads and pay for the infrastructure that they're going to use and develop the land and not have us do what we've done in our fifteen years is pay for the tree replacements that were done incorrectly and all the other things. So what I would ask is let's take them up on their offer for a healthy conversation as a community while things are sane and not involving lawyers to build the community that we we all need for Avon Park. And that does not mean displacing a black church because that's the only way we can build a road. That's that's just horrible. This is twenty twenty-three. So that's all I ask. Let's have a communication with the developers to come up with a plan because this neighborhood is not a NIMBY. They know development's been coming and they're thoughtful, good people. So let's take them up on their offer. Thanks.
Thank you. Leigh Anne Skipper.
Hi, good evening. I'm Leigh Anne Skipper. I uh live on sixteen forty-four as well and I'm on the end unit that's going to abut the new uh the new neighborhood. Uh, my, my primary concern is the cut through to Hathaway and that being the only access in and out of that neighborhood being on that end unit. I, you know, I have the benefit of there being a little cul-de-sac there now because there's no cut through. So people use that. They use that to join together. Kids ride bikes there, dogs walk there. That's a nice little area for us to gather. So that, of course, would be gone. But in addition, uh again, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic around the neighborhood, so having a long straightway all the way through the neighborhoods, I think, is going to just invite speed and invite uh people to move quite, quite quickly in their cars through there. Uh, as some of my neighbors have already mentioned, uh the use of the dog park and the playground by others that are not financially investing and that is a concern uh as we don't see that on the plan for this new neighborhood. So the, those are my primary concerns. You know, I, the last thing I would say is for most of us, we don't just live in that neighborhood, we work in that neighborhood. So a lot of us work remotely now. So we're in our homes and in that neighborhood twenty-four hours a day. So we want to make sure that it's cared for and constructed appropriately. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Hopoon and I have lived in Avon Park for just over a year. I'm here to share my views on nineteen oh six. When I bought my home in twenty twenty-one, I noticed that the water pressure was lower than usual. Uh, my house had a water pressure pump and it does help normalize the water pressure. I am concerned that with the water pressure being so low already, what will happen as we add on more people in Avon Park Two and the proposed nineteen oh six Avon Street Extended subdivision? Um, so I do support Avon Park HOA's request for a survey uh to determine whether our water tower can accommodate these new developments. Uh, the number of new developments in the Mountain View Elementary District is quite substantial. Uh, with this growth, I believe our educational infrastructure needs to be updated. I'm not a parent, nor am I connected to Mountain View Elementary School. But as a resident of Albemarle County, I want to ensure that all of our students in our, in this district are provided a high-quality educational environment. I reviewed the subdivision yield analysis report and the Mountain View Elementary Master Plan recommendation uh presented to the Albemarle County School Board in twenty twenty-one. Uh, the findings are clear. The Mountain View Elementary School is overcrowded and a school that's built, built to hold six hundred and twenty-four students. There are seven hundred and fifty-two students enrolled this twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three academic year. As we consider zoning for nineteen oh six Avon Street Extended, I ask the county to take into account the fast-paced addition of students from several new developments, including Spring Hill Estates, Avon Park Two, Galaxy Farms, Southwood, and potentially a nineteen oh six Avon Street Extended. I'm pleased with the recommendation to build a new elementary school. Uh, my hope is that this conversation uh may help prioritize this project even higher. Thank you all.
Well, thank you. Is Ashley Lady still present? Ashley Lady. All right. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak? I think I saw a hand. Yes, you may come to the podium, please.
I'm not on the list, though.
That, that's fine. You just say your name.
I'm improv. Hi, my name is Elke Chebets. I am one of the residents of Avon Park Two and I've lived there since two thousand fourteen. I previously lived in Germany in a kind of like a same area, a little beautiful ball of beautiful neighborhoods, very quiet. And um when we moved, we live on Arden, the little Arden Drive here that is adjacent to Hathaway Street and um we didn't know that when we moved there that the builders were allowed to build with the permission of whoever the commission is um without, I, I didn't know what a sewage um chomper um pump is until I moved to here. I don't know if you all have one. If you have a sewage pumper, they're very expensive and we have to replace them like every three to five years because the brilliant architects thought that the sewage should be pumped up instead of pumped down into the city. So we have along the street this lovely extra burden of sewage is that we, you know, you can't live without sewage. So I just wanted to take in comparison because I had no idea about the water pressure on, on Tudor, which is bad. And then also just there's a water issue. There's, we have to have our sewage pumped up. We've got water pressure issues and just allowing a lot more density in that, in that space is going to be a problem. And also they, you know, we've been hearing about the traffic making that corner. I walk with my dog every single day. The children are out. There needs to be a, a bump, a speed bump in our area because these people are just whipping around the corner. They're going to hit somebody. There is a blind curve and if we make Hathaway Street a really wrong street, it's just going to invite like very speedy traffic. I'm sorry that you're hearing that continuously, but it is a problem.
Thank you. Can you share your name one more time?
Um, it's um Elke, E L K E. And I can spell my name. Sure, it's um Z S C H A E B I T Z. Okay, thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Absolutely. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak here? Okay, seeing that, we'll go to Madam Clerk. Is there anyone online that would like to speak?
Yes, right now I have two people with their hand raised. Uh, I'm going to go with Jay first. Please state your name and address if you're affiliated with a group or organization. And you'll have three minutes to speak and your time will start as soon as you start speaking.
Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Jay Ergo. I live at sixteen thirty-two Hathaway. And uh certainly my neighbors have done a great job uh raising, raising issues and I'll try not to repeat too much. Uh, one thing that was finally mentioned, but that I would like to address right off the fact is why is shimp engineering bringing up the church? They have, they, it, it's like this cynical plot to take over the church eventually. Well, we haven't heard from the church. Are we going to hear from the church? Are they willing to do this? It's like, we should, we should approve this because we'll eventually have a second way to get out? Well, we don't know that. We're not talking to the people at the church and that to me seems very wrong. And furthermore, um if they uh altered the site plan a bit and didn't go for maximum density, uh I would have to believe that they would be able to engineer a second uh um egress from, from the new development. Uh, they have, are showing a retaining pond. They're showing retaining walls. Why not re-engineer it so you can have that second uh egress? Uh, on top of which, VDOT recommends any straightaway longer than five hundred feet to have a traffic calming measure. We haven't heard anything about a traffic calming measure in any proffer. Uh, and as previously mentioned by several people, we are used to developers disappointing us. The most recent being that Stanley Martin uh promised us that they, they would not use Arden Drive as a construction entrance, but every time we had a sprinkle of rain, there was a steady stream of construction vehicles up Arden because their construction entrance was, was muddy. So we're used to having promises broken. Well, we've had developers go out of business, so I would like to echo those concerns. Uh, and I don't see any reason why we should allow it to go from R six to R fifteen, particularly when despite the thirty-eight proposed units, it could go as high as fifty-four. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next I have Dave. Please state your name and address and if you're affiliated with a group or organization and your time starts when you start speaking.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Chairman, uh Commissioners, my name is David Hudson. Uh, I live at eleven eighteen Arden Drive. I've lived there for sixteen years. And I have been involved in building affordable housing around the globe, uh places like Liberia and the Philippines and other places. You know, very fortunate to do that. The United States might be short as many as five million houses, so everybody's got to do their part. Echoing the, the Commissioner's concern earlier is that making sure that we don't sail this out from under us is that there's one thing to be affordable, but it also needs to be dignified. And what I asked the board to do was make, to, to really scrutinize the square footage that these units are built in. And what you also have to look at is when it's dignified, you have to look at the parking. So when you stack these families in there like cordwood, is the parking becomes an issue? And when you really look at dignified, is it really dignified in inclement weather to make a family that is dependent on public transportation to walk along an unlit road for two miles to get to the bus? So we really have to look at that uh and bring that public transportation in closer. So this is especially important when you look at a road that had a thousand daily trips to one that has over twelve thousand daily trips today. Is there second and third order effects associated with that traffic, some of which you've already heard? The safety, the need for speed bumps, the need for lighting, the need for a traffic light that would prevent fatalities at uh intersection. All those second and third order effects need to be considered and installed to not only make it affordable, but to make it dignified and safe moving forward. The second thing is we, we've constantly pounded the utilities piece, but is low-pro water pressure dignified? We deal with it because we can afford it, but when you put families in there that can't afford it, is it dignified? So the utility infrastructure for Avon One and Two is not sufficient. So adding another um another development onto the existing infrastructure is, is not good. And it needs to be studied to ensure that what was installed can truly um handle the burden. I myself, unfortunately, have had to replace both main and main water line and main sewer line to my property. And it's, it hadn't even um met the lifespan. The final thing that I'll bring up and I'm, is that I dealt with the toll road construction of two forty-one and federal land in California. At some point, you come up to construction that leaves you with only one unavoidable course of action. And we really have to look at uh building Hathaway Street to the edge of nineteen oh six because there is only one unavoidable course of action for that church. That church goes Thank you.
Next I have Ashley. Ashley, please state your name, address if you're affiliated with a group or organization and your time starts as soon as you start, start speaking.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Lighty and I am a nurse at UVA Hospital. I have lived in Avon Park community for two years now. Um, I also live off of Tudor Court, like many others that have spoken this evening. I moved to Avon Park because it was a small, safe neighborhood where I could come and go as my hospital shift work required. Then the construction began for Avon Park Two and folks who did not live in my community began to appear in cars, on bikes and on foot at all times of the day and night. Therefore, I am concerned about the safety and the influx of folks who, if the development proposal goes through, as is, will have only one way in and out of the neighborhood. That is to drive in and out of Hathaway, as mentioned. So I'm asking the planning commission and the board of supervisors to deny the contractor's proposal to rezone the proposed nineteen oh six Avon Street Extend Development to an R fifteen. The county's comprehensive plan The county's comprehensive plan has this area approved for R six. And with all due respect, I need to ask why the county spends so much time and money preparing a comprehensive plan? If the county does not adhere to it. Why is it that the county allows developers to apply for and receive a waiver from that plan? Especially when a rezon is completely inconsistent with other neighborhoods in the area. An R fifteen zone approval would allow for fifty-four homes on just three point six acres. The developers submitted a plan that calls for thirty-eight homes, but builders and their plans come and go in history as stated before. Clearly demonstrates that when zoning is changed, developments in the number of housing units can also change. Our community does not want fifty-four homes in our neighborhood, not only for personal safety reasons that I mentioned above. But also because using our community as a throwaway for both Avon Park Two. And then nineteen oh six Avon Street Extend Development is inconsistent with the communities on either side of Avon Street. A rezoning request R six is much more consistent with the character of the already existing neighborhood. And comparable to the adjacent Avon Park one and Avon Park two communities. Thank you in advance for your willingness to address our community's concerns.
Thank you. All right, next we have Dennis. Dennis, please state your name and address. If you're affiliated with a group or organization, you have three minutes to speak and that starts as soon as you start speaking. Dennis, can you unmute, please? Dennis, can you please unmute yourself so that we can hear you?
There we go, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, good, thank you. My name is Dennis O'Connor, I live at the corner of Hathaway and Arden Drive at the entrance to Avon Park Two. I'm concerned about the proposal to use Arden as the entrance to the new development. As a result of Avon Park Two, we're already dealing with increased traffic on the steep slope and blind curve of Arden Drive. Adding the additional traffic of construction vehicles for nineteen oh six Avon is a concern of ours. Um, as you've heard in discussions with the builder for Avon Park Two, we were promised the construction vehicles would use the road. Built on that property for emergency vehicles, unfortunately, that has not been the case. For the past two years, most construction vehicles have used Arden. We'd like to avoid being subjected to this for more years to come, at some point, we'd like to be able to sit outside and enjoy the neighborhood. In addition, the developer for nineteen oh six Avon suggests that the proposed development is too dense to allow for access. To Avon Street Extended. Instead of creating a less dense plan that fits into the recommendations of the county. Uh, shimp engineering has suggested a future access road through the property of the neighboring church. However, as you've heard, since church representatives have not expressed interest in selling their property, nor in providing access through. We wonder how the future access road would be built. Um, if we allow builders to continue getting dispensations for projects that are too dense for the available space. And contrary to the comprehensive plan, we wonder what the value of the comprehensive plan is. We believe that taking a small lot and planning for more dwellings than it can accommodate. Resulting in not enough space for access should not be an accepted practice. So for us as a neighborhood, as you've heard, the bottom line is that we request this development be zoned no higher than R six. In accordance with the comprehensive plan and that the development include an access road into nineteen oh six Avon directly from Avon Street Extended. Thanks very much for your attention.
Thank you, I don't have anybody else with their hand raised at this time?
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, as it is our custom, we will provide the applicant a moment to come up and respond. Uh, to the comments that have been heard and you will have five minutes, thank you.
Thank you, uh, first clarification, I think this was clear from the staff presentation, but some some of the commenters maybe weren't that. It is R fifteen zoning, but the maximum density is eleven roughly, so thirty-eight. And that's not something that we can just simply decide our own to put in fifty some odd. It said a thirty-eight maximum, which is all the numbers I presented to you all about. School impacts, traffic impact, et cetera, are based on. The, I don't know if I can get my map back up, but you you all know that Hathaway is a public street. And I think one thing important to understand about that is, there's been there fifteen years and the reason it's been maintained with the state for that amount of time. Is it was required when it was built and accepted to extend to serve a neighboring property. Public infrastructure is built that way to serve the public and with the idea of making connected streets and neighborhoods. And not having every single development have its own access onto a road like Avon Street. So that's not, this sort of creation of this connection to our site was set forth on the approval of that plan. It was always made that way, and in fact, for us to have a public street, we're required to connect to that street. We are further required to extend our our road, the adjoining proper to the north, the church. Whether they have immediate plans to redevelop or not, that's the connectivity requirements the state and the county to. For creating public roads to serve the public at large. So for those, I know it's certainly maybe frustrating for those who are in the neighborhood and see these things come about. But recognize that that's not something that was decided last month, the county and VDOT, but rather that's how the. Design was laid out from the very beginning. I think that if you would look at this development and say, imagine Avon Park Three and our project in Avon Park or in Park Two, excuse me. You know, it's one neighborhood, it wouldn't really be seen as that large of a development. We are here now because it's different owners adding on a piece of it fifteen years later. But in the reality and is noted by the the staff's report, there's not a concern about the traffic. They've looked at the number of trips through, identified that the volume of traffic does not create any impacts they were concerned about. So if you think about, if this was all in one, we would look at this plan and say it's fine. And yet now it's, I I understand the the worry in people's minds, but doesn't mean it's not good transportation planning to connect the streets as we have. And plan for that future connection, so that's really been laid out and it's it's county and VDOT policy and I think will continue to be so. The comprehensive plan, it does have a map, it's yellow, I certainly concede that, but it also is five hundred or pages thereabouts, I think. Of other information about how to healthy, how to manage healthy growth in the community. And so in my opinion, when you look at the context of the whole document, the the shift in density from twenty-one to thirty-eight is consistent with that. And if you look at the impacts created, the same, so we have folks saying, well, it should be, you know, R six. Well, that's the same number of trips and the same number of students, that won't make a fundamental difference in what the neighbor is. Other than the houses built will be a little more expensive and that's 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 the change. And to me, that's a bit of a waste of land and we have an opportunity to be a little more creative with some density. Does not have any impacts higher than what was imagined and that makes this an appropriate use of the site. So, thank you all for your time, happy to answer, any last questions?
Any last questions?
Yes, I was just curious if you wanted to elaborate on the math, um, where you talked about the fact that if it was thirty-eight units. It'd be two hundred and ten vehicle trips per day, but twenty-one units y- yielded two hundred and forty vehicle trips per day. Is that because you're assuming more single-family residential, which has a higher trip generation per unit?
Correct, if we develop at that lower density, they would be essentially all single-family units. And those would have a higher trip count than a multifamily type or a townhome, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Would you, would you, first of all, I will thank you and your staff again for making um, attachments. That normalized can read. I I continue to be.
Thank Kelsey.
Thank you, Kelsey, I I continue to be thankful for you, for you hearing that. When I, when I happened to be sitting in that middle chair, um, it was a pain and thank you for, thank you for doing that. Doesn't mean that I'm, yes, all this, but it's it's helpful to read the, read the materials. Um, so can you help us understand? How your special exception, the requested special exception by the applicant will connect to the existing community? I'm trying to understand sort of the, why we don't want trees on the. Left side of public road A and why we don't want. Yeah, public side, let's just look at, let's do that first.
Sure, and that was about, that sidewalk and that section borders up to our kind of green amenity space. And we felt like I made sense of the trees kind of on the other side of the sidewalk, there is no sidewalk on the existing neighborhood on that side. We we connect on the, if you're driving in the right-hand side. But so I think that was just an element of uh, sort of maximizing the width of the green space in that area was the the logic behind that.
And then on the private road A, where you're saying. To alleviate both the planting and the sidewalk over there. So that if I'm in one of the houses that's over there, I have to come, I have, and I guess I should ask. What will the side yards look like over there, will they be fenced or will they just be open to the street? Or will it be up to people, well, if it's rental, it's up to your, it's up to the applicant, but whatever they do, if it's sold, that's a different question.
Yeah, I mean, I think you mean the waiver for the ones, it's sort of adjacent to the green space on the other side, the private street.
But there's the, there's the three units on the, on on your, on your um, on your plan. There are the three units that are not near the green space that back up to, thank you. They're the, they're the, I understand what you're, what you're.
Over here?
Yeah, I understand what you're suggesting over here in the, the three units in the middle of the, the, the sort of the, the island there with the green space on the upper half. But I'm sort of on, you're still making the same argument on, on the, for the three units which are on the, which are closer to the existing community. And so I don't understand why they are, I under, I can, I can appreciate the upper one, I'm having a hard time appreciating the second one.
I don't think we have a, this has the green strip still on it, right? US have exhibit and.
Not on this one, it doesn't, it is proposed to be waived and then the yellow part is proposed to be the sidewalk in the planning to be waived. Because I've got the, this mustard colored on the, on the top part and the uh, the avocado color on the bottom part on this.
Sorry, I think that's in the exhibit, can you guys put your picture up? I have a little trouble following, I remember seeing it earlier, but.
Attachment eight.
Yeah, so yeah, I mean, I think that the sort of similar that on private road A. All those units have a sidewalk to get them out and then you can see there's a crosswalk to get you down private road B, the main sidewalks. We just didn't see any value in having a sidewalk.
Become a round.
On the, on the round, because again, it just took it took away from green space that could be used better in our opinion.
Okay, so that's a good, so I will accept that. Um, and then if you could also talk about, there was a bunch of concern, there's a, there's a, a degree of concern. About these individuals using the amenities in the, in the existing community. And and how is that, I mean, we've done that and we had that conversation with a vanity down the street where somebody didn't want. They actually put in bollards so that they couldn't walk through and go over there, so can you talk a bit about how that might be mitigated up here?
Well, we've followed the same amenity requirement that the neighbors do, so as far as like. Per unit, we'll have equal amount of amenities required by the county code as they did. So we will, we're not showing here what those exactly will be, the county has an ordinance that requires a set number of things. So we will have our own amenities that are equal in proportion to the neighbors. I like to say that when, I have to think, when we get past these in ten years from now. Neighbor walks from this neighborhood to that neighborhood and they're all one neighbor and they're all one community and you visit some of the dog park and they come visit with your child, the tot lot. I know that's, doesn't always work out in practice, but I think from a planning standpoint, the county has established a code essentially. Kind of say pro rata, per year number of units required amenity space that as far as I know, seems to work well, so we'll have to provide our own. I hope that everyone gets along over time, but it's a little bit, such as beyond sort of zoning and planning in some ways into. How these neighborhoods are maintained and so forth, but uh, we will have our own amenities.
And if I might ask him, so there was also some conversation about Hathaway Street becoming sort of the the drag strip of. Of uh, off of Route, Route twenty there of Avon Street Extended. How long, how, how, what's the new piece of length that's that Hathaway Street is, is expected to be? Um, and then how does that, if we put it all together, how long will that street be, how long will, what's the length of Hathaway Street?
I do not know off the top of my head, hang on one second.
Okay, and here comes the information.
Yeah, it's our length of Hathaway Street. Actually, you know what, hold on, maybe I do have it handy, here's where it starts. So that's, oh, we're probably five hundred feet.
So you're five hundred.
On our piece, right?
And you're attaching that, you're concatenating that too?
The current length, which is, we had their site plan up earlier. It must be, it must be six or seven hundred feet, we can measure it.
Okay, that's fine, so we're, we're talking around somewhere about eleven hundred feet. Okay, then I'll ask staff a question about what kind of mitigations need to be put in place, eleven hundred foot road, public road, if any.
I could just tag on to a question that Commissioner Bibbins was was touching on, on the uh. The exception for the the planting strip along Hathaway. I understand the logic there was because you have the green space, so you, but you still had the sidewalk, but you don't have the planting strip. Of course, the advantage of a planting strip, as as obviously you know, is is there is some safety when you have that, that. Um, street planting and you have the sidewalk inboard, it's the same condition you currently have on, on Hathaway. On the east side of the road, so I'm just wondering, why wouldn't you keep that? It seems like it is a, it's a safety issue, it's also a continuity of that, I understand you don't have it on the west side. But the west side has a different condition, right, because there's a large berm there and it is planted, um, along and certainly could be planted more, but. Uh, there is some plants, I'm just wondering. The logic there, because I'm not quite understanding, just because there's a green strip, but you have the sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, I think it really was just simply the, the, the central green space has a certain width. And we effectively picked up six more feet of that width, which we, we felt was more meaningful in that zone than the zone between the street and the sidewalk. I, I, could the, you know, is that a deal killer project? No, that's something that, again, that's sort of our opinion of it, I think it could go either way, but we've, that, that, that was the basis of our request. We felt it was just more valuable to have that space there.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
I have a quick one, just on the um, the plan that's currently shown on the screen. So the stormwater management feature, is that a stormwater management pond?
It would almost certainly be a biofilter.
Biofilter, so um, in another of your illustrations, it's shown as green space. So are we to infer that there would be like a walking path around it? Or you would sit near the bioswale and enjoy it, or, I mean, I'm trying to understand it, how, I mean, it's green, I get that. But like, is it something that is uh, usable, enjoyable? And I'm not suggesting people frolic in there, I'm just saying, would they be able to sit on a bench and watch the butterflies or whatever?
I mean, you certainly could, uh, we have done some of those and I've seen some that were built that are quite nice, ten years after their construction. I honestly hadn't thought through that, as far as the zoning goes, it's not, it's required to be part of the open space, but it's not necessarily part of like the active open space. Um, no reason it couldn't be, uh, and then I think, you know, the biofilter ends up being not particularly deep. Because it dries out, I, you know, if I lived in one of those units and I had a, you know, six-year-old, they probably would scramble down there and have a good time, that's fine. Um, it would not be, you know, fenced off with barbed wire fence, something like that, but generally, we've not designed those sort of intentionally to be that. Um, but it's not unavailable for folks to use.
Sure, I mean, if you've seen the one in Greenleaf Park in Charlottesville, it was designed, it was, it's in a park and it was designed. And the kids go in and they restack the rocks every now and then, the city comes back and puts them back where they're supposed to be and it seems to work, anyway.
I'm sure, miss.
One quick question, so on this exhibit, there is a hatched area adjacent to, parallel to Avon Street. A dark hatched area, is that critical slopes?
A managed slope.
Yeah, understood.
Correct.
It is managed critical slopes.
Uh, yes, managed slope, yes, and so it is, we're allowed to disturb, but there's sort of requirements under.
Understand, yeah, so um, you're showing retaining walls, I think, in the managed critical slopes area, is that right?
Yes.
And so are you requesting that those managed slopes be be impacted? Or is that something that you would handle at staff level with a site plan?
As long as we follow the guidelines, it's a six-foot matching wall height and so forth, it's a staff review.
Okay, got it.
So yes.
Thank you.
Last call for questions?
Yeah, I have, I have one more. It it does seem like you have um, green space or split up over several different areas of this plan. Um, is there a reason why you decided to fracture the green space up into multiple pieces as opposed to consolidating in one space? Um, is there a reason why you decided to fracture the green space up into multiple pieces as opposed to consolidating in one space?
Uh, I suppose there's always layout considerations of how the road must go, for example, you know, there's certain things that are, must have. I think we probably found that like, if you look at that central green space. Like that is sort of sufficiently large for our amenities we would have in there, like for parts with top lots and so forth. And then the space becomes that has a path down road, and it becomes more of like a, it's a, you know, tree plant area, it's. Available, but it's not so like an active space. So we have a, a guideline we go by from zoning ordinance, and so we sort of pick that as our active. Which is that central green space, and the rest of it is accessory to that, I guess. So. Sometimes we'll put it all together, but it's sometimes also nice to have a couple zones where you just sort of replant trees there. It becomes a little wooded area. Yeah, I can just weigh in on the green space, um.
Can you share your name for the public?
Yeah, for the record, I'm, I'm Kelsey Schlein, I'm a planner with Chimp Engineering. Thanks for the opportunity to respond to your question. Um, so Jenny Smith, our, our client is actually a landscape architect. And so one of the first conversations we had when she came to us with this project was. She really liked the idea of small intimate, like, green spaces split up throughout the community that could be accessed. Um, and so that, and that they could have different, um, characters and like each one of them. So that was really. That was kind of an idea that she brought to us from the initial design phase. And so I'd say that was also, in addition to all the requirements and, you know. Engineering side of things that we have to adhere to, that was like an original tenant that she brought to us, um, to, to move forward with, with design. Thank you.
I just have one other thing, Chair. So there was a bit of conversation and concern about how, if this project moves forward. How are you going to bring construction equipment? On the site to not be disruptive to the existing communities? And could you speak to that, please?
Sure, and there are projects where developers have included a condition where the construction traffic go offside. I think part of the problem with that is that's. Another thing for the county to enforce. I think practically on this site, you could do that some. But as the great, as the site is developed, the, the existing driveway now becomes sort of filled in and becomes inaccessible. So I do think that probably the construction traffic would largely need to go through the neighborhood, especially as, as the neighborhood is built out. Because that's really the only access to the road. And I think the VDOT would say. You know, they don't necessarily want, uh, trucks trying to pull in and out on a, you know. Steep grade or something like that in Avon if it was avoidable. And you realize that's an inconvenience for folks, but I think. I don't want to stand here and make a, a promise that I think is likely to be. Broken by contractors down the road because it's difficult to pull off.
All right, thank you. And with that, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, bring it into the commission. We've heard staff's report, we've heard the applicant's report, public testimony. Initial thoughts, reactions, concepts to wrestle with.
Chair, can I ask staff a couple of questions before?
Absolutely.
So, so there were, there was a number of conversations about sort of the conditions of driving from. From there, from this community on to Avon Street. Oh, sorry. There was a number of conversations about. The, the sort of traffic and, and whether or not there were accidents coming from this community on the Avon Street. And I was wondering. Sometimes you have access to VDOT information. And I was hoping you had access to VDOT information to tell us about that intersection if possible, or that driveway coming into Avon Street.
Yeah, I, I can, I can take this. Kevin McDermott, I'm the, uh, acting planning director. Um, and also a, uh, transportation planning manager. Uh, so I did check the, the VDOT crash data. And, and surprisingly, there are no accidents, uh, in the database for that intersection with. Um, at Avon and, uh, Avon, Avon, or Arden, I'm sorry, at Arden and Avon. Uh, there, there, this is, I think, uh, seven years of data. I don't know if that road has actually been in for a full seven. Years yet, but, uh, I, I did not see a single accident at the intersection.
And then if you could also speak to, there was a conversation about. That above a certain, above a certain, um, number of feet on a s- public road, you need to have tra- traffic calming. And if you could bring some experience or just sort of validate or, or. Or bring some, bring your opinion to whether or not that's something that, uh, a, a road of. A public road of some length has to have, has to have applied to it.
Uh, there, there's, there isn't a standard for that, um, in, that I'm aware of in the VDOT road design manual. They do. State that if you are implementing traffic calming measures that, uh, between different measures on the road. 500 feet is approximately what they recommend. So if you were to put speed bumps on a road. They would want those to be approximately 500 feet apart, uh, but I'm not aware of a standard that says. That anytime you have a straightaway over 500 that you need to include that and, uh, include, uh, traffic calming devices. Um, but, but I, I hope I'm not mistaken that that is, but I do know that we have. Lots of roads over 500 feet that have no traffic calming on them. So I, I would expect that's not a standard.
All right. Well, you can work around the horn. I'll start to my right. Any initial thoughts, reactions that you want to put forth?
I'd like to skip for now.
I, I do absolutely appreciate the need for more density in our urban ring, and I appreciate the benefits of. Building densely because I live in the rural area, and I appreciate all of you taking the density, but. I would, I, I'm, in, in a, in a decision that involves rezoning a property. We're, we're giving the developer a tremendous amount of benefit because they're getting a whole lot more units. And they're getting a, a serious financial benefit from being able to do that. And so in, in exchange for that, I want to see. Some really excellent design. I want to see something that is a, a caliber of development that's beyond the usual. And, and I'm not seeing that in this, in this site. Uh, I understand the landscape architect's idea for broken up little green spaces, but actually. This could have been a property where you could have had some green connectivity through the site and done a lot more with that, with that layout, so. Um, that, I, I am, I'm, so just on the design standpoint, I'm not seeing anything that moves me, shall we say. Uh, in terms of the density itself, I feel that what is it, the comprehensive plan is actually more in keeping. With the character of the surrounding neighborhoods. So usually on this dais, I am. Higher stories, more and more density, but density done well. Uh, and I'm, I'm just not, uh, feeling it, as they say. So I'll leave it at that for now. I like to hear from my fellow commissioners. I often change my mind three, four times up here, so. Go ahead and, and tell me your thoughts.
Very good.
Sure, thank you. Um, so let me see if I can. Make sense of my notes. Um, I'm gonna begin with the end, and, and that is. The question that I asked myself is, do I believe the application justifies and overcomes the established comp plan guidelines? So before I answer that, that's the question that I'm starting with. Um, generally speaking, everything you said. About density, about focusing density in this area, about thinking how we can maximize affordable housing, um. I agree with all of those things, I think, are the right things. Um, that said, I think this is an example of a 10, of putting 10 pounds in a five pound sack. And in my, my feelings are. That when you look closely at this plan, and I realize I'm trying not to focus a lot on the detail of the plan, because I know that that's not necessarily. However, it's been offered to us, and it's been given to us, and it's really helped me and seen and revealed some of my. Primary concerns about the density. Um, so thinking about retaining walls that are impacting really close to managed critical slopes. Understanding you can get a waiver, understanding you're going to need to grade outside of those. Um, a right of way on Hathaway Street that you can see on the property that's adjacent, and you extend that up. And it nicks the edge of the development units that are shown adjacent to Hathaway Street as you go further. Um, the concern about, see, you know, in my mind, the setbacks, I know they'll all be figured out, but it's really close to the green space. Um, the, um, non-relegated parking. Um, you know, this is, I know, hadn't, has not gone before the ARB, it's going to go before the ARB, the, the parking is. Not relegated. Um, it's not going to be great for the entrance corridor. Um, under the heading of streets. The road not being able to connect, I think, is a byproduct of trying to squeeze a lot into this plan. And I understand, and I sympathize with the engineer, because if you look at the adjacent property, Hathaway Street was also required. To dead end into an adjacent property boundary, right? So that pattern that we heard a lot of people speak against. Is actually a characteristic of the community they live in. So I understand that that's a county requirement, the interconnecting streets and so on, and I think that's an issue that. Um, is still important to focus on moving forward. That said. Not, you know, the, the adjacent land, I, where the church is located, even if. The church had decided that, oh, yeah, we're, we'll play in this game. We'll, we'll actually get together. We're good. I'm not convinced that there's capacity on that property to be able to take that extension of that road and build additional units. So I'm not sure it would ever be marketable, um, and whether a developer would consider that, but that's neither here nor there. Um. Let's see. The last is the comp plan, and one of the, the, um. The, the public who spoke, I think it was the last, maybe one of the last ones online, I thought, put it very well. Um, and that was, uh, the importance of the comp plan and what we have before us and the work that's gone into that. And, and my general feeling is, um. You know, the, the, this, this is an opportunity to, and maybe I'm not going to, I'm going to put this in a stronger way than I really mean, but it's sort of like. Are we in the business of conveniently picking off areas that are not designated in the comp plan? Um, are we picking them off ahead of where we should really be picking them off? Like, should we be thinking about? As we amend the comp plan, we should be looking at areas like this, right? And I think that's, uh, maybe, uh, an important thing to consider. Um, there is one, uh, statement that the applicant made at the end that I disagree with, and that is. This does not have any more impacts than was originally imagined in the comp plan. That was a quote, direct quote. So. I'll answer my first question that I began with, and that is, do I believe the application justifies and overcomes the established comp plan guidelines? No, I do.
Well, I am not going to repeat what my colleague was saying because my sentiments are very similar, and I asked myself a similar question. Uh, so what I'll, what I am going to talk about is, uh, uh. A couple of points that I, I think underline, uh, the base, the, the, your basic logic on this, but also. Hopefully that would help inform the comp plan as we think about it in the future. Um, so one of the comments that was made is that we've been leaving. A lot of density on the table. It's not the first time we've heard that. We've heard that in a couple. In fact, I think we've even heard that from staff and that they've made some reports to us. Uh, where we've left density in the table. So what I, what I would. I was thinking about that statement, saying, well, what if we didn't leave the density on the table? What if we did build out? I think 35 units per acre instead of 12, 30, or 34, 34 instead of nine, 34 instead of eight, 34 instead of 24. It means that our school would be more overcrowded. It means that we would have more traffic without bus in this area, and our infrastructure would be lacking even more. So thankfully, we have left some density on the table. Um. And, and where I think this begins to inform our comp plan amendment. Is that we really need to think about how we fund infrastructure before. We allow additional density, and here we're being asked to allow additional density even beyond the comp plan. So. For all the reasons stated in, in, in previously, and what I've stated, I, I believe that, um, the character of the neighborhood, again, to. As Firehawks comments is consistent with the comp plan.
So I'm gonna, I'm not gonna basically step away from what my, my colleagues have said. Because I too went to the land use, saw the land use, what it was, and thought that's a great so- solution. Thought to, to look next door, went to visit it, and thought that that all sort of worked together as a community of three different parcels there. And so I do, I also think that the land use, which is there due to the, to the comp plan, is what I would expect it to be built there. But I'm going to go someplace else for a second. So I need to remind people that affordable housing does not mean poverty. And I continue to be offended. By our community that says that if something's affordable. That that naturally means that these are people without means who are going to live there. The teachers at that school up the street can't live in the majority of the houses in Albemarle County. The last time I looked, which was a week ago. The median household income was, a medium, uh, home for sale was $465,000. That would mean that an affordable house in this particular community might be in the $200,000 range. This is not, in the old world, section eight housing. And I would appreciate it when people come before the planning commission that they don't conflate the two items. Affordable, as I will say, and then I will move on, means that the typical worker in our community. Cannot afford to purchase a house. Which is why we see tremendous growth in Green County, which is why we see tremendous growth in Fluvana and Louisa. And I happen to say, if you go to Waynesboro, you will see a vibrant community that is coming back. Because people live there, work here, because it is affordable over there. And those are people with automobiles, and those are people who take the shuttle. From Stanton to Waynesboro to the university because they are not making enough money to live in our county. And so Chair, thank you, but I too will support, not support it at this level, but would support it at a different level.
Thank you for those comments. You want to comment?
Yes, um, I would just second particularly, um, Commissioner Firehawk's comments there, I think, um. I think to go beyond the comprehensive plan density, this needs to also go above and beyond in terms of its design. And I don't see that here.
Yeah, thank you. I have nothing else to add, uh, that you haven't already heard. Uh, there's a commissioner from this district wish to make a motion. Either support or against.
Sure, that's me, right?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Oh.
Could I approach for one second?
No, that, I think we're.
Beyond that.
I was going to just request deferrals. That's acceptable.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you all for your, your comments. I appreciate particularly Mr. Bibbin's comments. I regret not saying so to the affordable housing earlier. It's, it's a, a big problem, but. I mostly agree with the position, but your position is clear. So if we could request deferral, I will revise our plan and come back.
Kelsey, does a date need to be set or can it be indefinite?
It's, it's preferable to set a date, but not required.
Would you like to set a date, sir?
Yeah, we could say something in three months out, something on those lines. About, about three month window out, that'll give us time to make some revisions, coordinate with the staff, and then they can bring a report back to you.
And, and possibly even additional dialogue with the community. I think you heard some interest in that.
Certainly, yeah, I, I, our, our owners are part of that same community, so they'd be happy to engage.
Right.
So, Mr. Chair, it looks as though May 9th is the closest meeting to three months out. Sorry, Kelsey, could you repeat that? It just said that, uh, it looks like May 9th is the closest meeting to three months out, if that's available. Uh, I believe it'll be available. Um, I'm trying to check my calendar now to see if you have something.
Can we say by June 1, if not earlier?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be on a date, correct, on a.
By June 1, if not.
A date of commission.
All right. So.
Because you don't have, you don't have a what's in it, man, yeah.
Yeah, I think we, I think that we would, we would actually re- recommend or. Uh, prefer that we don't have a date, that we leave this open so that we can. Have the time to discuss and make sure we get this on the appropriate time without having to come back for a second deferral if that happened.
All right. Is there a motion from the commission to?
Sure, I would move that at the request of the applicant, we defer. DMA 2022 dash four, 1906 Avon Street Extended to a date to be determined.
And, and Commissioner Missile, would that also include a motion to defer the two related, uh, requests for, um, waiver?
Yes.
Second. All right, any additional discussion?
I look forward to the, the better proposal.
All right. All right, what's that? Madam Clerk, can you call the role?
Yes, sir, I can. Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Mr. Vividz.
Hi.
Mr. Karazana.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk.
Hi.
Mr. Missile.
Hi.
Mr. Clayburn.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you to all who have come out to speak, and thank you to all who presented. I think right now it's probably appropriate to take a a bio break before we we head into our second and and final um hearing of tonight. So this this takes seven, and uh we'll be back here, we'll do the math at seven fifty-eight, so. Next on the docket, SP twenty twenty-two zero 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 two Crossroads Tavern and Inn. And we'll turn this over to Mr. Rattleback, who's had a long night tonight for the staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, once again, my name is Andy Rattleback, and I'm a senior planner here with Albemarle County Planning Division. And this evening, we are here for a public hearing for a special use permit application. Application number SP twenty twenty-two dash two, known as the Crossroads Tavern and Inn. To provide uh some context on the location of this site, I have highlighted the uh location of the parcel that houses the Crossroads Tavern and Inn. It is in the North Garden community of Albemarle County, south of Charlottesville on Route twenty-nine. To the west, adjacent to the property, is the Pippin Hill Vineyard and Winery. And to the east across Route twenty-nine is the um small-scale commercial center of the Crossroads Corner Shops, which includes several um businesses, including the Dr. Ho's Humble Pie Pizza Parlor, the um a bank branch, a gas station, and a convenience store, as well as several um institutional uses south of Plank Road across from the Crossroads Corner Shops, including the North Garden Post Office and the um North Garden Volunteer Fire Station. Uh, sorry for the delay, having some technical problems. So um getting back to the uh presentation, some site information about the proposal. So the current use, um the parcel is about four acres. It is the site of the historic Crossroads Tavern and Inn, which was constructed circa eighteen twenty. And it is currently operated as an inn with seven guest rooms and thirty tavern dining seats. The proposed use um with the special use permit, the applicant is requesting to expi- expand the inn use with twelve additional guest rooms across four new cottages. So it would be a total of nineteen guest rooms on the property, along with the thirty thirty tavern dining seats to remain. The zoning of the property um is rural areas, RA, and it is also located within the entrance corridor overlay district. The uh nearby and adjacent zoning districts include RA to the west and to the southwest, and VR and C one to the east. So um VR is Village Residential, and that is the yellow color on the screen, and then the pinkish color is C one Commercial. Um, and so the applicant is requesting this use pursuant to section eighteen point ten point two point two point two seven A of the zoning ordinance, which allows a restaurant to tavern or inn located on a site containing an historic structure. Um, so uh just to, I wanted to bring up the section of the code in the rural areas chapter of the zoning ordinance uh with the request that the applicant is uh submitting this application under location on a site containing a structure that is a historic structure and or site as defined in section three point one. Um, and then there are several criteria under that as well. And then at the bottom of the screen, I've included um section three point one of the zoning ordinance defining what a historic structure or historic site is. And that is any structure or site listed on the National Register of Historic Places or the Virginia Landmarks Register. And the Crossroads Tavern and Inn is listed on both of those registers. Um, just because Village Residential is not a zoning district that we see that often in the um with our rezonings and special use permit, since there are not a lot of parcels in the county uh zone for Village Residential, I just brought up what the intent of VR is um encouraging residential and other small-scale development, compact development in uh within that area, and encouraging creative design um and permitting some related non-residential development. So even though this does not directly apply to the proposed use, I did want to give some information on what Village Residential is. So looking at the comprehensive plan, this site and all of the adjacent and nearby parcels in this area are designated as rural areas in the comprehensive plan. And rural areas has several um recommended uses, including the preservation and protection of agricultural, forestal, open space, and natural historic and scenic uh resources, along with dwellings developed at a density of one-half unit per acre or one unit per two acres in designated development lots. Um, I also wanted to mention that this parcel, even though it is not located within a hu- an agricultural and forestal district, it is located adjacent to the hardware agricultural and forestal district, and those parcels that are in that AFD are highlighted in yellow, um kind of a creamish yellow on the screen. So it is the parcel south of the property on um south across Plank Road. And because this is adjacent to an AFD, county practice is that the Agricultural and Forestal District Advisory Committee reviews the proposal um and decides whether the proposal conflicts or does not conflict with the purposes of the agricultural and forestal districts. So the AFD committee uh met about this proposal on Wednesday, November the ninth of this past year, and at that meeting, the committee did vote unanimously that the proposal does not conflict with the purposes of the AF district. Um, so this is a screenshot of the concept plan that the applicant has provided for this special use permit application, and there is um you also had that in your staff report packages. So I'll just go over some of the um elements of this plan. You have the four new cottage structures um on the northern point of the parcel, kind of north uh in the center. You have a square portion colored light green. That is what the applicant is calling the village green, kind of a field, open space area for residents of the inn, as well as that is the location of the septic fields. In north of that are the four um proposed cottage structures, each with three guest rooms for a total of uh twelve guest rooms, as well as associated parking. And then down at the bottom of uh the parcel, the southern portion of the parcel, you have the existing structures, the uh inn and tavern building closest to Plank Road, the old schoolhouse and chapel structure, and a summer kitchen. And uh the applicant is also looking to add a port-cochere structure to the um schoolhouse and chapel um as a use for guest check-in. There is also an employee entrance proposed in the southwestern portion of the property, kind of behind the schoolhouse and chapel uh building structure, and um then the wells are proposed for the very northern tip of the property. This um slide just gives kind of a zoomed-in view of where most of the new construction is proposed to take place. The four cottage structures, each with three guest rooms and um porches and a veranda connecting some of the guest rooms, as well as the associated parking and landscaping shown um uh throughout the property and along the edges. Um, in reviewing a special use permit, there are four factors that staff in the planning commission are supposed to um review as defined in the zoning ordinance. And those are, one, no substantial detriment to adjacent parcels, two, character of the area is unchanged nearby area, three, harmony, whether the proposed special use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the chapter, both the rural area zoning district and with the special use permit chapter, with the uses permitted by right in the district, and with the applicable provisions of section five, and with the public health, safety, and general welfare. And regarding section five, section five is the supplemental regulations for uses in the county. And historic ends, taverns, and restaurants are listed as one of those uses in section five that has supplemental regulations. And that really has to do with being consistent with the rural area goals in the comprehensive plan, as well as looking at the historic structures and ensuring that they do not um cause delisting from either of the two registers that they are listed on, or in this case, both of them. And then the fourth factor is consistency with the comprehensive plan, and whether the special use is consistent with what the comprehensive plan recommends. So um in looking at those four factors, um staff um reviewed several um different parts of the application, and um the full list is in the staff report. However, I did want to highlight a few of those that uh there is the possibility for noise to be generated by guests at the inn. And to mitigate that um concern, there is a commission, a condition recommended to prohibit outdoor amplified sound. In addition, um I wanted to just point out that naturally produced sound or noise, such as unamplified human voices, is not regula- is not regulated by the county, so that would not be part of it. Um, there is a potential for trespassing on adjacent parcels. So staff has recommended conditions about landscaping and fencing to ensure that guests do not um trespass on those nearby parcels. And of course, signage may be needed to just help inform guests. Traffic and transportation, I will go into more on the next slide. Um, looking at the harmony, um harmony with the nearby area and um character of the nearby area is unchanged. This is an area of uh historic commercial activity. The inn has been operating since eighteen twenty. There are the shops that I uh showed on the first slide across Route twenty-nine, the fire station, the post office, being institutional uses. So there are several commercial institutional uses in this area. And then, of course, I'm talking about the supplemental regulations. This application does require review by the Virginia Department of Historic Resources. And um contacts at DHR did review this special use permit and had no concerns at this time. And staff has also included conditions requiring review by DHR again at the site planning stage um to ensure that the final design of the site does not have any negative effects or impacts on the listed historic resource. Um, so looking at traffic and transportation, as I mentioned on the previous slide, I would discuss more. So this site is approximately three hundred feet west of the intersection of US twenty-nine, which is a four-lane divided highway and Plank Road, which goes east-west um through this community. Um, the ex- the use is expected to generate an additional forty-nine trips above what is currently generated by the use, and so that would be a total of one hundred sixty-three trips overall. There are currently about one hundred fourteen trips generated by the current inn and tavern use. And I wanted to provide the existing traffic counts for this area to provide some um context. So the segment of twenty-nine north of Plank Road sees about sixteen thousand vehicles per day. Twenty-nine south of Plank Road sees about thirteen thousand vehicles per day. And then Plank Road west of twenty-nine, which is where the site is located, sees about two thousand vehicles per day. So looking at the comprehensive plan analysis in this application, there are several chapters of the comprehensive plan that relate back to this proposed use. And in numerical order of the um comprehensive plan, those are historic and cultural resources, economic development, and the rural areas. And so I've included some of the objectives and strategies um listed in each of those chapters and how they relate to this proposed use. So looking at the historic and cultural resources chapter, of course, there is the prominence of a historic resource on the property, the listed historic um inn and tavern. And one of the strategies in this chapter is to find ways for preservation of historic structures and sites to be financially viable for the property owners. In the economic development chapter, chapter five of the comprehensive plan, um, one of the strategies in that chapter is to promote tourism that showcases and preserves scenic, historic, and natural resources of the ru- rural areas, including, for instance, the Crossroads Tavern, which is a historic resource in the rural areas of the county. And then finally, one of the objectives of the rural areas is to protect the county's historic archaeological and cultural resources. Again, looking back at the listed historic structure that is located on this property. So there are several recommended revisions that staff um recommended to the applicant should be uh included in the concept plan and in the application before coming back to the board of supervisors. And that is providing additional fencing or landscaping along the property lines with adjacent properties, as well as providing more information on the conceptual planting screens that they have depicted, especially along the western portion of the property adjacent to Pippin Hill. There are several positive aspects that uh staff has identified with this application. Those include the expansion of the tavern and inn would allow for an existing facility that is a historic feature in the rural areas to maintain its economic vitality and would promote and enhance tourism, which is supported in those chapters of the comprehensive plan I previously mentioned, historic and cultural resources, economic development, and rural areas. Number two is that the proposed expansion has been designed to maintain the historic resources on the property with review by VDHR. And as mentioned in the staff report, VDHR did review this application and expressed no concerns at this time. And just to ensure um that there are no negative impacts at the site planning stage, if the board approves this special use permit, staff has included a condition that VDHR would be involved in uh review at the site planning stage as well. And then finally, the Agricultural and Forestal District's Advisory Committee did find that the proposal was not in conflict with the purposes of the adjacent hardware, um agricultural and forestal district. There were also some concerns about um this application that staff identified. And the, those included that the proposed expansion could cause noise and additional traffic. However, to mitigate noise, um staff has uh included those conditions recommending that um no amplified sound be permitted with the use and then with traffic. with the use and then with traffic, although there is some additional traffic, it's very minimal compared to the numbers on the existing roads as shown in the previous slide. And then with being a commercial use, the additional water and sewer capacity needed to support this proposed use would not fully comply with recommendations for rural areas in the comprehensive plan. So taking all of that into consideration, staff does recommend approval of this special use permit, S P twenty twenty two dash O two crossroads tavern in in with the following conditions, which I will show on the next few slides, provided that the previously mentioned recommended revisions are made to the application prior to it moving forward to a public hearing with the board of supervisors. So there are seven conditions. The first one is a standard condition that we put on conditional use permits that the development shall be in general accord with whatever concept plan is provided and reviewed by staff. And then outlining major elements that must be complied with at the site planning stage. And so for this application, that includes the location and number of buildings and structures, the size of the four new cottages, the location of parking and then landscape screening and buffering. And of course, minor modifications to the plan, which do not conflict with the elements above, may be made to ensure compliance with the zoning ordinance. And that's because at, if the board does approve this special use permit at the site planning stage, all requirements of the zoning ordinance must be met. There is no way to waive those requirements. So in staff's review, looking at stormwater management, parking space, size and design, septic fields, that sort of thing, all of those requirements must be met. Other conditions included, number two, that the number of guest rooms must not exceed the nineteen that the applicant has requested. Number three, the number of tavern seats must not exceed the thirty that currently exist. Number four, the four new cottage structures must not exceed one story in height. Number five, outdoor amplified sound is not permitted. Number six, prior to fight, uh, final site plan approval, the plan, a plan prepared by a professional archaeologist must be reviewed and approved by D H R to ensure that any potential archaeological resources on the site are not negatively affected by the proposal. And then number seven, prior to final site plan approval, the director of planning must be, must determine in consultation with the department of historic resources that the submitted material, so that would be the site plan, that the project has considered the appropriate treatment of those historic resources, including the following items discussing low scale of the cottages, the port cochere being subordinate to the historic buildings, providing educational tools, markers, plaques around the site to inform visitors of the historic nature of the site, as well as distinguishing those historic buildings from the nonhistoric new cottage structures that are proposed, as well as limiting light pollution from the proposed use. And I'm available for any questions. Now we're after the public hearing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Redo Bob. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Start, Mr. Bibbins.
Can we just do some math? So on number two of your, thank you as always, and good to see you again. Well, I haven't seen you in a long time. Couldn't we, on the, on the recommendations you have on number two, that they must not exceed nineteen from the applicant's desire, it looks like they want twelve rooms added on to the five current rooms.
Yes, so there
Okay, maybe I messed up there.
There are seven rooms currently being operated at the inn.
Oh, I thought there were five by their website. You don't, you don't need to respond. I can talk to you. Thank you. Okay, so my, so what I saw on their website is, was incorrect, and I'm going with you. Okay, good.
So there's the seven and they're requesting twelve additional ones and they would be spread out. Twelve are proposed in the cottage structures, two in the schoolhouse and chapel structure, one in the summer kitchen and then four in the existing inn and tavern.
I missed those other ones, the outliers, which will bring me to something else. Okay, so you mentioned on page three of your staff report that this parcel is split zone between R A and V R. But yeah, page three, the third paragraph, last line, in the third paragraph.
So the parcel that is split zoned is the one south of plank road where the, the A F D district is. Um, so the parcel to the south on the southwestern corner of twenty nine and plank road is split zone. You can see it's kind of a jagged line between the yellow and the white, the white being the rural areas zoning district and the yellow being the village residential zoning district.
Struggling. Do you have your little, do you have your little thing on there? Your pointer, thank you. I'm struggling. So are we looking at forty nine ninety? And fifty ten, is that where you're pointing us to?
Oh, looks like
Oh, somebody's got something.
Yeah, so the split zone parcel is this one right here, eighty six twenty seven.
Okay, but that's not where the development is taking place.
Correct.
Okay, okay, fine. It's adjacent, it's across the street. It's the old Sutherland property parcel. Yeah, okay. All right, then that answers, then that, thank you. I have others, but I'll be quiet for right now.
Any other questions for staff?
So that way. Yeah, so this is a question about one of your conditions recommended, one B. It, it, can you go back to it? Anyway, I wrote I was, yeah, the, the conditions, yeah, if you go back. I don't know, I don't know. Oh, yeah, there we go. One B. I'm not crazy. I may be crazy. All right, so the, the condition to talk about the size of the cottage structures, including both enclosed spaces, blah, blah, and the open air spaces is, you know, remains in accord with a plan as the conceptual plan submitted. I was just curious, so does that, is that only referring to the massing? Would that also make sure that it would restrict them from changing, say, a porch to an enclosure? Because right now, I know a lot of people express concerns, it's like, feels like one long structure because there's all these verandas connecting, but they could not enclose the veranda under this condition as you've written. I just wanna
Correct. The condition is intending to prevent those open air spaces like the veranda and the porches that are identified from being enclosed and becoming air conditioned spaces or something like that. Certainly, the language can be more fine tuned prior to going to the board of supervisors to make that clearer or just really emphasize that intent that the verandas and porches are not to be enclosed spaces.
Yeah, I mean, we can get into this at the, at the end of this hearing, but um, yeah, like you could just add and the open air spaces to remain open would be a simple fix. Because, because right now, the way I read it, it might only be referring to massing.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Missile?
Thank you. A couple of questions. A great report, staff, thank you. Just one clarification on the crossroad, the conceptual site plan. There are faint red lines drawn, dashed lines. I think those are the setbacks, I assume, right?
Yes, those are to depict the setback lines.
And Ridge Road runs right through there. Is that because the setback does not apply to travelways?
Correct. Travelways do not have to follow setback requirements. Those are for structures.
And so on here, you recommend, I think, a five foot fence along with some screening material. Do you feel like there's enough room between what's proposed as the ridge road and the property boundary?
Um, it seems like from the concept plan, but of course, that is also something that would have to be determined at site planning and any sorts of conditions or requirements on that would be reviewed at site plan as well to ensure that those can be met.
That it fits. Yep, gotcha. Switching gears, you mentioned village residential and you shared how it's sort of that split zone parcel to the south. And then you referred to village residential. What, what did you want us to take away from that reference?
Um, that was really just to provide more information on village residential and what the surrounding zoning is and what uses could be there because village residential is not really a zoning district that we see often or that we work with often. So just to provide that additional information.
Cool, got it. And then the last question is related to the Virginia Department of Historic Resources. Do you know if a, an archaeological survey has been done on the site or is something that was brought up? And I can ask the applicant that too.
I am not sure if one's been done or not, but the applicant may have better information on that.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes, so if this was developed for residential uses, what would be the amount of homes that could potentially be there?
For residential uses, it would be two permanent residences at four acres. Each residence would have to have a minimum of two acres. So at four acres, it would be two houses on two acres, one house, two acres.
Okay, and then another question in the, in the project narrative, several times it mentions commitments to native plants, but that doesn't appear to be in the, in the, in the concept plan. So, and, and I noticed that in the recommended conditions, it specifies screening, landscape screening, buffering, but does not specify native plants. You know, there was one question that we, one comment that we'd received that suggested that 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 those be specified as native screening traps.
Um, so we certainly recommend native plants in all of our landscaping plans anywhere in the county. However, the listed plants that are permitted in our landscaping plans are not always native plants. And so that is the list that we use. Um, I know there is some talk about revising that list, but that is a revised list has not been approved at this time. So at this point, it is recommendation from staff to use native plants, but it is not something that we can require.
Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? All right, hearing nine will open the public hearing. And I'll ask for the applicant to come forth. You will have ten minutes to make the presentation. Green light means you're good, yellow means time is running out. And to make your remaining key points as quickly as possible, and then red means to stop. So I'll turn it over to you and the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone being here. I know we would all probably rather be someone, somewhere else on a day like today. I do have physical, I do have physical copies of, of the site plan up here. If anyone would like, if that's helpful for y'all to be able to see the site plan while I roll through the deck here. Thank you, Andy, for that wonderful recap of the plan that will make this portion a little quicker and easier. Yeah.
All right, is this thing, is it different?
Yep, no, that's exactly the same. Yep. What I'll be really be focusing on through this is the mitigation of effects of the surrounding landscape. We do want to really speak to the the character of the building. We want to do a full restoration on both buildings. You know, by the way, my name is Matt Lovelady. I've worked with Eastern Porter Group for over ten years and I've been on the ground floor of this project since its inception. The, and I'm currently running the inn as well. So the, the building itself is in kind of a crossroads, not to be too funny, but the, the buildings themselves are at a place where dire work is really coming to a point. It's not quite there yet. They are in a very usable condition, but there is a time coming where they won't be as usable. So we've really created these cottages in this plan as a way to support a full restoration as well as other very small scale experiences that we could have on the property. You know, right now we're limited to one meal a day, which generally is breakfast for guests. So to be able to have a small scale dinner such as a wine dinner with some of the farm components that we want to incorporate into the property would really help us to move the entire property into the next generation. Just focusing on, this is kind of a reiteration of, you know, what we're planning, the interconnected cottages of four structures. And it is technically twelve keys, but we're saying ten keys and twenty guests as we will, we want to add an owner suite into that plan. And I, I will cover that on the next slide. We would reduce the in itself from five rooms to four suites, eight guests there. The main house will have guests check in and two transient use rooms, which adds a possibility of four guests, but those rooms could also be used for other small experiences like, you know, a spa for two guests or something along those lines. And then the summer cottage or the summer kitchen could also accommodate two guests as well. The cottages do represent a general five percent increase in density on the total property. Here are some square footage facts of the properties themselves. The porches and breezeway or verandas are not conditioned. The general height will be no more than twenty feet. And for water and septic, we'll be following all the Virginia Health Department regulations there as well. For the owner suite, I would like to focus on this. It will be the same size and scale as the other structures. The interior will have additional amenities like a washer dryer and a full kitchen. It is one of the upper half of the cottages in the last, the last section there, and it is marked on the site plan. It will not be rentable to guests. However, in the future, if Dean were to, if Dean and Lynn were to move away or otherwise, it would be remodeled back to matching the other, the other cottages. It will not have its own water and septic. It will be tied in with all of the other water and septic of the other structures. We, we've added that more recently because the feedback we received on ownership living on site, we've gotten the most positive feedback on that mitigation. Really quickly, we won't have any uplighting. Everything will be dark skies. Everything will be downward lighting and really focused on kind of safety, moving around the property at night type of thing. For the sightline analysis, this was done by Andrew Walker using G I S to try to inform our plantings for the property to break sightlines from exterior properties. We will do this analysis for both the, I guess, left hand side of the property and for eighty seven four as well. And that kind of gives you what, how, how much of the site would be viewable if we did absolutely nothing? And then this gives you an idea of the possibilities of the informed plantings and how they could break sightlines. This isn't an official survey. This is really more of us trying to show a point of process and a planning process of how that these view shed effects could be mitigated. For our traffic assessment, I'll cover this really quickly as well, as, as Andy really covered a lot of it, but those are our calculations, are very close to our calculations too. We did subtract for, as we have already had some synergy between Pippin Hill and the inn. Sometimes we see additional bookings at the inn and they're visiting for a specific event like a cooking class or a wedding at Pippin Hill. So we do hope that that synergy will lessen some of the traffic generation from both properties. For our water treatment systems or our septic systems, we are using constructed wetlands that'll be integrated throughout the property. So these are able to use very natural plants and natural processes that treats water, removes nitrogen. And you're able to really naturally give this water back to the land at almost potable levels. We use this system currently with two septic pads at Pippin Hill and they are very effective. So Mike Cron is our engineer. He has, he has a verbiage there on kind of the oversight of well and septic systems, which is extensive and has grown to be more extensive even in my time of, of working in that, in that arena for good reason. So and additionally, we've just started to kind of tackle water usage. And so I have kind of our very, very initial findings there. We have through looking at some of our water usage to do laundry offsite. So all laundry will be taken through a laundered service. For groundwater sourcing and aquifer recharge, this was through Stan Tech, the hydrologist engineers built this. And this really kind of covers the amount of some assumptions on how much water naturally occurs on that landscape versus our assumed maximum usage. This is a very new analysis that we received just yesterday. So we were happy to be able to, to place it in here. But the graph, really the pie chart really shows, you know, a kind of natural or a, a very good reflection, I think, of, of what occurs on the site naturally versus what will be recharged. And in addition, while we go through this process, we are open to further water conservation and further, you know, mitigations of that, of that usage. Really quickly, we already use very safe chemicals, especially we have a set with, with the constructed wetlands, you have to use a certain septic and certain chemicals that don't harm those natural, you know, insects and natural things that occur during that process. Here is this actual sign off from Mark Wagner from the D H R and some of his, his quotes there. Um, here is this actual sign off from Mark Wagner from the D H R um and some of his his quotes there. Additionally, you know, educational tours, um educational plaques. Um, and then, you know, research by our team to kind of um ensure that we're not just taking by word of mouth, but really sourcing this information from uh actual historical documents. All of those things are included um in our plans going forward. Uh, that's just a small piece I think we can skip. Um, additionally, you know, we want to really um expand the gardens of the inn. It has uh three or four, you know, little small gardens now. Um, but we really want to expand that and have additional classes of education, all as well as working with PBCC to get. Um, you know, folks who may not have the opportunity to see these things and work in these environments to come out. Um, and those are some of the the restorations that um our owner has worked on over the years. And um, this is just us covering some that we we don't feel this sets a precedent for more commercialism or more expansion. Um, we do feel that we are leaning into the historic uses of the property um as well as um you know, limiting uh, we don't have any plans for late night events or don't we don't have any real reason for folks to celebrate there. Uh, we want to focus the um traffic and the events where they perform successfully, which is at Pippin Hill. And the inn is really a place for them to um quiet down and reside afterwards and not continue with the with the things that are going on. Additionally, I would like to met lastly mention that our team has um opened a V dot study of the intersection um that is right on Plank Road. And um we fully support any adjustments to that intersection to um slow people down or to stop them as we feel that intersection uh is a danger and that some change should be made.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Uh, Mr. Missile, and then anyone thereafter?
Sure. Thank you, Chair, and thanks for your presentation.
Yeah.
It was, they were beautiful slides. The problem was you couldn't read it all. And so one question I have um about that, I started, I got three quarters of the way through the statement from the Department of Historic Resources.
Yeah.
Um, couple of thoughts or questions around that. Um, have you done an archaeological survey of the site?
We personally have not, and to my knowledge, the last one that occurred would have been in the eighties.
Okay.
Um, and there was extensive research by Dr. Lay um throughout the seventies as well.
That was the previous owner?
Um, no, um, he was a U B A professor.
He's a, uh, yeah.
Yeah, but we would be referencing some of his work, a lot of his work and and uh other historical documents. And additionally, Ben Ford is an archaeologist that we've already spoken to um to, who has, you know, all but agreed to um to survey the site.
Good, thank you. So um, one of the things I got to read, I was able to get through in that statement, was that it was all focused on the house. I didn't see anything to, so the the Department of Historic Resources comments were focused on the how the
Yes.
Actual inn.
Right.
Did they consider cultural landscape in terms of the larger picture, the bigger picture, and this being part of a larger landscape?
Yeah, the the site plan that I believe that they reviewed was our original site plan, which was um larger than this one. Um, the separation, I think their main concern to my memory was the separation from the historic property versus the new construction and as well as ensuring the new construction did not um mimic or simulate uh the original um construction. So to make sure that those two things were obviously separate and not confusing to a public who had maybe first visiting the site.
Got you. Uh, thanks. Um. I guess one other thing that I'll just touch on. So being built, when was it eighteen?
Eighteen twenty, and then the the schoolhouse is seventeen ninety.
So potentially enslaved labor built those, right?
Yeah.
Um, and part of the cultural landscape piece is the potential for burial grounds on the property.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you've, it sounds like you've already answered that. You haven't, you're not aware of any.
Well, um, historically, from what we have heard from uh the original owner Jim Stern um and from other historical documents is that there were not, um, there was not any slave, ongoing slave labor on property. Um, additionally, the um Mary, I believe Mary Sutherland uh has said in her journal that her, they had, I think, thirteen or fourteen children, and that her children were the people that she relied on to um to do to do work. Um, having said that, the cemetery on site, um while it is the Sutherland Family Cemetery, it does have unmarked. Um, it does have markers that are unknown. Um, and the hope would be is that if there were any buried slaves, that they would be in that in that section.
Got it. So I guess the reason I asked that is there was some comment, I think it was one of the conditions was the educational piece.
Yeah.
And I think that i- if this goes forward, it's hugely important that that be part of that education. So, one other quick question. Can you tell us a little bit about conversations you may or may not have had concerning connectivity to Pippin Hill from this property internally?
Yeah, for sure. You know, initially, we felt that as far as traffic goes and because of the, you know, when, sorry, when Jim first approached us, he was Jim Stern. He he made it clear that um he does sell additional rooms when we have weather, both small and large events. So our consideration was that we could limit traffic on Plank Road. Um, if we could connect the two properties, both with the walking path and with um a a drivable road. Um, now that they are not connected, I think that there will be some operations that we will have to figure out how as far as how to guess get from there to there essentially. Um, you know, in working through that, uh, that was a perhaps egregious assumption on on our part to put that into the site plan and for submission without going through the proper channels with the B F C A and additionally with uh our direct neighbor, the Woodsons. Um, in speaking with both parties, it was clear that that was not desired. And um, you know, that was, so that was how that got removed and changed.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Can I stay, can I stay with this for a second? Okay, so now I'm fully confused. So when you say your owners, your owner's cottage has the Andrews, is that the Andrews is connected to Pippin Hill?
Yes.
Okay, now you just said that, well, you didn't say anything. It you intimated that there is a separate ownership between these two properties now?
It's not a separate ownership, but they are two separate operating entities from a from a LLC legal.
But the LLC location on this is at Pippin Hill.
Uh, it is under Pippin Farmhouse.
Which is something else?
Yes.
So there's the one, I'm I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be obtuse here.
Sure.
But this is something I I should like have fun with. So.
Someone should have fun.
Yeah, so we, we, otherwise, I don't have any roses to take home, so I better have them here. Um, so, so the the LLC, which is the winery.
Mm hmm.
Which this, which is the address for this property.
Uh, Pippin Hill Farm and Vineyards is its own LLC?
Right, I'm just talking about the address.
Sure, and this is Pippin Farmhouse, which is a separate address, separate LLC.
On Pippin, on Pippin Hill Lane.
Uh, ni- uh, Pippin Hill Lane is the road that's marked, just for context. But this is fifty ten Plank Road, which is the driveway and property right before Pippin Hill. Um, so they are on the same, you know, property line.
But they're not the same ownership.
Uh, uh, Eastern Porter Group owns both.
Both.
Yes, LLC.
And that's the, that's the nexus between the Andrews guy.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
But who's the Stern guy?
Jim Stern is the owner for twenty years from two thousand ish to until we purchased in August of twenty two.
But he, is he somehow involved with the restaurant? Did you mention something about he having some, I'm just trying to understand who are the players?
Sure, sure. Yeah, yeah, no. Um, Jim Stern ha- uh really gave us a lot of historical information about the property. Um, and has able, has filled in a lot of the gaps. Um, and and when I say that we want to do our own historical resort research is that we don't want to rely on the word of mouth from
Former owner.
From the former owner, Jim Stern.
I can come back to her if you want me to. Okay, may I? So there's a couple of things here on, I'm coming off of my my colleague here. We all know it in the um seventeen hundreds that the pathway from 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 the Ravanna over into the valley went by this location.
Mm hmm.
We also know during that time that there were huge plantations, to use an uncharitable word, that that ran from Scottsville all the way over to Rockfish Cave. I happen to know the Sullivans. I knew Mort S- Sutherland before he died, and I had a lot of conversations about him with him, about his property, about his family's property. I wouldn't be surprised if you were to find some of my ancestors buried on this piece of property.
Okay, wow.
Considering some of the conversations that Mort and I had
Okay.
About his extended family and the loves of his extended family and those kinds of things, which, you know, it's Valentine's Day, so we can speak about that. So so I would hope that if this goes forward, that there is, in fact, as my colleague here is suggesting, a rigorous look at the, not necessarily the 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 identified cemetery.
Sure.
But as we've just learned in Charlottesville, that there's a whole host of family members that got buried outside of the cemetery. I don't remember the name of that place, but you all know it's over there in the park where they play golf. And so this community was not necessarily good at keeping people that looked like them in the family cemetery.
For sure.
And this particular area here was the major highway.
Yeah.
From Scottsville to the valley.
Mm hmm.
And it was nothing but large farms until the Civil War. And so I would just suggest that you do some serious work on here, because if you're talking about what happened in the eighties and what happened in the seventies.
Yeah.
No one cared a tinker's damn about the people who weren't in the family and identifying their presence on the land. I think, I think that's, I think that's an obviosity. And so I would just hope that that if this goes forward,
Yeah.
That one of the things that we put as a condition is that there is, in fact, you know the better words, and I I don't know those words, I just know the issues that 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 is done, because that also will help you divi- to divi- uh devise the narrative that takes place on this piece of property for all these people if this should go forward, happens. If I could just go one other thing, sir. Um, I'm trying to also understand. So now that I think I understand, there is not going to be a road between the event space at the top of the hill and this location.
Correct.
Okay, so then your business will not be a function of the event spaces. Is that, is that an assumption?
Correct.
Sort of bogus. You're going to create your own sort of ethos at the inn, I guess. I I will believe that for right now, and I and I and I will be and I will be quiet for right now.
Um, yes.
But we'll come back to something.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
I can, I can elaborate further, which is, which is that, okay, I, you know, we do expect that guests who are staying at the inn will also be attending events at Pippin Hill. And when I say operations, I do mean how do we as a business safely get them from one place to the other if we know, or if we are aware of that connection?
Yeah, I feel much better about that. But it's just this idea that that somehow there was going to be no relationship to these two properties. That's okay. Thanks.
Yeah, so just want to confirm what I'm hearing, that you would expect if there was a wedding at Pippin Hill, some guests would stay at the inn.
Yes, so already we've had cooking classes at at Pippin Hill on a Wednesday or a Friday. Uh, and Wednesdays is maybe a better example of when you might be a slower day of the week. Um, and so, you know, part of our questions now when folks go to book a room is that, are you visiting Pippin and, you know, and what and for what reason? Uh, just so that we're able to say if they're in the tasting room, uh, we know what time they're visiting there. Um, and then if they're attending a cooking class, you know, it's easy for us to kind of have that conversation with them on on arrival.
Okay, thank you. A- any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah. So I've just, o- one thing you may not be aware of, uh, in that visual distance from that property, there's also a G one critically imperiled, critically imperiled habitat. Um, and and you have some great cons, uh, some great discussions about biodiversity and mentions of native plants in your project narrative.
Mm hmm.
Um, could you talk a little bit about that and and how you, how you're interested in in doing more for biodiversity on your property?
Yeah, for sure. Um, at Pippin Hill currently, um, and and this is just my experience so far that I think will inform what will happen at this property. But at at Pippin Hill, um, I started there in two thousand twelve and over the course of ten years, the farm aspect of the name has has hugely expanded. Um, our our gardens are probably four times larger than they are now. We've added chickens to the property and we also um have an apiary. Part of that apiary was that we found that bees were coming to the veranda quite often, so we added a wildflower meadow um to that property so that we could have the the bees travel to there um and find more food and and more to forage. Um, so um, there's already some agricultural operations happening at the end. We did uh take over the chicken coop and the chickens that the previous ownership had, so we have about ten chickens currently um that we use for eggs uh for breakfast for folks. Um, and then there is about four garden beds on property as well. Um, so we would continue to expand uh the garden beds, especially um, things like herbs and lettuces and and vegetables are really easy things that can really um improve the quality of the food that you're providing for people. Um, additionally, we want to use, of course, all native um plantings, especially for any of the um view shed shielding, uh, would all be native plants as well as um beautifying the plank road um in entrance kind of corridor. Uh, so as much as we can possibly do, we'd like to um really bolster that that roadside um on 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 that property to really just, again, beautify that kind of entrance corridor of twenty nine.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks. I have a few questions. Um, you talked about the guest cottages being two thousand sixty-four square feet. But you said that included the interior porches of the breezeway. So how, like, if I'm a guest there, how much space is the interior space?
Uh, the interior space off the top of my head, I believe, is about um maybe around a thousand twelve hundred square feet total.
Right.
Um, and the the rooms currently at the inn uh that were already, that would have queen beds are 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 smaller than that by quite a bit, um, which is why.
If I was to book into one of these rooms, I would get a twelve hundred square foot room, which is like a bed, the bathroom and a little table couch area.
You got it. Yep, and and part, that's part of the cottages is that the kind of dual sections of the cottages could be um allowed to book as a suite, essentially. Um, so for guests who wanted more space, that that functionality is possible. So in some cases, the um, the three keys would become two keys.
Sure, okay. And then um I understand they're one-story cottages. Uh, but how tall are they? Because, you know, you could have a a cottage with a cathedral-type ceiling. I mean, pinnacles on top. I I know you say you're going to mimic or try to, well, not exactly match the inn because you don't want to confuse the periods of history, but I'm just trying to get a sense of how tall these things are.
We've estimated so far sixteen to twenty feet tall.
Okay.
Um, the view shot analysis was done at, was done at twenty-two and a half feet. Uh, not to say that the cottages will be that tall, but to kind of um best inform our plantings that they would have full coverage, um particularly of of roof lines and sightlines.
Okay, and then I was trying to think about visibility. If I was one of the, you know, other people in the neighborhood who was looking across, you know, if they were like bright white, they would stick out a lot more if they were more in the sort of earth tones at the end currently. So what is your thinking on the the paint colors and the blending of the material, you know, so that the materials
Sure.
Feel like they're more part of the landscape, even though they're brand new buildings?
I was able to visit a neighbor's home when we first presented this and um, which I would, I would love to do more often. And um, in that process, they pointed out two white Adirondack chairs that were on that property. And so their desire was that the buildings would not be white, as just the two chairs alone cause reflection and cause. Um, it's really an eyesore for them. We painted the chairs and moved them since as well. But um, yeah, we, while we don't necessarily want to be locked into a certain color, um, you know, just based on feedback, we're happy to even agree to not have white or very light colored cottages.
I I think that would be important because this development is sitting up on a ridge line, essentially. It's up at the top and it's, it's highly visible. And so on the one hand, if I'm driving down the ro- the regular road and I look, and I did come to you and there was a weird lady in your chicken coop, and you didn't notice.
I thought I saw you.
Yeah, that's me. Uh, I I didn't want to talk to the applicants who could maintain neutrality. Um, but, uh, you know, I I um, I, so I'm, I was trying to imagine, you know, if I was coming up to that inn, would I see the cottages? And I don't think I would, because it's up the hill and back and behind. So where you would see them from would be from some of the neighboring properties or from Pippin Hill. And so I do feel like you need to uh not necessarily like get out a bunch of paint swatches from the dais and try to pick a color, but to let us know that it's going to be something that's not white, not highly reflective, that is well blended with colors that are around that area.
One of our initial decks included a concept cottage that was white, and that was the reason we removed that was from the the general feedback of not doing them.
Okay, and I, I have one other question about water. Um, I noticed in the figures, I appreciate you trying to get those figures together. It's hard to kind of like back of the envelope stuff.
Sure.
But, um, they all said it's sixty percent occupancy and I don't know if that was because you felt like, well, sometimes it's a hundred percent, sometimes it's only two rooms. You know, what's the average? Is that where you came up with sixty percent?
That was part of my thought. And additionally, I think our goal as operators is to have, um, to have two people book a suite instead of having more people in, in the three separate rooms. So our hope is to really have, um, you know, quantity over quantity. We want to really sell those, um, separate, those rooms that are able to be separated. Those would sell last as we really want folks to buy those as one. Um, it's, it's better for us as operators and, um, better for the landscape.
Okay, and then you did mention in passing that you, I, I didn't write your exact quote, but something like you might send the laundry out to a linen service or something like that because I, you know, it's washing all those sheets and towels and all of that throw rugs or whatever you have there that, that uses a lot of water.
I had been toying with, um, we had been toying with whether or not that would occur. And I think part of the last couple of weeks, the conversations we have how about water, um, really swayed us to have that done off property. Um, by a linen service, whether it be Virginia linen or Alsko.
Yeah, I'm not, I have no connection to any linen services, to be clear. All right, I, I think I'll leave it for that and I'm sure we'll have more questions after we hear from the public. Anyone else?
Any other questions for the applicant? I'll just end with one question from a perspective of fire protection. Are there any plans for fire pits or kitchens in the cottages now or in the future?
Um, the, there are no plans for fire pits currently. Um, and the only kitchen in the cottages would be in the owner's residence. Um, otherwise, um, there would only be, I guess, kitchenette, so like a refrigerator, like a mini fridge, but no sort of like heating elements or anything like that.
All right, thank you.
I had one more. Sorry, I forgot, I forgot the, the one I actually came in the room with. Um, you have the, at the very top of your drawings, you have like the pedestrian path going up. And then you have this park bench grouping or similar structure. And I am, I'm trying to think about the sensitivity to the adjacent neighbor, Mrs. Woodson. And, you know, if, if we are encouraging people, I mean, I, I'm sure you're like, oh, it's a great place. It's close to the top of that property. So want to sit up high and have your glass of wine or your root beer or whatever you're doing. But I think it, it just sort of encourages people to sit up there and congregate and actually don't think that's a good idea.
Sure.
I, so to me, I would feel like it would make sense not to have any seating up there, to not encourage people to gather and hang out. Because as we said, we can't regulate outdoor sound. But I, I, I visited many, uh, viticultural, uh, facilities in our county. And you'll notice that after people have a few glasses of wine, they get louder. And so just thinking about not encouraging that. So is that something you would consider just taking that out?
We, we would be one hundred percent open to taking that out and perhaps just, you know, and I don't want to talk out of turn, but perhaps maybe having something that curves back around, that's lower, that kind of curves back around.
Yeah, you can go on a little loop walk, but you don't, you're not going to hang out there. And the other part of.
And really the village green is really the, uh, intended location for folks to kind of, if they are gathering during the day, uh, if, if guests happen to know each other, that would be the area.
Right, and so I just don't want to encourage them to hang out up there because there's a neighbor so close.
Sure.
The, the other thing is, um, you know, standing on the Pippin Hill property and looking at, back at this property, you know, right at the tippy top point, there, there's a, the, a road is, not a road, I don't want to say road, a trail is kind of cut through. Um, and it looks like it's already, it, you know, are you telling guests? Yeah, you can kind of go that way, we'll look the other way or
Yeah.
or no, you can't go that way, or what is, what's going on with that?
Sure, most folks right now are driving between the two properties. Um, the, um, I'm sure that there are the occasional guests that, that walked that, that point. That has been for our landscape, um, our landscaper, uh, Kenny Tyler has, uh, started landscaping that property as well. So he uses that to cross in between the two properties.
Yeah.
However, the fence does need repair and we have that on our list with our contractor, car tender to repair that fence fully and to get that fully functioning.
So theoretically then, or hopefully in actuality, there would be some sort of gate that your, your maintenance guy could open to put, run his gears through and, but close it and lock it so that
A lockable.
It would not be encouraging guests that, hey, this is the pathway. Because then they would walk up the road and chatter, chatter past really, right now, the, the road goes right by Mrs. Woodson's property and it, you know, I sat on her deck and watched buses and cars, you know, they come really close.
Yeah.
And though, so just anything we can do to discourage more traffic going by her back deck.
And we're open to additional plantings on that property line.
Um, you have some room on, on your side.
We do.
On the Pippin Hill side, um, and I think it could be thickened a lot.
I, I, I've ta- I actually talked with that with our accountant today of, of coming up with a plan to really add plantings there because it's well overdue.
Okay, thanks, that's it. I'm sorry, I said I had quick questions and I lied apparently.
All right, uh, thank you. I think we are good at the moment. Um, I think we'll go into the public comments, so like staff for the, the signup sheet. And as I get that, I will call you up, uh, three at a time. And, uh, you have three minutes each, same rules apply in terms of the lighting system. Green means you're good. Yellow means let's get to your most pertinent points quickly and red means. Okay, well, thank you. And red means to please stop. Um, as I said before, we have a long list here, so we're going to be here for a while tonight. So, uh, you won't hurt our feelings if you plus one or say I concur. If you agree with the person in front of you, or they're going to say the exact same thing that you're going to say. So with that, I will start with Rob McGuinness, George Abetti, Mary Tillman. I apologize if I mispronounced anyone's name. Rob McGuinness, George Betty, Mary Tillman.
Happy Valentine's Day. Had to get it in there. Um, good morning, uh, good evening. My name is Rob McGuinness and I'm here representing the Piedmont Environmental Council. Uh, P E C is supportive of the proposed preservation and rehabilitation of the Crossroads Tavern and Inn. Historic structures if undertaken following the appropriate Secretary of Interior standards. However, P E C opposes this project as currently proposed. Given time constraints, I'm focusing on three aspects of the proposed, proposed project that are serious concern to P E C. The concept plan that you've been looking at shows a new, shows new development area approximately one point eight nine acres inclusive of eight buildings and associated connecting verandas and porches, access drives, parking areas, walkways and paths, drain field, rain gardens, screening and other plantings and well sites. The approximate area of the historic structures cluster is about zero point nine five acres. This area also includes an entrance drive, service access drive, visitor and employee parking spaces, a proposed new port, cashier, drain fields and landscaped areas. The proposed new development area is nearly twice the size of the area of the historic structures complex. The scale of the proposed new development is really neither proportionate with or nor, nor subordinate to the historic inn development area as required in section five point one, point six one, historic restaurants, taverns and inns of the county code. P E C is also very concerned about how new wells on that new, on that parcel, uh, and groundwater drawdown adversely impact existing wells and adjacent properties. If this project moves forward, P E C is recommending that a condition be added, requiring the appropriate level of hydrologic investigation meeting county standards we undertake and by the applicant, where the results reported to the county staff prior to the board of supervisors meeting, usually it's done through site plan. Given that the Bundoran Farm Community Association has effectively prohibited vehicular bicycle and pedestrian access, P E C has extreme concern about the short-term access between those two sites going on a three hundred and fifty-foot uh, uh, section of plank road. Um, I thank you for your opportunity to speak, thanks.
Thank you. Georgia Betty?
Good evening, thank you for letting me speak. Um, I just want to make kind of a philosophical point. I'm not going to give a bunch of arguments, uh, uh, or specifics. Uh, I'm in favor of the, um, proposed expansion of the inn. Uh, today, my day did not go like I thought it would. I drove from Atlanta last night to back home here in the North Garden. And then I spent the day extricating a eighteen-wheeled tractor trailer from a ditch, uh, in a project that we are going to be building in, at Livingston Winery. About nineteen years ago, uh, Robert Baldwin, who is my partner, my business partner, bought Bundoran Farm. And a few years later, he died on the airstrip. And a year after that, two thousand eight hit. Basically, everything went to hell for a long time. Some of the rules got bent, I think just out of financial necessity. I don't even understand it. Several years after that, uh, Dean came to me. He was, uh, uh, at a Christmas party in the Balla Center and loved the building and came to me and I'm, I'm a, we're a tiny company out of Vermont and asked me to, to design, build Pippin Hill, which we did in conjunction with him and Bushman Draper's art, uh, architects. The, the reason I'm bringing up these things is that no matter how we plan, and believe me, we need to plan. I'm, I'm a planner. But no matter what we plan or how we plan, we don't know how things are going to turn out. And just like Bundoran Farm did not expect Bob to die in two thousand eight to hit. Pippin Hill is why, a wildly successful business, I think partially because it's a beautiful building and because Dean and Lynn are really good at what they do. And because it's a, um, because it's a Bundoran Farm, which is one of the most beautiful places on earth. I, I love it here. I, I love our board, I love our community. And, and what I, what I really want to say is, is I think when we have something beautiful, it is our job and our conviction and our right to share that as much as possible with others. And that's why I support Pippin Hill and the inn. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Mary Tillman, and I forgot to say, uh, as you say your name, please also share, uh, the, the address of your residence and or general vicinity, so.
Are you talking to me?
Yes. Yeah. We're okay.
Yeah, six hundred High Top Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I'm Mary Tillman. Um, I'm here to talk about this program, this plan that, um, has come before you. And I would like to put my glasses on so I can read this.
Could you speak into the microphone for us?
Yeah. I live on Bundoran Farm at fifty-two seventy-five Dairy Lane, North Garden, Virginia. I've lived there for more than a dozen years. I was the person to build the first house on Bundoran. My husband and I looked all over the east coast for a place to live when we retired. And we finally came here to Virginia, we saw Bundoran Farm. We said, this is it, we don't have to look anymore. Not everyone knows that the residents of Bundoran cannot do whatever they want with the land they bought. Sometimes even we forget that. They only control the two or three acres immediately around their home and outbuildings. The rest is in easement. The owners hand over the use of the easements to that entity of the farm that decides how the pastures will be used. For example, we've entered into agreements with tenant farmers to lease the land from us to run their cattle and sheep. In those leases, we have encouraged best prac- practices in order to improve the soil and the forest. We've even hired a farm manager who heads up this process. I feel that in the presentations that you've heard, you haven't really understood what Bundoran Farm is to the people who live there. In addition to these steps, we've taken others to make sure that the farm is closely monitored for issues of conservation such as dark sky lighting. When we built our homes, they all had to be, you know, pressurized to see if any air would escape. I mean, it's, it's a really green community. Um, we've partnered with other groups such as Thomas Jefferson Soil and Water Conservation and the James River Association. We've done a lot of things around the farm, like plant hundreds of trees. Um, that make sure that the, that there's shade and water for the cows. Um, because we are a green community, one of a few in the country, we care about the health of our environment and those events that could jeopardize the purity of our air, water and soil. The comprehensive plan designation of the lot in question is rural area where the county is supposed to protect agriculture, forests, open space, as well as natural, historic and scenic resources. The first page of this application actually defines it there. I see no mention in this, um, plan of any effort to safeguard the community's resources. If this project is approved, it will go against the very definition of rural area. Please let me finish. A hotel consisting.
Uh, can you finish the next sentence, please?
Pardon me?
The next sentence?
Mm hmm.
We have a lot of folks to get through, thank you.
Okay, a hotel consisting of nineteen rooms and a dining capacity of thirty in a space of four acres is completely inappropriate in such a place.
All right, thank you.
I urge you not to support special use permit.
Thank you.
I know. Betsy Stewart, Sandy Stewart, Mac McKee.
Hi. My name is Betsy Stewart. I am in the Samuel Miller District and live on Plank Road. We received the staff analysis report summary of the special use permit for the Crossroads Inn. The staff stated the conceptual plan provided represents maximum levels of development proposed on the property, which is only four acres. The cottages along the property line that are proposed alone are two times the size of the existing Pippin Hill event structure. You ask the question, can you see them coming down Plank Road? I come from that direction every day and you are going to see two Pippin Hill structures coming down that line. It's going to be very large. Points of concern from the summary proposal. Number one, trespassing of guests on the adjacent parcels could be a concern. It is definitely a concern. Pippin Hill has already taken down the fence at the property line. He said it was to be fixed. Between Bundoran and Crossroads Inn, no one can ensure guests will not trespass onto Bundoran property without a proper fence or a locked gate. Number two, the staff states, due to concerns of noise generated by guests, staff has proposed a condition prohibiting amplified outdoor sound on the property. What condition are they proposing that would permit outside sound? It's impossible to prohibit, prohibit loud outside sound. As the returning guests and friends will move the wedding after-party to the cottages, they are going to be noisy. There will be more drinking, loud mouth soup, as you said. Lights, loud talking and laughter inside now, well into the night on many occasions. Who's going to police that? The applicant has provided traffic generations, uh, generation estimates. V dot has reviewed the request and did not raise concerns. That in itself is very concerning. I live on Plank Road and have to drive the crossroads intersection daily. They're talking about the amount of cars. Nobody brought up the accidents or the deaths. According to the North Garden Fire Department, it is one of the most dangerous intersections on twenty-nine South. There have been many accidents and deaths. Additional traffic should be a big concern to the Board of Supervisors for the safety of rural Albemarle County's community. Areas of landscaping are proposed to provide some screening of the site from adjacent properties.
All right, thank you.
Is that it?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you for your time and I hope you will consider to protect our precious rural communities in Albemarle.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next was Sandy Stewart.
Good evening, I'm Sandy Stewart. I live on Plank Road. And I'm against giving a special permit to the Eastman Porter Group to develop a commercial expansion on four acres on a ridge line to build a hotel and spa. I'm against loud noise at night. I'm against lights in my view shed. I'm very concerned about the use of the. I'm very concerned about the use of the water, the sewer, and use all the roads down there. I would like to congratulate the Planning Commission in Falkir County for banning a similar effort as this near Appleville, Virginia by the Eastern Porter Group. I'd also like to thank you for your consideration to all this pushback from all the people who live in Southern Albemarle. And who live there and drive that road daily. Thank you.
Thank you. Mac McKee.
Thank you. My name is Mac McKee and my wife and I live at five-three-nine-six Ballyshannon Lane at Vondoren Farm. We moved here over two years ago and we were attracted to the area by the peaceful rural nature of the neighborhood. And more importantly, by our understanding that its rural nature was protected by its designation as a rural area under the Albemarle County Comprehensive Plan. We assumed that elected officials would protect the rural area from nonconforming and inappropriate developments. The Pippin Farmhouse Inn that you are considering tonight is both nonconforming and inappropriate to the neighborhood and is opposed by its neighbors as evidenced by their presence tonight. Let's be clear about what this proposed development is. It is a party venue, plain and simple, designed to increase the frequency and size of the events at the adjacent Pippin Hill Winery. These events are invasive enough to the community. Excuse me. And expanding their scope and intensity would be a disservice to the surrounding neighbors and the rural area in which they live. The plan presented to you is an attempt to fit a round peg into a square hole. The size is clearly not subordinate to the historical inn property as required by the comprehensive plan. A landscaping buffer along the west property line will not hide from view the monolithic four-hundred-and-fifty-foot-long building footprint or diffuse the nightlights. More importantly, the conditions imposed by the staff are vague and unenforceable. Who will police the late night loud music and noise? I could go on with additional comments, but in the interest of time, I will end by asking you to decline approval of the Pippin Farmhouse Inn and support the clear opposition of the neighboring community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three are Carter Leek, Elise Leek, John Schuman.
I have one request. I did a presentation that I'd like, I'd like to not start the clock until you have it in your hands. Is that acceptable? So can we get it handed out? Make sure everybody has it. This will allow a more efficient use of time such that I don't have to sync these items. It's not my intent to cover all these.
Okay, could you come to the mic though?
So we can hear you. Can I wait till you guys, before the clock starts?
We won't start the clock.
Okay.
Yeah, you bet.
And if I could just explain what you have and then I'll start. Is that okay? So you have, first, you have this document here which consists of the Falkir County's assessment of the Blackthorne Inn. Second page is just your ability to look. And actually, there's pictures of what you're looking at because it's been very, very difficult for anyone to assess the size of it. Page three is a detailed analysis of all the square footage calculations that were never done in this submission. Page four is a normalization that should have been done if you color all the structures the same size. It's a very simple analysis that should have been done, but wasn't. Page five takes a worst-case scenario, which, if you approve this as it's written due to the loopholes in the narrative, ninety-two feet, it can be go up twelve thousand square feet. And then finally, I think this will be very helpful, this page five will walk you through what Pippin Hill, everybody keeps talking about what Pippin Hill is. You can see the metrics and the verandas. And finally, there's an excellent real water analysis from Pippin Hill themselves that speaks to water usage. With that, I'd like to start. My name is Carter Leek. I live at three-one-one Sutherland, Sutherland Road, which interestingly is the Sutherland family. In addition, I own land at Vondoren Farm. And in addition, I am a member of the board. I just, the second document you have there is from the board that has twice unanimously opposed this project. That's the second package. I'd like everyone to just look at that map up there. We can look up there or you can look at mine. And that space where those cottages are, we need to be very clear because the, the the staff report for some reason chose not to do this. But I'm going to give you some numbers and I would love you to take this and question it. This is four structures that will total eight, between nine thousand and eleven thousand square feet of structure. We can play games about verandas. But if you go to Pippin Hill, their veranda with a capital V is finished space. And you have to be very careful with these guys because when they're speaking, you notice when you ask them questions, you try to nail them down. He started to prevaricate on what it's going to be or what's not. When they say a space, it is multi-use space. They put the walls up and they put them down. But it does not matter with a twenty-one foot roof line, it doesn't matter what's below. It's a structure. And I beg of you to look at page six at Pippin Hill. That's got the verandas. But when you sit and look at the ridge, it's a monolith. And there is a picture from Pippin Hill of what this is going to look like. Three, it's amazing. It is amazing that he's sitting up here and saying that you're not going to see it from Plank Road. I'm in the military business using LIDAR. He gave you a LIDAR map. It's a purple spray pattern of what you can see. Read it. It is saying, you will see me. You will see these structures. And you're not going to plant trees that block an eighteen-hundred-dollar-a-night view. You're just not going to do it. It's all alive. Let me tell you this about living there. I want you to know that the person who put this in also said he would live at Pippin Hill. I hope you know that even the Pippin Hill lot is a residential lot. He was going to live there. And he used that. I'm a local guy, right? I would never do anything harmful. And that is what he's claiming here. You cannot allow developers who don't play by the rules, who are trying to do a backdoor play to get what they want. Please, I urge you, reject this. This is not, there is development we need. And this is not the hill you want to die on. Thank you.
Elise Leek.
Hi, I'm Elise Leek. Thank you for, oh, sorry. Can you hear me now? Thank you. My name is Elise Leef. I live in North Garden, about a mile away from where the proposed inn has, that's a distance. North Garden, the community is small, but dedicated to the land and its beauty. We are designated as rural area. Our community is also designated by the comprehensive plan as a focus of biodiversity. Being dedicated to the land, most of us will in some way be negatively affected by the scope of this proposed expansion. All of us who live near the proposed expansion already suffer the noise, traffic, and light from the ever-expanding Pippin Hill complex. The Bundaren Farm Community Association Board of Directors, representing approximately seventy neighbors, has reached out in opposition. Most of us who live near and all of us immediate, all of the immediate adjacent neighbors have reached out. Many of us several times to oppose a proposed SUP for a lot, for a lot of different reasons. We have aquifer concerns. We have drain field concerns. We have traffic concerns. We have overbuilding concerns. We have noise concerns. We have tranquility concerns. We've expressed that this development is out of place and has nothing to do with true farming or agritourism on its own. Based on what has been proposed, there will be no space for farming after the expansion. For reasons I cannot understand, it has been recommended to push forward this reckless proposal that has nothing to do with preserving the rural community. The proposer is not a farmer. One of our neighbors, on the other hand, a longstanding member of the North Garden community, is a lifelong generational farmer, and he asked the county to shut this proposal down. I read his letter that he wrote to the county. I also read his concerns about driving his tractor along Plank Road and his concerns about increased drinking drivers at a dangerous intersection. I read what he said as a farmer about the water shortages he's experienced firsthand. At this moment in time, loss of water is recognized as our foremost greatest potential disaster. Recommending this project would be like telling our community that entertaining tourists is more important than the well-being of the community. And so I am asking, who benefits from this expansion? It doesn't serve our community. So who and what does it serve? It has been suggested that the traffic will not significantly, significantly increase. And I would suggest this statement also means that tax revenue would not significantly increase. So again, I ask, who will be served by this expansion other than the developer? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is John Schuman. And if you have printed remarks and are not able to get through them, you can submit them to the staff for the record. So.
Great, thank you. My name is John Schieman. I live in the Samuel Miller District. My wife and I own the house located at forty-nine forty-four Plank Road, which is immediately adjacent to the Crossroad Inn. Our property borders, our property's western border is the eastern border to the Crossroads Inn. I impose, I am opposed to the SP application and want to call out the planning staff report stating that, quote, "The proposed inn expansion is not expected to be a substantial detriment to adjacent residential parcels, one of which is ours." "I believe that the construction of twelve thousand square feet of hotel buildings plus eighteen thousand square feet of driveways and parking lots will have a significant detrimental impact on that home and our property." "I'm deeply concerned, as already has been mentioned here, about having sufficient water to ensure that that residence continues to be habitable." Additionally, I object to and call your attention to the characterization of this project as an inn with cottages. Sounds lovely. Albemarle County Code, Section three dot one, states that the word hotel means one or more buildings having six or more guest rooms that provide transient lodging. Hotel. Inn is not defined in county code. Hotel is. This is hotel. It's not an inn. What's being proposed in this SP application according to county code is hotel. Even the county planning staff and their communications has frequently used the term detached hotel rooms as a part of their communications. And the reason that this matters and terminology does matter here is that according to county code and the county comprehensive plan, hotels aren't to be built in rural areas. They're discouraged. It's not a part of the rural landscape. Lastly, I'm deeply concerned about the precedent that an approval of a hotel in a rural community like this will set. Eastern Porter Group and Dean Andrews states in their sales pitch to the county, "Crossroads Inn, quote, does not set a precedent for rural, commercial, hotel, or event centers." But I remind you and everyone else in this room that Dean Andrews does not have the legal standing to make this claim. That authority rests with you, our elected county officials. Subsequently, I encourage you to vote no on this particular special use application and not set a dangerous precedent. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three are Kathy Schuman, Wilda Savaries, Matthew Savaries. Apologize if I'm mispronouncing names.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Schieman and I live in the Samuel Miller District. In the interest of time, I concur with all the people that spoke before me, with the exception of my friend Georgia Betty. But I would like to add, my husband and I own the parcel of land immediately adjacent to Crossroads Inn. Forty-nine forty-four Plank Road. Otherwise known as the Sutherland property, or otherwise known as Becky Woodson's neighbor. This is, property is on the east side of the end with the existing house and cemetery as shown in the conceptual, conceptual marketing plans submitted to you. This is the closest house to the existing Crossroads Inn. I support the historical renovation of the inn, but I strongly oppose the building of new hotel rooms, porches, and the required parking areas. The water requirements for the hotel rooms could adversely impact my well and others on adjacent and nearby properties. The proposed hotel rooms and employee driveway, as shown in the conceptual plan, will run parallel to my property and negatively affect me. There will be increased lighting, obstructed views, increased noise and traffic to me and surrounding neighbors. Therefore, I believe the SUP will be substantially deter, substantial deterrent, detriment, thank you, detriment to my adjacent property. As my friend Betsy Stewart mentioned, trespassing is also a concern on this adjacent property. Just scribbled some notes that Matt Lovelady spoke of earlier. Matt stated, no real reason to celebrate at the end in cottages. People staying at the cottages are there celebrating weddings. Younger people like to celebrate after weddings. Also, if you go to the Pippin Hill website, you will see they advertise, "Please come have your wedding at Pippin Hill and then stay at the Crossroads Inn." I do think it's also a marketing ploy. The owner's cottage, I do ask, will the owner Dean Andrews really live there? Or is this just something to sell his latest endeavor? Thank you so much for your time.
Well, thank you. Wilda Savaries, Matthew Savaries.
Yes, hi. My name is Wilda Savaries. I live at five-forty Pippin Hill Lane, which is right next to the Pippin Hill Vineyard. I'm a kindergarten teacher, so looking at big people is very scary for me, so I'm going to take a breath. This is not something that's comfortable for me, but I want to start by telling you that I love Albemarle County. I absolutely love living in North Garden. And when I go to church on Sundays and I hear "For the Beauty of the Earth," and I think of what, I'm going totally off script, so I don't know what it's going to do to my speech, but when I go to church and I hear "For the Beauty of the Earth," and I think of Vondoren Farm and what it does for the world. I can't believe I'm not reading my notes. I didn't even think I was going to say this, but if you think of what a model could be for the United States, that Albemarle County has created this farm where people who have worked their whole lives, my husband's worked since he's eight, I worked since I'm eleven, I worked three jobs to go to college. I live in New York, for goodness sakes. And you probably read what I wrote. It's nothing on this, but and I live in New York and wanted to get away from New York because of the density and because of what life is like there with aggression. And here, it's the kindest people and it's just so, people speak quietly and more slowly. And Vondoren Farm is preserving ninety percent of that land is preserved forever. I mean, there's a forever there. And people who work their whole lives to be part of something so beautiful where you're paying and you can't develop all your land. You're following rules to preserve all this acreage for trees not to be knocked down, for just all this beauty of agriculture, organic farming. The list goes on. So let's see if I can go to my notes. So, am I over? Oh, no. So, let me go to page one. Please give me a second. When we bought our lot, the county, and that's why I'm appealing to the county, was a proponent of limited growth. I heard it loud and clear. The county was a proponent of less density. And the county was pro agricultural activity. was pro agricultural activity in this rural area. And Bundoran Farm is the perfect example of that. We as neighbors are providing Pippin Hill this beautiful pastoral shed. We're asking the county, we're doing this for Pippin Hill. They're successful. One of the main reasons is because they have this pastoral view. So we're asking you to please, as a county, protect our view shed by opposing the Inn at Crossroads Special Permit. The proposed expansion would cause more traffic, more noise, more people, more congestion, and more light. Please don't set a precedent that would ruin the rural character of the North Garden character by allowing a hotel complex to be built here. All of this would happen on one and a quarter acre elevated ridge visible to all the neighbors.
Thank you.
And thank you for giving me a little bit of time.
Matthew Savaries.
Hi, my name is Matt Savaries and I am a community member of North Garden. My family lives at five forty Pippin Hill Lane, which sits two lots over from the inn and in direct eyesight to this proposed development. Let's start with the facts. This is an R A zoned lot, rural area, agricultural forestry and fishery use. The planning staff's report suggests that a special use permit is being requested by Eastern Porter Group for the expansion of an inn. However, I'd like to correct our verbiage here because when it comes to county codes and regulations, words matter. What's clearly being requested here is the transformation of a modest historic inn into a large hotel complex. Hotels by legal definition of Albemarle County are one or more buildings having six or more guest rooms that provide transient lodging. There currently are six rooms available at the historic inn. Now Eastern Porter Group is looking to triple the size to nineteen rooms, definitively transforming it into a hotel complex. Rural areas aren't even supposed to have small ins to begin with. This is already a special use solely due to its historic nature, and they are definitely not supposed to have hotels. The twenty fifteen comprehensive plan explicitly states this. So what's really being requested here is a special permit on top of a special use that is already uncharacteristic by the county's own standards in a rural area. So when such a highly unusual request is made, we have to consider the benefits and costs to the neighborhood and the community. Let's look at the benefits. Twelve additional units for tourism. This benefit is quickly negated when you consider recent studies showing there are twenty nine hundred plus hotel rooms available in Albemarle County with seventy one percent average occupancy. Does Albemarle County really need more hotel rooms when we can't even fill the existing ones? Historic preservation. This benefit is laughable when you consider the scale and nature of the proposed development that is by no means subordinate to the original structure and usage and transforms its very definition from an inn to a hotel. Meanwhile, this proposal poses substantial and irreversible damages to the community and neighbors and substantially alters its character. Let's start with the biggest issue, disruption of the view shed. This is not a small disruption. The proposed development is adding four hundred feet of linear massing along a highly visible visible ridge in a small residential and agricultural valley. Most of us neighboring lots stare directly in the face along with the already highly visible massive structure neighboring Pippin Hill. For reference, a standard football field is three hundred sixty linear feet across. No doubt, a football field length of buildings will significantly alter the architectural character of our valley, irreversibly damaging our view sheds and creating significant nights uh light pollution. It's also highly uncharacteristic in mass in massing and design. The development clusters is twelve units in a motel style arrangement. This has no historical precedent and is both an embarrassing degradation of the inn's historic character and an objective eyesore to everyone in the area. So the question is, why? Why would the planning committee put the needs of one small landowner over the needs of the entire North Garden community against the needs of the Bundoran Farm community who represent over seventy adjacent homes and over five hundred times the acreage of this lot? Why break the very logic that the county has set forth with their own rules and regulations for twelve additional hotel units in a county that doesn't need them?
Thank you. And as we move forward, if you could just raise your hand instead of clapping, just try to keep some order and respect. So thank you. Um, moving forward, Tony Savaries, Ken Hermgartner, Ida. Hope I'm saying it correctly. All right, Ken Ida. There we go. So Tony, Ken Ida.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Tony Savaries. I live at fifty five forty Pippin Hill, North Garden in the Samuel Miller District. My property is adjacent to Pippin Hill Vineyard. Our community is already doing its part for Albemarle County's uh economy and agritourism business with the operation of Pippin Hill Vineyard and its event based retail food business model located next door to the Inn of Crossroads. The proposed plan represents a clear retail commercial overdevelopment of the area and the planning commission should vote no. For a special permit that involves the gathering of large numbers of people as its main business purpose, no stone should be left unturned to ensure that community beneficial protections and restrictions are put into place before approval of an application, not after. The main business purpose of the Eastern Porter Group, this concept plan and the adjacent property, Pippin Hill Vineyard, all owned by the same business interests, is to promote large gatherings of people for events like weddings, dinner parties and classes. In addition to the guests at the inn, the propose proposed village green and thirty seat restaurant eating capacity will provide the opportunity for large gatherings and events in addition to the activities at Pippin Hill. The commercial operation and events at Pippin Inn already impose a burden on the local community. Let me give you specific evidence. To help mitigate the program of problem of traffic currently and the lines of cars waiting to get into Pippin Hill, our household was given, with the best of intentions, a flag, this flag, to hold out when our our car window so we could drive around the floor, around the line, and pass on to our home uh using the other side of the road. All the recommended conditions in the planning staff uh paper are serious community concerns and a special permit should not be granted with those items left open for later interpretation and consideration. For example, the connection of the two structures by the port de Corquer, if I'm saying it correctly, is it really is really a design sleight of hand? The number of cottages is eight, not four, and when you establish the bill the building footprints, as you will do if you vote yes, you will open the future for the to the construction of much larger structures on those footprints. Page twelve also reveals that the concept plan and information submitted by the Eastern Porter Group does not address or provide additional information to confirm that the cottages are low scale and compatible with the historic resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Ken?
Commissioners, before I start, if I may, I think there's some confusion. That property line
That I have you come to the mic.
Part of the
Excuse me, sir. Can I have you come to the mic?
Well, before I start, if it, I think this is very confusing. That property line along the western side of the uh crossroads uh complex is is an inn, an agricultural easement. Pippin Hill is in an agricultural easement. The vineyard is in an agricultural easement. It falls under the auspices of the B F C A. That's why you've got all those letters from. Okay, thank you. Let me start. Please start. Hey, I I ask, please, I ask if I could have dispensation to put that up there.
Please continue.
My name is Ken Heimgartner, Sam Miller District. My house is about three quarters of a mile due west of the Crossroads property line with a direct view. Have lived in that location for fifteen years. When I found out over a year ago that Dean Andrews and his Pippin Hill Consortium had purchased the historic Crossroads Inn and was proposing to add a detached hotel complex, my first reaction was one of deja vu. First Pippin Hill, ten years of exponential growth. And now we're going to the Crossroads and they're euphemistically calling those uh calling those cottages, uh they're calling them cottages rather than hotel rooms. So now Pippin not only has a winery, but they have a restaurant in the old inn and now they have a uh a hotel complex. Renovating the historic inn makes sense. It has been an economically viable business in our community since eighteen twenty. On the Pippin Hill Wood page, you can go there and see it's already offering seven luxury sites, suites for rental, as well as updated eating conditions. Clearly, it's doing fine financially. When it was announced that the planning staff had a recommendation, I thought that this would be a no brainer. The staff would obviously recommend no. Why? Because the Crossroads acreage is zoned rural. To maintain the rural character of the area, the county's comprehensive plan also states, and I'll quote, "New hotels are not considered to be appropriate in rural areas due to the water requirements, wastewater needs and traffic impacts." I assume that once the planning staff did their due diligence, they would confirm that the Crossroads area has experienced a significant increase in traffic along Plank Road to and from the Pippin Hill complex adjacent to the Crossroads Inn, as well as from the adjoining Bundoran Farms Development, a fairly new community of over seventy homes. So here we have a lack of detailed analysis of groundwater, aquifer, septic requirements, traffic volume and safety, and the impact of the rural quality of life of our North Garden community. If you vote yes, you'll be breaking the faith with the North Garden community, ignoring the comprehensive plan and benefiting the bank account of one person. That's Dean Andrews and the Pippin Hill Consortium. I emphatically urge the planning commission to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry for the misunderstanding there when I was trying to point out an obvious.
Sorry, you did fine. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ida Heimgartner and I am in the Samuel Miller District. The staff report is incomplete and inaccurate. Because of that, I do not see how it can be approved or denied at this time. It could, their their plan is like drawn out a plan on a napkin when you're having lunch with somebody. This is not about the Crossroads Tavern and Inn. This is about the twelve proposed hotel rooms behind it. Concerns I have are what you've been hearing tonight. Water. Frankly, I'm worried about the water usage. There are cattle in Carpenter pasture, which is on the west side of this development. Pippin Hill uses lots of water and this proposal has twelve bathrooms. A detailed water study needs to be done. Again, the traffic issue that many people have already mentioned. However, this report does not mention that the Plank Road is an approved bicycle route and that is not in the report at all. There are no architectural plans. My point in the pro proposal being incomplete. Okay. Uh, the staff report does not seem to recognize that there are neighbors near this proposal or even residents in North Garden, but there are. May I remind you that all of us in this rural area pay taxes, personal property taxes, real estate taxes and sales tax. We support the local businesses year round, not just two or three days, like those who stay in the hotel rooms. The staff report states, "There is no substantial detriment to neighbors." I live on Heimgartner Farm. I hope you know where that is, but if you don't, you should. The footprint of this is nearly twelve thousand square feet of hotel buildings could be seen from my kitchen, my breakfast room, my living room, my back porch, my garden, my upstairs rooms, my orchard, my berry patch. You get the picture. Uh, so I would say that is definitely a detriment to us neighbors. The planning staff needs to know where every adjacent neighbor lives and how this proposal would affect them, for it would affect all the surrounding neighbors. Do you have any concerns over Becky Woodson? My goodness. The the hotels are set to be spread out along that ridge. It would look like not hotels, but motel six. Uh, planners, in closing, the decisions and recommendations that you make are very important to people's livelihoods. Please take our inputs seriously, for it's not just plans on paper. It's about our lives. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Chris Hendy, Audrey Seidel, Mary Gibson.
Uh, good evening. My name's Chris Hendy. I live at uh nine oh one Carpenter Drive uh in Bundoran Farm. I'm also the president of the Bundoran Farm Community Association Board of Directors. Uh, we have about seventy two lot owners. Uh, and uh as we've talked about, we have, we live on a twenty three hundred acre farm that's protected. Uh, you know, and and uh the rural protecting the rural area. Uh, the board has written two letters to the the county uh in opposition to this project. Uh, the first one in October and then after that, we had another election uh with a new board. Uh, each time our community has elected a board that unanimously proposes this project. Uh, so we are against this uh uh sup request. I I want to make clear I'm not against, I'm not against growth. I I understand, but growth needs to be appropriate. It shouldn't be reckless or irresponsible. Uh, the county comprehensive plan for North Garden area is rural and intended to stay that way. Uh, the sup request adds over eight thousand square feet under roof uh when the existing inn is uh less than twenty seven hundred square feet. That is reckless and irresponsible. Let's be honest, what is being proposed here, these rooms are being constructed to lodge wedding parties from the event center Pippin Hill next door. Uh, today, when Pippin Hill has a wedding, uh, the neighborhood understands that, you know, around ten thirty, uh, everything gets quieter. Okay, so if you approve this and add twelve guest rooms, uh, then the noise is going to go on into the wee hours of the night. Uh, and despite what they say, Eastern Porter Group cannot contain a large group of privileged young young adults kind of living it up for the weekend uh after the wedding. Uh, twelve added guest rooms puts additional and warranted stress on the water and sewer capacity. And as we talked about earlier, this this is a groundwater issue and and there are limitations to what this area can support. Uh, if Eastern Porter Group wants to add a residence, which is just shoved in lately, uh, sure, we should carve out two acres, just as Andy had said earlier, um in terms of what a residence uh would support out of this four acre property. Uh, but all I encourage you to decline this uh sup request. Thank you.
Thank you. Audrey Seidel.
Hello, my name is Dr. Audrey Seidel. My husband, Michael Scullen, and I live off of Edge Valley Road in the community of Bundaran Farm. Um, Michael has to work tonight, so I'm going to be speaking for both of us. We are strongly opposed to Eastern Porter building a new hotel on the Crossroads Inn property. The location and scale of the project is too large for the property and the hotel will be sited on a ridge, which will ruin uh the neighbors and bicyclists and drivers that use Plank Road. It will also increase nighttime light pollution, increase traffic at an already dangerous intersection, increase noise pollution and impact water requirements and wastewater needs in a negative way. A new hotel is not appropriate as per Albemarle County's comprehensive plan, section seven, page thirty, which states new hotels, motels, inns and retreat centers are not considered to be appropriate in the rural area for the reasons I just listed. If you allow Eastern Porter to expand their already large property, it will open the door to other developers to swoop into the rural areas of Albemarle County. We want south of I sixty four to remain rural. We do not want the sprawl of Route twenty nine north of I sixty four. Please vote no. Thanks.
Thank you. Mary Gibson.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me time to speak. My name's Mary Gibson. I live at four twenty Quartz Hill Lane, which is less than a mile, approximately a mile from from um the site of the inn. I want to say that I have no quarrel with Pippin Hill. And I support the restoration of the Crossroads Inn. I appeal to the commission and board of supervise to reject this inn expansion proposal. My concerns are as follows. There's a clear disconnect between the There's a clear disconnect between the rural area designation for hotels and the expansion of this historic inn property. How does the county commissioner, uh, how do the county commissioners and the board of supervisors reconcile the contradictory language in the two documents? Um, ignore one to support the other? I don't know. As an extension of the historical inn, this has been said before, so I'll be brief. The footprint is, is much, much larger than the inn itself. Um, and once we put this up there, there's no turning back. It's, it's there. I feel like we have to really be aware of that. Finally, concerning traffic and accidents, these are a grave concern for this area and for motorists and bicyclists. Fatalities have occurred at the intersection of Plank and Monakin Trail. In the vicinity of that intersection, the Traffic Records Electronic Data System, or TREDs, documented twenty-nine accidents in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-five in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-six in twenty-twenty, twenty-eight in twenty-nineteen, and twenty-nine in twenty-eighteen. These data show that the area is already a frequent site of collisions. Further traffic, uh, no matter how minimized by the proposal or by VDOT, will only exacerbate the situation. This is not to mention the traffic between two fifty west and twenty-nine. Finally, our supervisors and planning commission have a difficult decision to make. Is it the safety and well-being of our rural citizens that is foremost? Or is it the increased tax expen- uh, base at the expense of our diligent environmental work to keep the land preserved with sustainable practices? The plan doesn't support both. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have John Dozier, Charles Sealhein, I hope I'm saying that correctly, trying to read writing. Mary Beleski Klein.
Yes, good evening. My name is John Dozier. I live on Plank Road on the eastern side of twenty-nine. Um, I'm just, uh, here to concur with, uh, all those, uh, opposing this, um, special use. And I just want to echo, uh, I stayed all this time to talk about the traffic, about the accidents, okay? You can't even, I, I said all this time to talk about the accidents, and I'm glad you brought the data. It's not just the number, it's the type. Okay, follow the North Garden Fire Department, uh, Instagram, and you'll see cars getting mauled and destroyed. I got young drivers. Okay, you got this, uh, servant, uh, uh, worker's interest is going to come right when you turn off twenty-nine. It's not going to be safe, and people are going to die. All right, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Charles Sealhein, sorry, I feel like I'm messing it up.
Um, good evening. My name is Charles Seilheimer, and I live in the Samuel Miller District. And I'm opposed to this special use permit application. I believe this project should be titled "The Continued Expansion of the Pippin Hill Event Center and Conversion of the Inn at the Crossroads Into a Hotel and Restaurant." The Eastern Porter Group are sophisticated folks, backed by deep-pocketed investors, and they control an expansive hospitality empire. They're using their vast resources to script fancy marketing language, create deceptive schematics, and lobby administrators in an effort to try and fool this county into allowing them to build something that the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance were put in place to prohibit, all to further enrich themselves at the expense of the neighbors whose privacy, quality of life, and property values they will harm. What these developers are selling to their transient hotel guests is a bucolic views and the fantasy of living in an area with open farmland, wildlife, privacy, dark skies, less noise, and an abundant natural resources. Their guests come to Albemarle because their own hometown failed to recognize the scarcity of these resources and destroyed it long ago by allowing a small farm winery to become an event center with eighty thousand guests per year, to become a destination restaurant, to become a hotel, which then continues down the same path of justifying further incremental expansion and future neighboring developments that are then consistent with their surroundings. Enough is enough. What we have in Albemarle, especially this area of North Garden, is so special. And that's because over decades or even centuries, many citizens have recognized this and fought so hard to preserve it. The sad irony here is that the applicant clearly understands the value of this special rural area to their business, but then is working so hard to destroy it for future generations. Your decision tonight is consequential. It does send a message to future applicants. It does set a precedent. The responsibility is yours. I urge you to look through the deceptive marketing copy. Step ass- back and ask yourself honestly if the complex of Pippin Hill developments, existing and proposed in their entirety, is consistent with the comprehensive plan intent for this area. Pippin Hill has already changed the character of this area, but allowing this hotel expansion will continue and even accelerate that change. Do you really believe that constructing eight thousand to twelve thousand square feet of buildings along a highly visible ridgeline, disrupting virtually every inch of earth around an important historic structure? And introducing significantly more people, traffic, noise, and lights to this area won't be a substantial detriment to the adjacent parcels. Is this proposed project really in harmony with the original intent of this chapter? Is the applicant crafting sly language to try and massage their way through a potential loophole?
Thank you.
Please deny this special use permit.
Mary Beleski Klein.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mary Beleski Klein. As a Bundoran Farm community resident on High Top Drive, I would like to thank the planning commission, especially my representative Karen Firehawk, who I haven't met before. Thank you. And their staff for the dedication that they've shown to this. The planning staff has done an admirable job trying to sort out the requests and iterations of this special use permit request, with the most recent changes made as late as February second um, this year that we saw, and even tonight, we saw some changes to the plan. At this time, I recommend that the planning commission vote no to this special use permit request. Here is a summary of my four concerns submitted with my comments that I've, um, sent in. One, this is a non-harmonious conceptual site design for the historic crossroads inn. I am concerned that a quaint, low-density, affordable, rural, country inn, historically used as a stop for weary travelers, will now be converted into a luxurious boutique hotel and potentially short-term residence homestay complex. This conceptual plan is just the wrong brand, size, and design for this particular rural four, four acres. Two, the comments and concerns from North Garden residents. After reviewing Attachment Five to the Planning Staff Report summary, many North Garden and area residents and a few businesses commented on this project. I counted eleven four and thirty against, which is almost a three to one ratio of those against to those who are for the special use permit. Three, there is a potential detriment to adjacent par- parcels concerning quantity of water use, sewage generation, and treatment from proposed crossroads inn project. I believe the existing wells and drain fields are currently considered adequate for the existing inn use. However, with a total of nineteen showers and about twenty-one toilets and laundry use for nineteen inn rooms, plus a cooking kitchen to support the thirty-person capacity tavern daily, the efficacy of the wells and septic drain field system is questionable. The applicant is also proposing to use four constructed wetland treatment systems. Constructed wetland treatment systems have advantages when they are properly designed and are constrained by rela- but they're constrained by relatively large land requirements and a degree of uncertainty not found in the more conventional approaches. I'm also concerned that the Planning Staff Report summary on page eight refers to an unexplained potential central system. The planning staff is concerned with water issues too. Number four, clarifications are needed in supporting documents. The project proposal narrative has not been updated and is not consisted with the conceptual site plan from February second and planning staff report, so it's difficult to evaluate. For these concerns, I offer some potential solutions in the, to these issues in the comments that I submitted. In conclusion, on this Valentine's Day, most residents here and all of us here are interested in love of the land and community. However, with the scope and intent of this overall project, the applicant is more interested in the love of money.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next three are Robert Klein, Connie Hendy, Bob Gibson.
Good evening. My name is Robert Klein. I'm a Bundoran Farm resident. First, I'd like to ask the planning commission to vote no on this proposal for the reasons I'm going to cite. If you turn around and look at those eight units there, you might not be able to see the deception and the inconsistency of the lettering and the marking. What the proposal has done is use one color for the addition, but a different color for the original. If you can see this, this is on page, uh, for the comments, this is on page three hundred thirty-two. And what's happening is the, the applicant said one thing for his proposal, but he ignored, this is the footprint that will actually be there. And when I drive every morning, I am going to see, when, when you combine this group up here is about four hundred sixty feet, a, a minimum of four hundred sixty feet from south to north. When you combine that with the Pippin Hill estate that's already on the top of the ridge, you're going to end up with more than a tenth of a mile of buildings on a highly visible ridge. A tenth of a mile in a rural area. According to section five one sixty-one, new structures should be clearly subordinate to historic structures on the site. Those four hundred sixty feet aren't anywhere near subordinate to what's there. So the overall impact is a tenth of a mile of buildings on a hill. This is completely out of character and is the antithesis of living in a rural area and farming community where our dogs bark at the cattle in the morning when I take them out for their walk. Let's look at the traffic. Yes, there was an analysis, but what wasn't expressed in there is a result of the numbers on page five of the narrative. If you look at the load that the inn has of twenty-eight trips, and then the load that these bring, that's seventy-seven. So you're saying, well, so what? What's that mean? That's an increase of two hundred seventy-five percent traffic load because of those additional units. Two hundred seventy-five percent. Emergency access, if you look at where the property line is, the road is in the boundary of, of the twenty-five foot boundary. So you're going to have parking space. So if you fill up all the parking spaces and you have an emergency vehicle trying to get up there, you can't do it. The point is, that submission has the road inside the twenty-five foot boundary. Is that legal? I don't think so. The construction entrance isn't.
If you just make your most important point in the next five seconds.
I urge you to vote no.
All right, thank you. All right, Connie Hendy.
Good evening. My name is Connie Hendy. I have been a full-time resident of Bundoran Farm at nine zero one Carpenter Drive, North Garden, for almost three and a half years. I am speaking here tonight to express my opposition to SP two zero two-two dash two, the proposed expansion of an existing inn and tavern project at the crossroads inn. The size and scale of the proposed project at Crossroads Inn are not consistent with recommendations of the comprehensive plan. The proposed inn and tavern expansion is in reality the addition of a detached hotel. The proposed additional separate buildings are no closer than three hundred yards from the existing inn, and they stretch roughly over four hundred feet along a ridgeline. The inn is only five, fifty-five feet wide. Each proposed expansion building is ninety-two feet wide. Albemarle County Code, section five point one point one six, states, "The location and scale of proposed structures and additions shall be complementary and proportionate to the existing structures and or site, and additions and new structures shall be clearly subordinate to the historic structures on the site." How are all of these new proposed expansion buildings to be considered complementary and proportionate? One building could be, but four? Smaller buildings could be, but these proposed expansion buildings are not complementary and proportionate. The proposed new buildings would be nearly three times the size of the existing structures. Please do not just look at the number of bedrooms. The square footage of each of the structures needs to be taken into account, as does the total square footage of the expansion. My husband and I bought in North Garden due to, due to the preponderance of rural area in this part of the county. We ride our tandem bicycle over six thousand miles a year. We like Howardsville Turnpike. Half of our Virginia rides begin from our house, and in all of our riding throughout the county and the district, we have never seen such a dense arrangement of lodging in a rural area. I urge you to reject SP two zero two-two dash two. Thank you for listening to all of us and for your service to the community.
Thank you. Uh, Bob Gibson.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Bob Gibson. And my wife and I have lived in Albemarle County for forty-two years, and since twenty thirteen on the Bundoran Farm. Our home site is just off Plank Road, uh, approximately one mile west of the crossroads inn. Like many others here tonight and on Zoom, the Gibson family is strongly, and I can't emphasize that enough, opposed to the preso- uh, proposed expansion. My concerns relate largely to the scale of the proposed expansion. In my considered opinion, the proposed plan is not proportionate to the existing historical buildings, and as such, seems inconsistent with current county code. Secondly, the plan will in all likelihood have a substantial detrimental effect or impact on neighboring communities, and it will change the character of the nearby area. I am particularly concerned with the water requirements. It is my opinion that they will adversely impact existing water wells. No less important is my concern that the plan will result in noise, light, and smoke pollution as well as a public safety hazard regarding the incremental traffic congestion. In my opinion, neither the proposed plan nor the review of the plan by the planning staff has adequately addressed these issues. This statement is not my opinion alone. Rather, it is the position of many community members, as well as the Piedmont Environmental Council. I would strongly, very strongly recommend that, given these aforementioned issues, please vote no to this proposal. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, I have the final four that have signed up are Diane Forrest, Brian Pollock, John Forrest, sorry if I'm mispronouncing names. Nora Seilheimer.
Good evening. My name is Diane Forrest. I live on Bundoran Farm. And I would like to address some concerns that I have regarding the crossroads inn project. I also want to talk a little bit about the expansion and the water usage. So first, the expansion. I'm not opposed to the restoration and pres- pers- preservation of the crossroads in itself. I am opposed to the significant expansion proposed with the building of four structures, each comprising three suites, not just rooms, but suites with presumably a living area, maybe a kitchenette to make coffee in the morning, uh, and a bathroom. That's twelve keyed buildings, not counting the porches and verandas. The footprint is more than three times the size of the historic inn. And that map is a little deceiving because it's a bird's eye view. These structures are twenty feet tall. And when you put them, mass them all together, it is dominant. The twenty, the twenty fifteen Albemarle Comprehensive Plan, as we've heard before, states that additions and new structures shall be clearly subordinate to the historic structures on the site. So whether you call them structures, or suites, or cottages, these additions are all massed together in a lo- long line down the west side of that small four acre property. They're clearly not subordinate to the historic inn and structures. In fact, they overpower it. Which brings me to the second concern, which is water. Water is a precious resource. Already some areas near here, near where we live, are experiencing challenges finding water or inadequate supply of water. Pippin Hill uses a lot of water. So the homes in the area are solely dependent on the wells for water. So I'm concerned that the increased water requirements of the proposed inn expansion would have a strong negative impact on the water supply and wells of those who live near the Crossroads Inn. There's also concern for sewage management. For these reasons, I'm opposed to the special permit and hope you deny it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Brian Pollock.
Good evening. My name is Brian Pollock. I live at 1784 Bundoran Drive on Bundoran Farm. I am the immediate past president of the Bundoran Farm Community Association, which represents 144 owners on a Bundoran Farm in their collective interest. The Bundoran Farm Community Association Board has expressed to this group a opposition to the special use permit twice over the past several months. And as you've heard, as you've heard tonight ad nauseam, our residential community is home to Pippin Hill Farm and Vineyards, which is a commercial enterprise that lies, that has had and continues to have a problematic coexistence with residents who live in close proximity to the winery. Traffic issues, late-night lighting issues, noise issues, and building construction issues have made for a historically contentious relationship between Pippin Hill and our association. Despite the good faith efforts of Pippin Hill's management to mitigate some of these problems, the volume and nature of their business is such that it is simply beyond their ability to put an end to the aforementioned nuisances. And it is not for lack of trying on the association's part, as our board has spent hundreds of hours working with Pippin Hill management to address the thorny aspects of having a business located within a residential setting. Our longstanding experience with Pippin Hill teaches us that the addition of a significant complex of guest cottages at the boundary of our community within ear and eye shot of multiple neighbors can only exacerbate what is already a challenging situation. Our association board does not share Eastman Porter's confidence that the environmental, visual, and social impacts involved with this project will be imperceptible. In fact, it is evident from our decades-long experience with the parent company of Pippin Hill that the addition of what your own guidelines define as a hotel, more than six guest rooms, will be detrimental to our residents' at-home lives. Many of our residents here tonight have worked hard to make Bundoran Farm a community of positive influence in Albemarle County. With them, I respectfully ask you to reject the special use permit requested by Eastman Porter Group for the inn at Crossroads, specifically the construction of a complex of 12 guest rooms on the small and highly visible rural property. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Hello, I'm John Forrest. I live at 670 High Top Drive on Bundoran Farm, about a mile and a half as the crow flies from the Crossroads Inn. My wife Diane, who just spoke, and I oppose the Eastman Porter Group's request for the SEP that would allow the expansion of the Crossroads Inn and Tavern. Our opposition comes down to wanting to preserve and protect the rural character of these beautiful rolling hills. Further development by the Eastman Porter Group conflicts with the county comprehensive plan, as we've heard again and again, which says that growth should be directed to the development areas, not rural areas like ours. One cannot talk about EPG's Crossroads Inn plan without also talking about Pippin Hill. Just over 10 years ago, just before the Eastman Group built Pippin Hill, we moved into our modest-sized home, 1,568 square feet of finished space. While our house is still that size, we have witnessed the Pippin Hill operation, primarily a non-agricultural business, expand multiple times, way beyond its original footprint and original number of guests. Their business model is built on growth and expansion. Our vision is grounded in preservation. EPG claims that their Crossroads Inn operation will be separate from their Pippin Hill one. This claim is disingenuous. It would be another expansion, their biggest to date, of their wedding and event center. This expansion would serve overnight customers in addition to the day ones at Pippin Hill. This is not a comment on the quality of their operation, but rather its size and appropriateness in this location. Whether or not it was ever a good fit, it certainly isn't now. Please deny the request. Thank you.
All right, Nora.
Hello, my name is Nora Seilheimer. I'm a resident of the Samuel Miller District. The rural areas of Albemarle County are dying a slow death. They are being carved up, exploited, and marketed into oblivion. This exploitation comes at the price of what makes our county not only beautiful and special, but livable. We all depend on rural areas for their natural resources, water, fresh air, and open space. What makes Albemarle such a desirable place to live also makes it a target for this type of exploitation. But it doesn't have to be this way, and it's not supposed to be this way. The county of Albemarle has a comprehensive plan that protects our rural areas and natural resources. We must follow this plan or else it gets chipped away and eroded by those who seek to expand incrementally and push the limits of what they can do. The best example of this is Pippin Hill. What started as a small farm winery has substantially grown over time. It now hosts over 80,000 visitors and has a commercial restaurant, snarls local traffic flow, decreases local air quality, and negatively impacts the quality of life for neighboring properties. And it, and it was all initially pitched as a small farm winery. Pippin Hill is now attempting to spread and expand to the neighboring property. Empowered by its ability to exploit the provisions allowed to a farm winery, the Crossroads Inn plan sets out to exploit the provisions for a historic inn. The scale of this project is neither proportionate nor subordinate to the historic inn and associated structures. If you approve this proposal, what will happen next? What else will this development lead to? What precedent will it set? This project does not comply with the comprehensive plan on many levels and as stated by many here tonight before me, I urge you to deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? So you may come on up. I'll see one hand. Is there anyone else? Okay, no worries, no worries. If there's anyone else, please come up and stand behind the citizen here. So please state your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Becky Woodson. You've heard my name several times tonight. 3514 Monakin Trail Road. I am 87-5B, my property. I concur with what's been said tonight. I can understand the developing the inn slightly. I don't agree with the cottages. So that's what I have to say. Thank you. Oh, I did, one more thing. I got a little bit of time. I'm a lifelong resident of North Garden. I grew up in North Garden. My family has lived there. I did not know Mr. Mort Sutherland, but I certainly know who he is. I knew the Sutherland's that lived on the property there at the cemetery is. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? All right. Before we move online, is it the pleasure of the commission to take a break? We've been at this for four and a half hours. Yeah, before we do that though. Okay, we're going to take a recess, seven minutes. We'll be back at 10:36. All right, we're going to get back to work. Madam Clerk, are you still with us?
Yes, yes, sir, I am.
All right, just got to check on you now. I know it's getting late.
No, thank you. At this time, I have two people with their hands up. If there's anybody else that would like to get in the queue, please raise your hand now and that'll put you in line. I'm going to start with Pat Dixon. Pat, please state your name and address if you're affiliated with a group or organization and your three minutes starts when you start talking.
Good evening. My name is Pat Dixon. I live at 620 High Top Drive and I live in the Samuel Miller District. My home will have one of the most direct views of the proposed hotel, if it's allowed to be constructed. I don't want to repeat the very eloquent things that my neighbors have said, but let me approach it from a slightly different direction. As a former president of the United States Association for Small Business and Entrepreneurship, I have spent my professional career supporting the development of small businesses. One critically important lesson I've learned is that businesses must be good citizens of the communities in which they exist if they're to succeed in the long run. The idea of constructing a hotel in a rural community where the rural nature of the community is specifically what has attracted the residents who live there is a bad idea. The impact this proposed development will have from making an already dangerous intersection even more dangerous to changing the beauty and character of the place will be significant and it will be permanent. As commissioners, you are agents of all the people of Albemarle County, not just those that engage in commercial development. I know you take your responsibilities seriously and you're citizens of this county. A county that declares as a prime directive maintaining the rural beauty for all citizens. I urge you not to not sign off on a proposal that further erodes the beauty and tranquility of North Garden and that runs counter to the county comprehensive plan for rural areas. Thank you.
Thank you. And next I have Sandra Dixon. Please state your name and address if you're affiliated with a group or organization. Your time starts when you start talking.
Hi, my name is Sandy Dixon. I live at 620 High Top Drive in Bundoran Farm. Good evening. Let me simply say that I concur with the objections to the permit that have been raised tonight. The beauty of our rural areas belongs to all of us and we rely on you to protect it. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I don't have anybody else with their hand raised?
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
As is our custom, the applicant will have five minutes to come back and respond to what they have heard if they so choose.
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify a few points. You know, we are open to further mitigation and adjustments to the plan. We're happy to agree to a larger fence and to signage. Additionally, we will have a night audit or 24-hour security on the property and guests will be instructed to return to their rooms after events or if they are out and about beyond what I would say is normal hours, 10, 11 o'clock. The, trying to focus some of the points here. The staff entrance is labeled as entrance only, so staff will not be exiting from that portion of the property. So I feel that's an important point to mention here, that that will only be an entrance and will not be an exit portion due to the traffic there. Again, this is conceptual and I've tried to stress that in the past as well, that this is a conceptual plan and that, you know, if there are questions or if there are things that are unanswered, that is because we are still in the process of working through a lot of this and when we do hear comments, we do try to apply that to the plan and adjust the plan. And you know what I think? I don't think any of us are opposed to any comments coming forward. I think what is, where at least I personally struggle is the idea that we have not been transparent or that we are really just saying a lot of things to get this through. I, you know, I was asked by a resident very early in this process to stay genuine and I really have tried to do that. And I really believe that things like the view shed analysis and that the constructed wetlands, that those things can mitigate impacts. I'm not saying that there won't be any impacts or that it won't affect anyone, but I do believe that they will mitigate impacts and they will lessen impacts. And we aren't entering into this lightly and thinking that, you know, this isn't going to affect anyone and it's all going to be all good. There is further work to do. We are happy to agree to a detailed water analysis. We are happy to agree to other engineering that would give comfort either to the PC or to the Board of Supervisors. We are happy to do those things before approval is met. Those are things that we are, we feel strongly about as well and that we want to make sure that this site is viable. And we are also willing to discuss amongst our team, adjusting the scale of the site as well, if that is necessary in order to have this plan move forward. I have some comments here as well that our team has kind of put together. You know, we do really appreciate the comments raised. We are committed to the historic inn restoration and we respect the environmental protection and limited expansion. We respect and appreciate all the county staff has done so far on this work. Thank you, Andy especially. And, you know, we want to work with the county staff and departments to continue to mitigate concerns. Again, we would, we would agree to a more further detailed water analysis. And we are confident that the view shed analysis will be able to really break sightlines as well as again mitigate effects and impacts. And that's really it. I, I feel like I should add more, but we've, it's very late. So again, we're very thankful. And I guess the last point I would want to make is that, you know, mitigation doesn't stop after approval. You know, we want to continue to, both with that property and with Pippin Hill, we want to continue to try to fit within the framework of a rural area and within the community. And I would like to say that I would really encourage, you know, I hear a lot that the Bundoran community talks to each other, but what I don't really hear from is you personally. I don't really get emails. I don't, no one calls me. They have my personal number. And I continue to be confused as to why they're so willing to talk to each other, but me personally feel like they're rarely willing to pick up the phone and talk to me. So, or any of our staff or our management. So having said all of that, again, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
If you could hold real quick, sir, just in case there's questions from the commission. Any questions? I'll ask one question. In your community outreach, did you ever show images of the scaling or massing or a model to show how these new structures compare to the existing historic structure?
As far as a 3D model? We haven't shown that. There has been some very rough preliminary work with our, with Andrew Walker, who is doing our view shed analysis. We haven't shown that, but that is certainly something that could be created if that would be helpful.
All right, just one more call. Any last questions? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back into the commission. Heard a lot tonight. Any initial thoughts, reactions? Additional topics to take on?
If it's all right, before we get into the nitty-gritty, I'd like to ask our councillor to just talk about the notion of precedent setting because that's been brought up a number of times. And so I just wanted, if you would comment on sort of how, how this works with planning commission decision- how, how this works with planning, commission, decisions?
Happily, um, so, Commissioner Firehawk, as you may be aware, every determination that comes before the planning mission, uh, involves fa- fact-specific determinations. In this case, we've heard from a number of members of the public, um, who have been opposed to the project, we've heard from some that have been in favor, we've heard staff's recommendation, and it's ultimately up to the planning commission to make a recommendation based again on a fact-specific determination. Um, I would note that, um, uh, county code section 18-5.1.61 deals with historic, uh, restaurants, inns, and taverns, and allows for those, uh, properties even in the rural area under certain conditions. It's been staff's evaluation that, uh, this particular proposal meets those. Um, I would note that that particular section of the county code was, um, expanded relatively recently in the year 2016, and it identified at least three properties in the rural areas that met that definition at the time, uh, being the Mickey Tavern, um, Clifton Inn, and Keswick Hall. So, a- again, just as, uh, this commission's recent, uh, approval of Clifton Inn is not a binding precedent when it comes to this, it just goes to show that in fact that isn't allowed use in the rural areas if certain conditions are met.
Okay, thank you very much, that, that was just good to clarify before we get into it.
Great question. Uh, Commissioner Murray, so you were about to speak.
Yeah, so, when I look at things like this, the question I ask myself is if the byright residential use was to take place, would that impact be greater or lesser than this use? In this case, it's very clear that the residential use would be far less. Um, the amount of water used would be a lot, would be a lot less. Um, the, um, you'd have a lot less need for septic. And then, then in terms of like the number of buildings that we're talking about, right? Um, there would be far less buildings, in fact, you know, the other question I'd say there too is, let's say that this, for some reason, this, this business folded and then went back to residential use. How many homes would this represent? And would that be different, the number of homes that would have otherwise been able to be built by right? And so I find that this is concerning to me in, in that perspective, because this is a, a far greater intensive use than the residential use would have otherwise been.
All right, thank you, and I'm not advocating for or against with this comment, but I guess technically you could build a really, really big house that has the same amount of square footage.
Yeah, but the, the average family uses 300 gallons of water per day, right? So, when we're talking about the water usage of this, um, and we're talking about you could put two houses there, then we're really talking about 600 gallons, right? But the proposed use here is way more than 600 gallons.
Well, yeah, but if you look at the neighborhood, there are houses of many varying sizes, we heard one commenter say lived in 1,500 square foot house. Uh, but there are other much larger houses in the view shed just drive around the area, so we could, I don't think we could assume that it would be a, a small modesty, yeah, we don't, can't assume that.
Other comments, thoughts, reactions?
Could I ask staff a question?
Absolutely.
So, so there was a, there, there've been, um, numerous comments about the traffic and accidents at that intersection of Plank Road and, and, and 29 South or 29 North, and I was wondering if staff had any idea of what, um, what the accidents and those kinds of things might look like over there, over the, over the past seven years?
Yeah, absolutely, I can respond to that, Kevin McDermott, Planning Manager and Transportation Planning Manager. Um, I, uh, I did just check the, uh, the VDOT website, and I, I wanna clarify, I think there were, uh, there, there was a statement made about the number of crashes at that intersection. I think that might have been looking at a larger area than, than actually like the location of the intersection. Uh, the, the VDOT data shows approximately the three to four, um, accidents per year, reported accidents per year at the Plank Road, uh, intersection there, uh, which is obviously a number that we'd like to see lower, but, um, it's, it's not quite what was expressed. We have a number of areas near there that are significant concerns for VDOT, they do list every, uh, every hot intersection of high concern for accidents. This is, Plank Road is not on the list, Red Hill just north of this intersection is on the list. Uh, so there are some in the area, uh, and, and not to say that w- we don't think that Plank Road could use some sort of improvement at some point, uh, that, that, that just isn't the hot, one of our highest priorities right now, because, uh, the volume that we see going through that intersection, based on the number of crashes, has it a, at a fairly low crash rate. Uh, there have been some fatalities near there, uh, I, the, the VDOT data doesn't specifically show any at that intersection, but some not far north and not far south. Tw- 29 South is definitely a dangerous corridor, so, that helps.
Yeah, very helpful context, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Bivens, anything else?
I, I do share, so, so I'm, I'm reminded that at one point, you know, people always wanna respond to the, to the comp plan. But when we were looking at, when the county was looking at this, the comp plan in 2015, there was a number of, well, I will say crossroad communities that somehow or another found them, found themselves being crossed off.
Yes, that's true.
And this was one of them. And so if in 2015, you know, everybody's, because there was a lot of scenario playing in our conversations tonight, but if in 2015 this had remained a crossroad community, we wouldn't be having this conversation right now. Because it would have fallen into, I think, the VR standard, and the VR standard actually has, has opportunities for it to, for this kind of act, for this kind of, um, functionality, or this kind of, these kind of structures and activities to take place there. So just, since everybody else was spinning hypotheses, I could do one too. Um, and so my piece on this is, you know, I, I, so I need to just sort of, just sort of lay that with us, I don't think it's gonna change it, but I just think, you know, in the op, in the option of telling people, I also need to just sort of say, you know, while people talk about what they came here for, and this is in no way trying to cast a stone at anybody's property, the Bundour Farm was a pastoral place. It was an extraordinary pastoral place. It now has some more modest houses like the, the tandem bike riders, they mentioned they have a 1,700 square foot. But there's also a lot of 15,000, 10,000 square feet houses there, with about, with two houses having the same number of bathrooms. So I just wanna, just sort of, sort of understand that it is not a place of modest cottages, yes, there are, but there are also some places of really big spaces in Bundour. And so let's honestly under, appreciate that, that there's a balance of what I bought into when I bought into Bundour, and having known Mr. Southern, I've been to the house where his mother grew roses up there on the hill. Um, that was just a standard 404 farmhouse that, that, um, had been there since the late 1800s, I'll just, I'll just leave it like that, the late, late 1800s. There was a smaller piece of, there was a smaller house on that piece of property. And so, the last person who said, the last gentleman who I think had a, had a, had a role with, um, some business group, I think, sort of said something that really sort of resonated with me here tonight, is that I wonder if what part of this is, is that somehow or another, there's been a rupture in relationships. There's been a rupture in relationships between the Eastman Porter Group and the community that, that it shares in the Bundour, the Bundour Farm. Clearly, Eastman Porter has come, they both come from hospitality and special events, if you know the two individuals, that's how they cut their teeth, you know, one of them, I think the, the Porter part of that was in, um, uh, managed the, um, Keswick Hall when it was under Corle and Chateau, but that's not what it's called in this country, it's called something else in this country. And so these are people who, this is their business, this is what they've been doing, this is how they sort of see themselves as being, as being productive, I get all of that. But at the bottom of this, there's this piece of me that says that if this was a different type of relationship, and clearly if it wasn't perhaps as, if it was more sensitive to the neighbors to, to the east, to the boundaries as you said on that portion there, I think we'd be having a different conversation about what might be able to happen there. And so, um, I'm trying to suss, suss through the, 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 um, uncomfortable relationships that have developed over the years with, uh, Pippin Hill. And the fact that I believe that at one point, prior to all of those buildings being over there, this was a place where people stopped for food to feed their horses, to have a break as they were traveling and taking goods from, from the James River over to the valley. And while we will never be there again, this, I don't think we will, this is in keeping with that whole, the, the esprit of that time. I will also say, and you've heard me speak to this, if we were just on the other bypass on 250, where there are a multitude of wineries, a multitude of wineries, and where I hope that the, uh, the commission will talk when we talk about the comp plan, we've gotta figure out a way to keep people in this county instead of having them go to the charles room. We gotta find out, to keep, find out a way to keep people, um, from going over to Waynesboro, who's taking advantage and putting out all kinds of hotel rooms over there. There's probably a way to do that, I think we're all smart, I think staff is smart, but we are letting up, we are inviting one type of business, and we are saying no to another type of business, which is a compliment. If you go to the Napa Valley or Sonoma, they have figured out a way, with views, with no offense to the people here, but views much, in my opinion, more brilliant than that bridge. Absolutely more brilliant than that ridge, they figured out how to do that, to figure out how to tie, to tie tourism and, and the winery business and breweries and distilleries into a place that lifts and preserves the beauty of the, of, of Napa and some, and, and the Willamette Valley. We've gotta figure out how to do this, this no is, is only going to be, I, in my opinion, is gonna be the downfall of all of this business, because it can't just be sustained off of, off of, um, um, bottles of wine, mugs of beer, and, uh, rye on the rocks.
Thank you, Commissioner Bivens. Anyone else?
Yeah, as, as I've been thinking about this, the the number of mitigations, as we've talked about it, hydrology, archaeology, screening landscapes. Uh, more recently, we just heard from the applicant.
Mr. Carazana, can you use a microphone, please, thanks?
Can you hear me?
Get a little better, sir.
A little closer, I think, yeah.
Right, sorry.
Thank you.
What I was describing was just a number of mitigations that we've been talking about here tonight, uh, and, and there, there are quite a few, and we just heard some more from the applicant in terms of, um, night watchmen, 24-hour security, you know, agreeing to fences, signage. And, I suppose we can do all of that, and we certainly, uh, put, put requirements on, uh, on applications before, um, that we hope will improve them, make them better. At some point, we do need to think, well, are we doing all this just to try to fit something that doesn't fit in, in a particular area? And so, and, and that gets me back to the, to the conversation of, of the term subordinate, um, complimentary. And that's where I'm having a really hard time making this fit, because the scale of it, at some point, I think the, the, the inn is becoming subordinate to this function, this, this is gonna be the primary function here now. It's not the inn anymore. So, I am having a difficulty overcoming that. Um, and the number of mitigations that we would have to put on this as well, to again, try to fit some, something in a box that I don't think quite fits, but I'm still working through this, but that's where I am right now.
So I'll, um, add a couple of thoughts to my colleagues here, and one was, it also struck me that, um, at one point, this was a wide-open sort of bucolic landscape, and that the trip generation, if my numbers are right, from the homes, if there's 72 at nine and a half trips per day, 684 vehicle trips per day, it's way more than what's being proposed in this development. That said, I thought some of the applicants were great writers, um, and I appreciated all the comments. Um, you know, it, it's, it's interesting, I, I would echo also Commissioner Carazana's comments, for me, this comes down to appropriateness, um, subordinate, complimentary, proportionate. And, um, also, i- you know, thinking about the importance of the historic structure, the fact that there was no archaeological basis for what we're seeing, I feel like that was a miss, I feel like that could have been something that could have been done and could have sort of helped to inform the design, um, in advance of this conversation, um, and that might have been a helpful add. Um, I think that a sensitivity to the cultural landscape is critically important here, and the history and thinking about the memorialization of the history, and with the historic structure becoming less than the dominant structures, which are these additional buildings, you lose the benefit of that, you lose the, um, there's a word I'm looking for, but the importance of that. In terms of the traffic, um, some of you may know I live relatively close by, and I also ride my bike a lot on these roads, and I have witnessed horrific accidents at this intersection, people being thrown from their cars. And so I really doubt the VDOT, um, statement, I know of at least one, anyway, fatal accident that was there, so any additional traffic is an issue, and I think is a concern. Um, but I also think this again is a small percentage of that. Uh, I've witnessed Pippin Hill, I've lived where I live now for 22 years, I've witnessed Pi- Pippin Hill start with a small barn that was designed, um, and that is now a small, very small portion of that. And, and when you look at the elevation, that's 220 feet or whatever it is, it's a really small area. Um, and, and I would wonder if that creep might continue in other places. I don't know how that's happened over the years, but I guess they had obviously the right to do that. Um, water and infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera, I think are all issues, but for me, it really comes down to scale and appropriateness, um, and being subordinate. Thanks.
So I don't think I captured, uh, all of the conditions that I was thinking of, but as we were, as everyone was talking this evening, I started just jotting down like, well, what would be another condition? So I'm just gonna rattle them off, and then I'm gonna say something different. So I started out, okay, I said, well, we need some sort of, um, condition that gets at that archaeological investigation, but I, I am no archaeologist, so I wasn't gonna try to write. I thought maybe one of our architects on the group might be able to say something. Um, you know, and I had that idea already at the beginning that I mentioned about condition 1B adding that thing that the porch co-share should remain open, uh, require a fence and a locked gate along the western border. Um, the, and then another one, the properties must be painted a darker color to blend into the landscape, something along those lines. And then I had, um, a height, uh, maximum of 16 feet. Because that's what they talk, that's what the applicant said was the intended height of the building, although they did the view shed analysis at 22 feet to be conservative. So, you know, I'm trying to like come up with all these ways to mitigate this impact, but, um, at the end of the day, it seems to me that looking at what is slid into that slice of a ridge top is too much for that property. And I was also harkening back to our review of the Clifton Inn, which I, I had all the questions you all had about, what is subordinate? This is my first experience with that, even I've been a commissioner for eight years, because I just don't know what else to do with myself, uh, in my evenings apparently, but, um, you know, I, I, I had heartburn with that one, but yet that site was, was not up on a ridge where everyone would be looking at it. And I, and, and it's, and it's creatively utilized this space well, in a sense that it's really tucked in all these things up this ridge, but it still seems to me that it's something that's highly visible, uh, from multiple points, and that, 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 that makes it difficult to blend even with my paint colors and fences and hedges and whatever else we can come up with. I wanna say something about site plans, uh, versus the plan that they're supposed to show tonight. They've showed us conceptual plan, they're not required to have a site plan at this stage. They're also not required to show massing, that's the height, the bulk of the buildings, they're not required, that we used to have more requirements in the county, and we've been talking about going back to what, you know, asking for more at this stage, but the applicant has met what they were required to present at this time, and actually more than they were required to present, so, uh, and, and whether you thought the drawings were proportionate or to scale, we could, we could argue that, and whether the porches are really one long feature, or they're individual things. But, you know, just in thinking about the neighbors, uh, I- The neighbors, I I'm when I'm thinking of the neighbors, I'm really thinking. Especially, I know we keep calling on Becky Woodson, but she's like right there. She's this, this is her back porch. Some of you talking about you live a mile away, a half a mile away. She's feet away from this and so. Uh, she would be heavily impacted by this and thinking about sitting on your porch at night. Even if we're really being our best quiet selves, um you add that up with all the porches and it just seems to me that you have. Um. A a a sort of cacophony of of sound that could be disruptive. And so I I just don't know how to put this much of a hotel. Into the back slice that they have. So I'm not opposed to our ordinance that allows for. People to expand historic ends to make them economically viable. I mean, it's great to say about the ambiance of the day and the coachman stopping by, but. You know, can you economically make that in, you know, work with the amount of rooms it has, you know, I mean, there's a certain. Volume that they need. Um. So I I I want, I just want to end on one last point and I'm, if you haven't figured out from all my rambling points. I am leaning against this at this time because I think it's too much for the property and it's too visible. But I want to say something about views because beauty is in the eye of the beholder. And so for all of you who sit in your lovely house and look out and you want to see, you love the bucolic rural landscape, that's why you came here. That's why I left Charlottesville and ran away to Southern Ammaral, but. I would say that, you know, everyone is also looking at your homes that were not there before. And so everyone in this room who put a house on a landscape. At that we can see from the road has impacted it and there's been an argument here tonight that, well, that's an okay thing to look at. My house. Is perfectly fitted into the landscape, but not this other use. And I just, I just want to draw a little bit of objection to that notion because we've all had an impact. Uh, there's, in moving to that part of the county, you all drive around. Uh, so there was a a piece of uh data that was given to us. I got from. Was sent by staff and it was, I think the board of supervisors had asked for this and it was looking at the impact of cars from the Bundurran Development. And they had a number in there of about four hundred and fifty vehicle trips per day was what had been. The estimate or count or whatnot. And so if you compare that to fifty. Or forty nine extra or whatever it is for this. It's not, you know, proportionally, there's been much more impact on traffic at that intersection from developing around the Bundurran Development. So I just want us to all own, own whatever our contribution is, you know, that it's like someone else's cars and we don't like those. We've all had an impact. I salute uh the conservation of the rural landscape. I think that's a wonderful thing. So don't think I'm talking against Bundurran Farm. Just wants to have like sort of a look in the mirror a little bit and and think about how we come across. So I'll stop sounding so luxury and just say that um. I I I like the design. I like the layout. I just think that where it sits on that ridge. Just seems like too much going on in too small space and and the impact to uh Becky. And and then and then now the folks who bought the property next door is uh potentially too great. So that's that's where I'm leaning.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll just share some thoughts. I think most have spoken. I would love to see an iteration of this project. Move forward. I think you're right, Commissioner. We have got to figure this piece out from economic development standpoint. I don't think the answer is two dwellings, but I don't think this is the design solution either. Um. I think there's a solution that. Gets the job done, but also maintains the respect of the historic existing structure. And I still grapple with, you know, some of my other commissioners, you know. Which one is observing it to the other and what is the main reason for the site? And I think it's definitely shifted with this design proposal, but again, I want to reiterate, I would love. To see a concept of this proposal advance in some way, but I feel like this particular proposal. Um misses the mark for many of the reasons that my commissions have shared, so. Those are my comments and I'll say if. The commissioner from the district, if you're prepared to. Make a motion or you want to wrestle with some other things, we can do that as well.
I'm prepared to make a motion, but I don't want to artificially cut off conversation. I know the hour is late, but if someone else wants to make a point, I don't want to. Stop that.
You know, we we you've heard me say something when we talked about the mirador, mirador sort of inflecting upon. The cell phone tower over there and this whole idea of when does history begin? Okay, this whole idea that before people had the ability to identify dinosaurs. They supposedly didn't exist. Because people couldn't conceive of them existing, so they didn't exist. Even though they were there for years, but until someone said, oh, yeah, she looked, this is a, this is a Macedon's bone. And so I I want us to always, as we move forward in this, I want us to be sensitive to the fact that. When does history begin? And what was the universe that was recognized as being valuable? When they declared something historic? So in nineteen seventy two, when Ley did this thing, what was his universe of what was important? That made that he identified as being worthy of being classified as historic. And so I want to be very sensitive to the fact that this is not trying to get into culture bashing. I'm just trying to say, there's a group. A set of individuals who declared at one point, this was something that was should be preserved. And it was being preserved around what they thought was important. And the question has to be, is that, does, does that still make sense today? In the same way that we challenge all kinds of building materials, do we always have to use that kind of building material? Or is it now purposeful? What purpose we can use this kind of building material that things advance? Because you think there's a better way to do it, so this makes more sense than how we do it. I'm just saying is that. I and I come from a place, you know, many of you know, I lived in places that were steeped in history. And have lived in houses that were really, really old, but I still have to have an appreciation. That there is at points at time where we need to sort of keep in check that how things become deemed. Historic and what that value means to a particular society.
And I'm I'm not cutting off discussion. I would, there's a, there's another opportunity to have discussion, so if there's an adversely different point. And I'll say let's do it here, but there's another chance for discussion on some motions on the table and there's a second, so. Adversely different points. Is that it, Mr. Murray?
Yeah, I I was just gonna, just gonna say that, I mean, a big problem that I have with this is the size of the parcel. With the intensity of the use. If this was, if this was a much larger parcel, I would have no issue with it. Um, if it was a. Less intensive use, I would have no issue issue with it, but it's really the level of intensity on that tiny sliver.
And that's belabor the point and slightly different, but I think this is the the. The question that Ms. Fireheart posed to counsel in terms of precedence and it's why. We're not setting a precedent because it's so much, every piece of property could be different. The context, the boundaries. Um, the topography. The size, so we could find and and I I'm in the same same. Uh, place where if if the number of factors were different in this particular area. Think this would probably be fine. Uh, and it would, it would help with the economic development and so forth. But I I struggle with this particular parcel and this particular density.
Yes, I mean, it sounds like, you know, what we're hearing is that from most of us, if not all of us, is that. We're we're not necessarily opposed to this in expanding at some point. And and meeting the the intent of the supervisors. Uh, twenty sixteen ordinance that allowed for this to happen, to be app applied for. But that. But just this particular layout is not meeting the the spirit of being subordinate. If if or ever want to put it. Um, well, I'm I'm prepared to make a motion. Did you want to make another point?
Can come up, sir?
We would like to request a deferral.
And do you have a time duration indefinite or you want to pick a date?
Um. If it's preferable to you, I don't think we'd like to pick a date at this time. I mean, I don't think that we need a whole lot of time, but. I do, I think there was a lot that was brought up and I do think that we want to ensure that we cover the ground literally much better than we have so far.
All right, thank you.
Well, I mean, I'll I'll speak because it's my district. I I would be amenable to that. Um, I I, there have been times, and just for the audience benefit, where we have not. Accepted a deferral request from an applicant because we felt that there was absolutely nothing that could be done. Um, so I I I'm not going to. Belabor the point or suggest that you, you know, lay out all the things. You've written copious notes, I'm sure, this evening. Um, so. Commissioners, what's, what do you think of that? Okay, I I I move to. Uh, I motion, I'm so tired. I motion a deferral. Uh, to accept uh applicant's request for deferral for S P two zero two two dash zero 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 two. Crossroads Tavern and Inn to an unspecified date in the future.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Bivens?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Ker- Claiborne?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I would like to make a comment though before we move on. I I would just, I'd just like to say that. I read every single comment that was sent every and some of you sent them three and four times and I looked at them again just to make sure. You hadn't edited. You know, so I would say that, you know, there there was even new information presented tonight, which you can't thoroughly digest on the dais. So I think there is an advantage in having more time to. Investigate some of these claims or concerns, get to the bottom of them, find more facts. And have a a fuller discussion and hopefully with a better application, so. I I think it was a good outcome, although I'm sure some of the audience wish we could just. End this for now. Um, even if we had voted to deny it tonight, it would still have gone to the board of supervisors. We are not the last. Uh, say in this matter, but we'll take some more time and see if we can come up with something that that works, so, thank you. And thanks to all of you guys for hanging in there.
All right. Committee reports. Any commissioners have any reports?
Um, I do.
Commissioner Murray?
Yeah, so the Croze C A C met and talked about the um comprehensive. Yeah, let me bend this closer. So, there we go.
If we could take conversation to the lobby, thank you. And thank you for your your time tonight and your patience, so.
Yes, so the the Croze C A C met um and talked about the comprehensive plan. Um, and it was very interesting discussion, a lot of, there was a lot of frustration in the room clearly about. Past um master plan. Planning that it happened in Croze. And and there's a lot of, a lot of, um, I think a lot of the community wanted reassurances that. That past promises of infrastructure would be met. Um, and that, you know. And that the same sort of things that happen with previous master plans and comprehensive plans would not happen again. That they they want assurance that they'd be listened to. Um. It was, it was a very interesting discussion.
You know, that's an interesting thing because this whole idea that just because. I say something, the other person makes needs to make it happen. I I don't, I don't even understand where that comes from.
And I couldn't really hear you, I'm sorry.
This this whole, this whole circle that we're in that. That that Commissioner Murray said that that some of our 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 um our co-citizens in in Croze said. They felt like they said stuff and weren't listened to. But this whole perception that just because I say something that it's going to change the outcome. Is 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 new to me. I just, I have to just say that. I mean, you know. I'm not, I've never been in a space where I thought that everything I said was going to A, matter and B. Even now, right? And and have results. I mean, and and that that was going to change the results and so I just am, I'm, I'm. I I remain um. Hopeful that I will understand that at some point because it just, I don't understand that.
Well, well, I think one of the important things is brought up is one of the same things was brought up earlier at this meeting by one of. One of you was the, was the idea that infrastructure needs to come first. And that it's clear that in many cases, infrastructure has not come first. And so there's a lot of stresses on the community from that lack of infrastructure, which makes them very reluctant. To want even more density piled on top of that. So I think we really need to get that infrastructure right. Um, so that people feel more comfortable with that additional density.
Let me just come back at the first second. So I I agree with that. But the piece is, is that in our 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 ethos here. The supervisors are not going to go to CIPs before something happens. The school system is going to always come at a point that they believe that it's just in time planning and some of that. And I don't.
And finally.
Right, and I also don't believe, while people say that, I also don't believe that people would be willing to see a substantial. Um, a substantial. Reservoir, uh, reserve in the county through taxes. Since we don't have any real businesses here, through taxes to be able to do that kind of thing. You've got to have a reserve. Somewhere to be able to do the kinds of projects that people want to do. Before they happen. And that is that, the, you, when you go to, when you even talk about the the a modest tax increase here, people just, they flip out. They just flip out.
I I I I will echo some of that, you know, I live close to Croze and and and, you know, a lot of neighbors and friends that live there and that. And. Whether there were promises or things that were said, but. Through the master planning process, you you look at the. The infrastructure developments, talking about mitigation to the growth. But once you put that growth out there, once you say now you can, you can take this. R one and turn it into an R fifteen or an R twenty one or what. Whatever it might be. All of a sudden, now developers are very interested in in that site and once they start buying it, they're going to develop it. So. I do think there is a mechanism of how you begin to look at infrastructure, how you incentivize developers and the county. Because the county has a role, but it's not alone to the county. To. Unlock that extra development. Because once you have that, you have now a financial incentive. And so that's the conversation. So it's not new, I'm not just coming up with this for the first time. Been done in other places and so. So I do think that there is, if 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 all you're going to say is the county. Is going to be responsible to do all this or Vida is going to be responsible to do all this, then, okay, then we're going to be in that catch twenty two. You're not going to do it until the development is there and everything. However, if you begin to incentivize. Developers, yeah, you can turn that into into, you know, an R thirty four. Uh. Whatever. That's right, but these are the things that need to begin to happen. From an infrastructure standpoint, it's not just roads, it's all schools and I know schools are a little bit more challenging, but. But there are ways that you can begin to look at that and and so that's, those are the conversations I think this county needs to start having in earnest. And not can always think. Backwards on, well, this is how we've done it and until we have those reserves, we're not going to get the infrastructure.
Well, I I said four years ago, when I thought we were starting the comp plan process, that's what I was told. Was, you know, that we, I wanted to see an analysis of if we were going to say this is. R thirty six or whatever, whatever, that that before we start coloring the map, different colors from whatever it is now, that we say. Okay, well, that's two new schools, a high school, uh, an extra water line, whatever it is that we we have, do that analysis. So that there's some acknowledgement somewhere. That that growth in the urban ring equals six more schools. I mean, I know there's some numbers out there now, but. We're going to go through this exercise again. About density and we're going to have to have that. I want there to be some kind of published expectation. And that that the taxes in this county are going to go up because I don't have any kids in Ammar schools, but I want to pay. Whatever the taxes are that I'm supposed to pay, so everyone can have a good education. Or 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 like.
Like the reason saying that you set the expectation with developers, you're entered into a different kind of conversation with developers about. How are we going to make this the kind of place that people's, you know, that people feel called to be in? And that does have, uh, that has a different kind of partnership than what I've experienced from. kind of partnership than what I've experienced from some of the more commercial developers here and how they want to, and how they work.
Every developer knows that overcrowded schools with underperforming kids, it's going to hurt you if you try to develop in that. And that's where you're headed to with too much growth. Anyway.
Yeah, I think the key word there is partnership. So, um, any other committee reports?
Well, I did have that. I was just going to say, the other, other piece of this too, is the mix of residential and commercial. Because a lot of the residential is going to cost you more in terms of infrastructure than you're getting back in tax revenue, but that commercial is going to be adding to it. So I think getting that mix of commercial, you know, one of the things that was talked about in Croze is how a lot of people in Croze are just driving to jobs in Charlottesville. And, and we need to, changing that dynamic too, to make sure that Croze is a place where people work, not just where they live. I think that's a big piece of this too.
I think we'll see more of that with remote working also, right?
And we're gonna, we're gonna modernize our zoning with respect to working at home.
Yeah.
By golly.
Any other committee reports? All right, here and now, we'll go to Mr. McDermott for Board of Supervisors meeting review from February 1st.
Thank you, Mr. Clayburn. So at the Board of Supervisors meeting, we, the public hearing for Willow Glen was held. As you all know, this came to the commission a while back. That was approved by the Board of Supervisors with the unanimous vote. I think they did a really great job with the final product the developer put out on that one. So I think we got a good project coming in up there next to the airport with Willow Glen. Also, I'll just point out, there was a, a good discussion with Dr. Pathia, our housing specialist in about developer incentives, particularly housing grants, affordable housing grants, and offering a program like that. So a very interesting discussion, and it looks like something that we are going to continue to look at and move forward.
I think, just a quick comment, we did ask a really long time ago if she could come back and talk to us again. That was a year and a half ago, we asked.
And she is actually just asked me if she could get back on the agenda. We are working on that right now. We have a very full planning commission agenda, so it's with work sessions. And if, if you'll permit me, just also for a second, I wanted to give a quick update on AC44. Apologize, this is so late to be doing this. But one thought I did have was that hopefully we have maybe slightly shorter meetings coming up, and I can add an AC44 update to the commission agenda at the end, so I can just brief you on where we are. As you all may know, we did just kick off phase two of the, of the process, just a few weeks back. And as part of that, if you've been on the website, there are really great topic area reports available up there. There's a public survey going on. Last night, we held our first working group meeting for phase two. And it was very well attended. I think that those people are going to be going out, reaching out to the community, gain more feedback. We've got questions. We've got what we call meetings in a box that they, they can take out. We've got a lot of outreach going to various parts of the county for pop-ups, going to a lot of different meetings for communities as well, to get feedback on some of the things that we're looking at, or really feedback on those major topics that are, that are focused on in the, in the comp plan. So those are things like transportation, land use, community facilities, parks and rec, economic development, housing. These are the, the primary topics that we look at. As part of phase two, we're going to be going up into the planning toolkits that will, and, and as part of that, we're looking at, you know, how we want to look at land use, how we want to make recommendations for land use. And that will include a continued evaluation of potential growth management strategies. They were introduced in the first phase. Now we're going to start getting into the real details of that. As part of that, there are three work sessions planned with the, the planning commission coming up. I think it's April, June, and August are the three work sessions that we have planned right now. So be on the lookout for those, be on the lookout for public things going on if you want to attend and listen in, and check the website for additional updates. And like I said, I will add AC44 update just so I can keep you all involved in that.
That's fantastic news. Thank you, Mr. McDermott. And I think we all embrace that. It's a standing agenda item. That'd be fantastic. So thank you. Yeah.
I just, I just want to be, make a statement and just see if staff agrees with how it characterizes. County is going out in topic by topic, getting community input, right? And staff is doing research on various things as our consultants and putting forward facts that people are reacting to and statements about growth and whatnot. But at some point, this all will, I just want to see if I'm on the right track here, come back to the planning commission for us to have more than a reacting to what people said, but having our own deliberations. So I've heard from multiple commissioners that there's a, a hunger and a also concern about, are we going to talk about the rural areas? When are we actually going to talk about growth boundaries? We've, we've talked about how we really want to talk more about that. But we, you know, so this is all rolling forward. I want to be clear that like, it's all coming back to the planning commission, because the, you know, it feels like the board gets briefed on the comp plan more than we do. And we're supposed to be the entity that prepares the comp plan to give to the Board of Supervisors. So I, I just want to, and I know there was like staff shortages and things and stuff slowed down, and we did not follow the schedule that we had originally envisioned. And we're, we're behind as far as the planning commission's engagement. That's, that's why I feel like you don't have to agree to that or disagree with that. I just want to be clear that all of this is coming back to our commission where we can have robust and in-depth conversations about each of these topics.
Uh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, we're not going to come with like a specific day on community facilities. That wasn't the plan. But, but yes, like I said, we've got three work sessions with you all where we do expect, you know, you to get your hands dirty, as they say, with digging into what we're, we're going to be putting out there, what, what we've gathered, let you look at that, let you give our, your, your feedback, let you kind of help drive this. Yes, that, that, that kind of thing will be happening over the next few months.
But I would also put forward that we're not going to just, I, I, I'm going to just say we, and you guys can say not me, if you don't agree to how I'm saying, but we're not going to just react to, here, do you like this or not like this statement? Because that's what we've done so far. And, and I, and we are going to actually have our own ideas that might be original things that you haven't got on our list that's being presented by the consultant. So I don't mind reacting to things, but we actually want, we have our own opinions about things based on a representation of our districts that we want to bring to the table. And, and, and we're sort of like in the backseat waiting. But I just want to be clear, we're not just going to be reactive. I, I, that's, that's how I feel. I hope others feel that way. But I, I just, I, I was actually planning to say this before you even gave the update on the comp plan. So I just wanted to put that out there in public.
Noted, and I will make sure that, that when we do come back for these work sessions, that we have, give you that opportunity to, to, you know, actually provide, you know, whatever the way, feedback, your ideas and that kind of thing about the, the, the way we're moving forward and about, you know, however you want to do it. I will make sure that we carve that time out as part of the.
Back, but feed.
What you're saying, what Karen's saying is, I think what we've all said, and you, you've seen us enough, is that we have big opinions. We have even bigger ideas. And we want to be engaged in wrestling with these topics so that we can own the, the comp plan when it leaves, when it goes out with our signature or whatever. However, I guess it will have our signatures on it. And so, you know.
And what would help that conversation is, and, and, and actually, I'm, I'm, I'm saying this not as a criticism, because I actually think that it's been, it's been significantly better, the timing that we've been getting materials for, for work sessions. So that's, that's been a marked improvement. But in any case, I'm going to reiterate it, the sooner we can get it, you know, the more that we can digest it. And then really, we prepare to have that conversation when we have the, the work session.
Yeah, the only thing I'd add to that is, kind of, and maybe we have this, maybe I just don't know where it is, but a kind of an overall roadmap, so we can understand kind of what's coming with the sequence and the.
We have it, but it's changed.
And updated.
Diagram didn't have the planning commission in it, so.
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah, absolutely. I can provide that. I, I also would highly recommend that you dig into the website because there is a lot of really great information on there. The, the roadmap, you know, basically it shows this, this phase is pretty well roadmapped in, in a little more detail. And then the future phases are, are still, you know, very conceptual at this time. But, but what we're going to be doing for the next year is a, is there's a pretty good solid roadmap. And I, and it was, you know, that was blessed by the board. They said like, this is what, this is where we want you to work. So I can, I can make sure that that gets in your hands as well, so you see that.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. I had committed to getting us out of here before tomorrow. So is there, oh yeah, we got 20 minutes before tomorrow. Oh, go ahead. Is, is there any other additional new, old or items for follow-up? New business, old business items for follow-up? We covered it all? Okay. This says adjournment at 8:00 PM. Boy, were they wrong. All right.
Our next meeting, sir.
Yes, we are, we are adjourned until Tuesday, February the 28th, 2023.